All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome, can everybody hear me? Just...
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Anthony, is that good? All right, terrific. Well, good morning, everyone. I'm so sorry I can't be there. I just want to welcome everyone to the June 11th, 2025 meeting of the California Coastal Commission. This morning, I'm going to be serving as Acting Chair until after the second item on our agenda today, the election of officers. Ms. Miller, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Malley.
President.
Commissioner Doolittleau.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Lowenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Nodoff. Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, thank you so much, Vanessa. Well, I'd like to open the meeting today by extending a warm welcome to our three new commissioners. I can't wait to meet you in person. I'm so sorry I couldn't be there today. Joining us today is Monterey County Supervisor Chris Lopez, Hermosa Beach City Council Member Ray Jackson, and Chula Vista City Council Member Jose Preciado. We are so happy to have you on the commission and look forward to working with you to protect our beautiful coast. This is a challenging time for the Coastal Commission, and we so welcome your participation. So the next item on our agenda is Item 2, Election of Officers. We'll start by taking nominations for Chair, and I will kick this off. It is my honor to nominate Commissioner Megan Harmon as Chair of the Coastal Commission for term beginning immediately and ending on December 31st, 2026, and I recommend a yes vote. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Miller, please call the roll.
Go ahead. Excuse me, Acting Chair Hart.
Yes.
I believe that typically the term ends at the December Coastal Commission meeting, not December 31st, so would you mind if I suggested a revision to your motion to have that term end in December 20... at the December 2026 Coastal Commission meeting?
Of course, so I'll amend my motion on the recommendation of council that the term will be through the December 2026 Coastal Commission meeting.
Is the second or okay with that?
Second.
Okay, so we could call the roll, I believe.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
With gratitude, yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Yes.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nodoff.
Aye.
Nodoff, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
For sure.
Wilson, yes, the vote is unanimous.
Well, congratulations, Chair Harmon.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate the confidence. Now, I would like to move to the election of our Vice Chair, and if I may take my Chair's prerogative to nominate Commissioner Hart as Vice Chair.
Second.
And her term to end simultaneously with mine. Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Miller, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez. Lopez, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nodoff.
Aye.
Nodoff, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hart, and I think we have to ask if there's any public comment on this item.
I do believe we have one public speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're bringing them in now. Former Chair Justin Cummings. And when you're able to, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you.
Great. This is Justin Cummings, outgoing commissioner. I just wanted to, in the spirit of us, our outgoing commissioners making some remarks, one, just wanted to welcome the new commissioners and congratulations to Commissioner Harmon and Commissioner Hart on the chair and vice chair. But I just wanted to say how proud it's been and how much of an honor it's been to serve on this commission. When I first joined the commission, I really didn't know how much the commission played a role on our coast, other than, you know, I knew that it had a major role in coastal protection, but after being on the commission and serving as a commission, I learned, you know, just about how important it's been and how the California coast has been shaped by the commission and by those who came before us, and it's been an honor to serve with you all, to help us not only protect our coastal resources, but also to ensure coastal access and to, you know, ensure that everybody has access to our coast. I really, you know, value the time that I was able to spend on the commission with you all, and reflecting, just want to thank not only the commissioners for their dedication, but also the staff for their hard work and due diligence and always trying to make sure that we're... that the decisions that we're making are rooted in the spirit of the Coastal Act. And so, also want to thank the community for showing up and for always making sure that we are acting in the best interest of the people of the state of California. And in closing, just want to, you know, wish the best of luck to the new commissioners. This coming year is not going to be easy and probably won't be easy for the next few years, but just want you all to know as well that you have a great commission that you've joined, you have a great staff that's there to support you along the way, and so just know that the support will be there for you. And I will just say that, you know, having served now in city councils and many other decision-making bodies, this has been probably the most respectful and diverse body that I've ever had the privilege to serve on, where we were able to leave our differences at the dais, and just want to, you know, appreciate everybody who's on here again for their commitment to not only protecting our coast, but to, you know, really trying to do so in a way that's in the spirit of camaraderie and the true spirit of trying to protect our coast. And so, in parting, I'm going to be working on a lot of different issues. City of Santa Cruz just passed their tobacco waste ordinance, so when one more city gets on, we'll be the first region in the world probably to ban filtered tobacco products. And we're also launching, relaunching the Local Government Coordination Program, which was launched in the '70s to help combat offshore oil, and we're going to be leading those efforts as well. So just know that I'll be out here still fighting for our coast and look forward to working with you all. So thank you again, and we'll see you when you're back in Santa Cruz.
Thank you very much. Now, I'll open the floor for comments. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Chair Harmon, and congratulations on becoming our new chair. I just wanted to say to our outgoing Chair Cummings that it has been an honor to serve alongside you, and I appreciate so deeply your advocacy, not just for your constituents in Santa Cruz, but also for public access up and down the coast. And learning from you over the course of the last several months, as I've been appointed and getting up to speed, has been a true honor. Your values are so clear and apparent to anyone who has the opportunity to work alongside you, and I think those values are represented by, you know, the voice of so many people in our communities who want public access, who want low-cost accommodations to be able to visit the coast, whether they live on the coastline or not, and your professional expertise and knowledge is second to none. And so truly, I look forward to having the opportunity to work alongside you in the future, and I will continue to look for your name in bright lights for all of the work that you continue to do to lift up communities, especially vulnerable communities in rural areas along up and down the coast, as well as our coastal communities. You are truly a remarkable person, and your leadership is second to none. Thank you so much for your service to our state.
Chair Hart... or Vice Chair Hart.
Thanks so much. Commissioner Kelly, you just said it so perfectly. Commissioner Cummings, it was an absolute privilege to serve with you, and you are an incredible chair. You are a person that has such deep values that were always reflected by your guidance of the commission and your votes, and who you are as a person. I say, I enjoyed the time that we were in session, but I also enjoyed so much just the time we spent getting to know each other. I agree with Commissioner Kelly. Can't wait to see where you will go, and I very much look forward to helping and working with you in the future, but I just wanted to share my deepest gratitude to you for your service on the commission and for everything you do for the state of California. Thank you so much, Justin.
Commissioner Nodoff.
I echo those points of appreciation, but also... and I also want to reiterate welcome to our new members, and I think, you know, it's the nature of the Coastal Commission and the appointing system that the Coastal Act sets forth, is that there is a changing cast of characters on the commission, but, you know, we are guided by the statute of the People's Law that the Coastal Act, and it was enacted by an initiative in the '70s and then put into law by the legislature later. So we have a very clear mandate and a very clear and steady hand of our staff, and I think that the combination of the law, our staff, and the knowledge that the individual commissioners bring to this, which everybody brings their own perspective, but we can all come together when we look at the Coastal Act and the constituency, the people that come before us. I think there's... so in that spirit, I think that that is the nature of the commission, that we do have changing commissioners, but we have stability and continuity with the law and the staff. So welcome to everyone.
Commissioner Wilson.
Good morning, and I do want to first extend congratulations and not condolences, but, you know, to the new commissioners in terms of just, it's a life change, there's a lot of work ahead, these meetings are long, and they take a big part of time, and I want to recognize the... we have three new commissioners that are all from local government, and local government plays a strong role in helping provide perspective in all of these issues, but then also, it's important for us all to remember we're representing everybody on... in the state of California, whether they're from Modock County or from Fresno or wherever they may be from, and it's just... and that's actually the fun of this job, and I'm just so excited that, you know, we have a multitude of perspectives on this commission that just really make it work well. It takes a lot of different perspectives to fundamentally, you know, make the Coastal Act work for everybody. And to Justin, man, I'm going to miss you, buddy. I just... this has been... it's been an adventure having you on the commission, for sure, both on the commission and the times outside the commission has also been amazing. I want to say it's important that commissioners, in my mind at least, we get along on the dais, but it's also important that as human beings, we get... we can relate and work together, and so for me, getting those experiences has been important, and I want to say, Justin has been someone who's brought just an amazing, great perspective as a scientist. It's been wonderful having a biologist on the dais, that's been amazing. Someone who comes from a community that's being heavily impacted from housing issues, and that has been a perspective that is... has been great to have, and then just having someone who's just, quite frankly, open, authentic, and just a good person to be around. And so, thanks, Justin, I really appreciate it, and I will make efforts to... extra efforts to get through Santa Cruz as much as possible, and look forward to seeing you in all of the other functions and ways that we will connect. So thank you, Justin, and thank you, Paloma, too. I know she was... we kind of did that the last meeting, but I want to... I want to be mindful that we've had some big changes, and thank you, Roberto, as well. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Cummings, I haven't met you, but I've watched enough of you on YouTube to feel like I do know you. Certainly impressive, you know, first thing I said is, man, that's one smart dude, wow. And my kids loved your hair. So thank you for your service. You led with character and integrity, and that was visible to the new guy, so thank you. And I will certainly be looking you up when I visit Santa Cruz, or actually before, so I'll look forward to meeting you and getting to know you. I also want to extend my sincere thanks to the Senate Rules Committee and Senate President Pro Tem Mike McGuire for this appointment. I am truly humbled by their consideration and confidence. Also like to thank Senator Ben Allen and LA County Supervisor Holly Mitchell for their support. It is truly an honor for a guy like me to represent Hermosa Beach, the South Bay, and the broader South Coast region in the vital mission of supporting the California Coastal Commission. I was mentioning this to my fellow new guy, I've been blown away and just so impressed by the dedicated professionals at the commission who show up for work every day, not for the money, but for the love of the mission. So, and the true chance to make a difference. As I've said before, the passion is palpable, and it has gotten me even more excited to work with you all. And to my new colleagues, wow, you know, I started Googling you this morning, and I was like, man, this is an impressive group. So I am humbled to be sitting with you all, look forward to getting to know you, look forward to getting to tap into your font of knowledge as we do the people's work, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, gosh, there's not much more that I can say about Justin than has not already been said, but I will just note that it is pretty incredible to have a person whose intellect is matched in kindness in the way that Justin's is, and I think that was particularly apparent over the last year in the way that he chaired these meetings, and something that I will strive to emulate. When I came on the Coastal Commission, I knew that I would learn a lot about the Coastal Act. I didn't know that I would learn so much about true, authentic leadership, and Justin was the perfect example of that, so I wanted to express my gratitude. Also, to, as my fellow commissioners have done, just extend the warmest of welcomes to our new commissioners, Jackson, Lopez, and Preciado. It's a... it is a wild ride, but a lot of fun, a lot to learn, and we are very excited to have you here. Finally, thank you to my fellow commissioners for your support. You have my wholehearted focus on this commission, and I'm very excited to dig in, and specifically thank you to Vice Chair Hart. Would not be able to do this without her. So with that, we will move on to the next housekeeping item for the day, which is Item 3, Remote Participation. Pursuant to the Bagley-Kean Act, I'm asking for consideration and action to allow Vice Chair Hart to participate remotely in this June 2025 commission meeting due to a need related to physical disability. Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing no public comments, I'm asking for a motion and a second.
Second. First.
A move... a motion by Commissioner Lowenberg and a second by Lopez. Perfect. May we have a roll call vote, Ms. Miller?
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, and if I could just make a brief statement that I did have a knee replacement. I don't think that has to be a secret, and I just want to warn you all that when I see you all next month with my new knee in full form, watch out. And thank you so much for the consideration, for allowing full participation in the meeting in the next three days. Thank you. Any yes on the motion?
Hart, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg. Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nodoff.
Aye.
Nodoff, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Barely skated by there, Vice Chair. Okay, so next we'll move to the virtual meeting procedures.
Okay. Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have access to the internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend use the Cal-Span website. Those who wish to address the commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submittal are available on the commission staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the commission's agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comments may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 AM on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on a particular item up until the chair opens the hearing on that item. If you have access to the internet, please go to the commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the commission staff at 562-477-9089. Again, that number is 562-477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you very much. May I ask if there are any agenda changes for today?
It's you, Ms...
My apologies.
We're on the same wavelength, Mr.
Thank you. I was looking at those changes. Good morning, commissioners, and first, I would like to offer my congratulations, Chair Harmon and Vice Chair Hart, and good morning to all commissioners. I will now go over those agenda changes. First, Item 13A, that's the County of Santa Barbara LCP Amendment for the Housing Element Update and Rezoning, and that is a time extension only. That item is moved to consent. Item 14A, the Ventura County Channel Islands Harbor Public Works Plan Notice of Impending Development. It's titled the Kitty Beach Guard Rail. That item is also moved to consent. Item 15A, that's the CDP application by the California Department of State Parks. That item is moved to consent. Item 16A, the CDP Amendment Application by Villa Escondido Holdings LLC and the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. That item is postponed. Item 19A, that is the application by the City of Los Angeles. That item is postponed. And likewise, Item 19B and 20A, which are related items to Item 19A, all applications by the City of Los Angeles, those items are also postponed, so that's Items 19A, B, and 20A, all postponed. That concludes the changes to today's agenda. That does bring us back to Item 6, General Public Comment, and with that, I'll turn the mic back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Speak in public comment, please.
Madam Chair, we have a total of 30 speakers. We have 13 attending in person, and we have a total of 15 on Zoom. All right. For members of the public, I will be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it's your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes during general public comments in order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom. We will be giving you... we'll bring you in as panelists as we bring you in. Your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment to speed up this process. We will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you will be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I will call your name in order that they appear or sign up lists. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips, there is a raise hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on the phone by dialing *6. Please remember to state your name for the records. So Mitch Silverstone, Jim Jeffy, Udu Wan, please come up to the podium.
We have a presentation. Our visual aid, excuse me. Yeah, Surf Rider visual aid. Chair Harmon now, right?
I think we're just pulling up your presentation.
No reason. I should be taking all this time. I'll take the camera.
Let's hear it.
I didn't want that timer to start before I... All right. Okay, ready to rock. Go ahead, and we can go to the next slide already. Chair Harmon, honorable commissioners, my name is Mitch Silverstein, Senior San Diego Policy Coordinator for Surf Rider Foundation. From myself and behalf of our chapters, local chapters, 4,000 local members, I'd like to welcome you all to San Diego and offer a warm welcome to our newly appointed commissioners, Lopez, Jackson, and Preciado. Thank you all so much for your service to the California coast. Our chapter represents boots on the ground towards the realization of our mission, which is protection and enjoyment of the world's ocean waves and beaches for all people. Several surf rider activists will be speaking after me on San Diego issues we're following. Next slide. Our mission includes not only protection but enjoyment of our coast, which aligns with the Coastal Act's explicit mandate for maximum public access. Beach access is core to our mission. Without access, there's no enjoyment, and without enjoyment, there's no protection, because it's... Our chapter represents boots on the ground towards the realization of our mission, which is protection and enjoyment of the world's ocean waves and beaches for all people. Several Surf Rider activists will be speaking after me on San Diego issues we're following. Next slide. Our mission includes not only protection but enjoyment of our coast, which aligns with the Coastal Act's explicit mandate for maximum public access. Beach access is core to our mission. Without access, there's no enjoyment, and without enjoyment, there's no protection because as human beings, we protect what we know and love. Next slide. On that note, I want to highlight a local public access violation that exemplifies where our work aligns. Mr. Levy's Carlsbad property is beach and lagoon adjacent, and thanks to the Coastal Act, he accepted open space and public access easements in order to build a home here. But as the photos show, Mr. Levy has consistently and illegally barred public access to the easement, which leads to a path to the beach along the Buena Vista Lagoon. Next slide. The image on the left is from Carls, the City of Carlsbad's Trail Map website. I added X's to show where Mr. Levy has blocked public access. Sadly, when you click the city's link to the North Beach Trail, a photo of his locked gate comes up, which is the photo on the bottom there. Meanwhile, the gate to the trail along the lagoon is locked and completely overgrown. I'd like to thank enforcement staff for their attention to this public trust violation. Please know that our chapter is working diligently to put pressure on the City of Carlsbad to act, as well as raising public awareness of this matter. Long live the public trust doctrine and long live the Coastal Act.
Next slide, please. Good morning. My name is Jim Jaffee, and I am the co-lead of the Beach Preservation Committee of the San Diego County Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. Next slide, please. This morning, I want to bring to your attention a serious issue we are having in our lagoons in the vicinity of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Sand Project that completed in 2024. The San Diego Lagoon has been blocked periodically and presently since September 2024. The San Diego Lagoon, San Diego Gito Lagoon is nearly blocked now. The blockage may be caused by the placement of sand under federal consistency determination CD 0203-13. And when a lagoon is closed, it causes fish kills and other negative impacts. Can you go to the next slide, please? Specifically, the consistency determination requires that, quote, "Lagoon entrance monitoring will focus on the condition of three lagoon entrances in the Oceanside Litoral cell," unquote. And these include San Diego and San Diego Gito and others. Next slide. In addition, the Army Corps of Engineers' own EIR and EIS for this project states that dredging, quote, "Dredging for additional lagoon sedimentation will be conducted should the project result in closure or restriction to lagoon entrances," unquote. The day is here. We have closed lagoons. We have fish kills. When the lagoons open, contaminated water comes out. People can't surf at these lagoon mouths, which are very surfed in this area. So what we're asking you to do is to take direction to make sure that the conditions of the federal consistency determination and the EIR are met, and these lagoons are kept open. And this is a fifty-year project, so it's going to be a while. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Udu Wan. Oh, I have been a Surf Rider member for over three decades and currently serve as the Vice Chair of this chapter in San Diego. I have lived in the impact zone of Sandag Bluff stabilizations, namely in Del Mar. I lived there for forty-two years and frequent the beach and bluffs almost daily. There are over a million visitors to Del Mar beaches each year. Sandag committed to relocating the train off the Del Mar Bluffs during a 2022 federal consistency hearing and had worked diligently towards that goal until recently. Their updated notice of preparation no longer includes the stated goal of their first NOP, which included relocating the existing railroad tracks. Instead, they updated their NOP, include studying an option to keep the train in place by trenching deep into the eroding bluffs and stabilizing a full two-mile stretch with seawalls and other armoring. This would be illegal and unacceptable. Trenching and double tracking on the tracks on the bluff would violate the Coastal Act Section 3025-3B, which requires that new development not contribute significantly to erosion nor require shoreline protective devices that substantially alter natural landforms along bluffs. This development wouldn't just alter the bluffs, it would destroy them completely. The seawalls would lead to the permanent loss of two-mile stretch of pristine beach and coastline. This option is against the Coastal Act, and it goes against everything Sandag had previously committed to both in front of the commission and in various public reports and meetings over several years. Please don't let our beaches get sacrificed. The Surf Rider Foundation would like to express our sincere gratitude for your support and consistency for Phase Five and enforcing the Coastal Act, this despite great damage to the bluff and the beaches. Thank you.
Up next, we have Annalysia Tripp, Nate Girard, Maya Crowe, Tricia Reha. Please come up to the podium, please.
Next slide, please. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Annalysia Tripp. I would like to start with thanking the Enforcement Division of the Commission for requiring plastic reduction programs for hotels and campgrounds that violate the Coastal Act. I'm a co-lead for the Ocean Friendly Restaurants Program through Surf Rider. We recognize restaurants committed to cutting out wasteful single-use plastic and offer a straightforward framework to help them make sustainable choices for our ocean. The program works to support outreach to empower restaurants towards more sustainable practices. I also lead as a site captain for our local Ocean Beach Cleanup held once a month. When collecting items from our beach cleanups, I've observed that single-use plastic waste tops the list of items volunteers collect monthly. This pollution impacts our marine ecosystems and wildlife, including seabirds, dolphins, fish, turtles, and whales. It's not just ocean life at stake. Plastic contains toxic chemicals that can transfer from containers, cups, cutlery, and straws directly into the food we eat. In my daily job, I'm a restaurant manager at Mitch's Seafood. Learning about this program and joining as an ocean-friendly restaurant has shaped our business to become more sustainable with reducing our daily waste and eco footprint with guidance and following the criterion of eliminating single-waste plastics. The larger our network, sorry, the larger our network of ocean-friendly leaders grows, the more mainstream the concept of plastic-free becomes. At this point, San Diego has ninety-five ocean-friendly restaurants and three ocean-friendly hotels that are committed to creating a more sustainable environment. Your plastic reduction programs go a long way to protect our coast from plastics, and we look forward to your support in exploring partnerships with our ocean-friendly programs. Thank you.
Good morning. Thanks. So my name is Nat Giraud. I live here in San Diego, just a couple miles over the hill. My next, oh yeah, thank you. Next slide. Yeah, so my comment is about emergency permits for seawalls and armoring, which are increasingly being used here in San Diego to circumvent important coastal regulations in San Diego coastal neighborhoods. So just back as recently as March of this year, a property on Calumet Avenue in San Diego's Bird Rock neighborhood applied for an emergency permit for a seawall, and that was the third one this year, following on emergency seawall permits in 2010 and 2017. This is increasingly being used, and the engineering firm handling this work has said that this probably won't be the only residence on Calumet to do this in the near future. As these hotspots are increasing, these emergency permit hotspots are increasing. Calumet Avenue is a great example, but Ocean Beach, North Sunset Cliffs, really up and down the San Diego coast, we're going to be seeing more of this. Meanwhile, new seawall, every new seawall actually speeds erosion and increases erosion on either side of it, increasing the risk to its neighbors. Ironically, as these oceanfront properties expand and apply for improvements that are, apply for permits, this actually increases the value, the dollar value of these properties at risk. So we can't continue to pretend that these emergencies are unexpected. We see this coming, right? The writing is on the wall. We're living on a coast that's eroding. Increased storms and increased erosion are in the forecast, but these property improvements and expansions continue to be approved. So this is the time now to start planning for the inevitable. We should begin discussions now to stop these property improvements and expansions and begin talking about downsizing or moving properties back off of the bluff for the protection of the properties and also to protect our coasts and beaches. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maya, and I'm a volunteer for the San Diego Chapter of Surf Rider for the Climate Action Cohort. Next slide, please. I'm concerned about the Tijuana River pollution crisis because this is the most significant ongoing health crisis in our state and continues to get worse every day. Impacted communities are suffering daily from chronic exposure to toxic air and water contamination. This issue not only impacts surfers and swimmers, but also the aerosolized pollution reaches families and businesses by the shore and main river channel. Water quality samples from the area are not only finding E. coli, but also lead in other hazardous contaminants from the U.S.-based factories located across the Mexican border. South San Diego is experiencing widespread decreases in tourism, business closures, and decreases in property values due to the ongoing health crisis. If we do not address this issue with the importance it deserves, it will only be harder to contain in the future. I'd like to thank the Commission, and especially Imperial Beach Mayor Aguirre for your leadership, ongoing attention to this issue, and the supportive letters they wrote to the Biden Administration and the Governor's Office asking for emergency declaration. Commissioner Aguirre brought much-needed focus on this issue, and we're sad to see her go. However, we're excited to welcome Commissioner Preciado, and we're thankful to see that the South Bay is still represented on the Commission. We're hopeful that you will be a strong voice for environmental justice along our troubled South San Diego coastlines. Please continue to stay invested in this issue and use your voice and influence towards achieving immediate relief, substantial investment, and a permanent solution to this ongoing environmental disaster.
Up next is Tricia, Tricia Reha, Kristin Northrop, Diane Wolk.
I come from La Jolla Shores, and I presented before to you all about, and you all wrote with Alexander Yurandi, an LCP for that area. Do you want me to tell you which LCP it is, or do you have it? Because I wrote it in my notes to you all that I was going to speak about this LCP.
Please go ahead.
It's LCP 6-san-21-0091-3. And he wrote the opinion in 2022 that any beach-impact area is to replace the parking that they've taken out of the street. So we're missing twenty-six parking spots, and nothing has been enforced. There's no, no new parking. The street avenue of De La Playa, which is accessed, but it's still closed, and I have no updates from the city. And I'm wondering, I'm just going to ask you, can you enforce your own LCP with the city? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kristin Northrop, Diane Wolkie, Carol Carriage, Scott Andrews, Steven Ray, Steve Ray, Yehudah Hooty-Goffin.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kristin Northrop, and I'm here as policy advocate on behalf of Coastal Environmental Rights Foundation, also known as SURF. SeaWorld holds up to one hundred and fifty firework shows each year, often nightly during the summer, launched directly over Mission Bay and Fiesta Island. These shows, ranging from six to twenty minutes long, use an estimated of five fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty shells annually and leave behind chemically-laced debris like cardboard, plastic, foil, and wires. Wires have been found entangled in the seagrass beneath the launch barge, and other debris has washed ashore. According to the regional permit data, SeaWorld collects only about twenty-five percent of the firework material by weight after large events like July Fourth. And that's only just from one show. This raises serious concerns about the effectiveness of their cleanup efforts. Lees turns, a federally endangered seabird, nest along the shores of Mission Bay, including near Fiesta Island. They are extremely sensitive to loud noise and disturbance during breeding season. Fireworks can cause adults to abandon nests or chicks, leading to failed nesting and putting this vulnerable species at even greater risk. SeaWorld presents itself as a conservation steward, and with that role comes a responsibility to minimize impacts on the surrounding environment. Frequent fireworks shows near sensitive habitat areas raise serious concerns and appear to contradict SeaWorld's own mission statement. The SeaWorld master plan should prohibit excessive fireworks and ban any displays from Fiesta Island near the turns. Protecting wildlife, preserving water quality, and safeguarding public health must remain top priorities. Thank you for your time.
I have a PowerPoint. Okay.
Good morning. I'm Diane Wolkie, Board of Directors for Safe Healthy Playing Fields, Inc. We asked the Commission to develop and publicly post on its website written policies regarding synthetic turf and playground surfacing. School boards and cities are contracting with consulting agencies who are advising them that they are in consultation with the Commission to allow synthetic turf in the coastal permit zone. I received a call just the other day from such a person saying that they were talking to the Commission about installation of synthetic turf at a school, an elementary school, grades two to four, in Hermosa Beach. We're asking for the third time that the Commission convene a workshop on plastics. This received support from Commissioners in the past. Slide. This is an image at Marina Beach Park in Ventura. The image, it's showing one of several areas of colored used tire crumbs surfacing and the new playground structure in the background. This is toxic and carcinogenic material for humans, avian, wild, and aquatic species. Next. Synthetic turf blades have been found to constitute twelve to fifteen and more percent of microplastics in waterways and oceans. They leach and adsorb toxic chemicals and bacteria. The top two photos are from a three-month-old field in San Jose. The photo on the right shows synthetic turf blades in a drain from that same field, multiple yards away from the field itself. This manufacturer is actively seeking contracts for entire cities and boards of education, including the Hermosa Beach School. The photo on the bottom left is from a one-and-a-half-year-old field. The project, next. Synthetic turf is not recyclable. The synthetic turf industry uses proprietary labs, reports, uses inappropriate methods for testing for PFAS, reports PFAS in parts per billion instead of parts per trillion. Thank you. Please develop policies.
I'm not sure. I'm next.
Yes, Carol Carriage, Scott Andrews, Steve Ray.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Carol Carriage from Del Mar. I understand that Sandag's NOP for the Low Sand Realignment Project includes a review of tunnel safety across all proposed routes. However, I'm deeply concerned that the cumulative geological and environmental risk to the Del Mar hillside may not be fully appreciated in this process. Local geologists have told us that our coastal hillsides consist mostly of sedimentary or softer rock with denser, harder rock found much deeper below. These sedimentary layers are already vulnerable and becoming more so due to increased erosion, runoff, and changes in rainfall patterns. In recent years, several mudslides have occurred in these areas, and residents have also reported sinkholes and flooding on their properties during and after heavy storms. These are not isolated incidents. There are growing signs of instability. Given this fragile geology, how will our hillsides safely support the proposed volume and weight of train traffic? According to the Bureau of Transportation Statistics, each freight train engine weighs between two hundred and two hundred and forty tons. Empty freight cars weigh another twenty-five to thirty tons each. If the Department of Defense moves military equipment, as mentioned in their project discussions, each tank supported could weigh approximately sixty to seventy-four tons. With multiple cars, the total load becomes an extraordinary stressor on ground that was never designed to support this level of vibration, weight, and frequency, up to one hundred and eleven trips per twenty-four-hour 24-hour period. Eleven of these trips are freight. Our community's safety and integrity of our environment must be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott Andrews, Steve Ray, Yahudi Gaffin. Please come to the podium.
Good morning. Scott Andrews, Saver Access, condolences as applicable. Maybe it's better be sworn in than sworn out. I don't know. You'll find out. I'm here about the port of San Diego. They are basically a rogue port. They're redeveloping the whole bay, multi-billion dollars' worth of redevelopment. I'm going to now focus on the city of San Diego, where we are. As you know, both islands are filled with hotels and marinas. Both Embarcaderos downtown are being walled off by hotels, by high-rise. This is what they're up to. What they owe us in their LCP, their Port Master Plan, is a major park and three public piers. We're getting one public pier, according to them. So that's kind of what's up. This issue will be coming to you, hopefully in the near future, maybe in a year or two. But they're basically bulldozing. Now, there are three beneficiaries, and I'll finish up. The three beneficiaries are, of course, the hoteliers. There are also certain port commissioners who work for bay developers. In fact, some of the major planning, the whole Chula Vista Bayfront, which is 500 acres, that contract to plan that went to a bay developer. So this is kind of what's up as far as how they're conceding the resource, if you will. The last beneficiary I'll mention is China. The four largest contracts have been let to China. So they're probably going to end up, they have two hotels up now across the street from the Navy Headquarters. They have an option on a third, which is a Navy property. So that puts up. Thanks for your time. Good luck.
Thank you. Next is Steve Ray, Yahudi Gaffin. Those are the last two for in-person, and then after that, we'll go to Zoom. So Ellen Boken, Andrew Johnson, and John Davis, please raise your hand in the Zoom.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, to your great staff. There are other staff over here that's equally as important, and to the members of the public out there. First of all, I want to congratulate the new Chair and the new Vice Chair. I have you know that I won the betting pool. So that's good. Thank you very much for that. And I want to thank you for the work you've done, but I also want to thank former Chair and the former Vice Chair because the very dynamic Justin Cummings, the passionate Paulo Magiri, and the beloved Roberto Oranga that the three new Commissioners are all replacing. We want to welcome you to the Commission, Commissioner Preciado, Commissioner Lopez, and Commissioner Jackson, or should I call you Colonel Jackson, sir. We look forward to working with you, get to know you. There's a great deal of public interest and a great number of public members that come here and that are willing to help you and your great staff as you muddle through all of these things that you're going to be dealing with. So we stand ready to help and assist and look forward to meeting with you and working with all of you. And finally, to Vice Chair Hart out there, I know you're dealing with mobility issues. If you would like a little advice on how to deal with it, I have 54 years of experience. I can give you a few tips. Just call me. Thank you very much, and good luck, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next is Yahudi Gaffin.
Members of the Commission staff, good morning. My name is Yahudi Gaffin. People call me Gaff. I am the CEO of One Highway One, which is the developer of the proposed Seaport San Diego project, which is a redevelopment of the existing Seaport Village. Seaport San Diego is a transformative project with hotels, an aquarium, and an event center, and over 17 acres of public open space, including parks, an urban beach, and a living shoreline. The project is currently undergoing environmental review by the port, who are the lead agency for SEQA. We also anticipate certification as an environmental leadership development project, ELDP, which signifies a project that must meet very stringent environmental standards, including lead gold equivalent, and a commitment to a net zero new GHD emissions. Our team had the pleasure of meeting with your staff yesterday to share more about our project, including a walking tour, and to hear feedback from staff. This early feedback is extremely important to us as we move forward through the SEQA process. Ultimately, the Seaport project will come before the Coastal Commission in the form of a Port Master Plan amendment. Coastal development permits for the project will be issued by the Port of San Diego but are appealable to this Commission. The timelines and process associated with the Coastal Commission are uncertain at this time. Today, you may be hearing more about SB 675 authored by Senator Steve Padilla. It addresses this issue by providing time certainty around our project as we go through the process. The project will not get any substantive shortcuts. The full EIR is still being prepared for the project and will be circulated for public comment. Coastal Commission will still have the opportunity to review and approve. Our team looks forward to continuing to engage in a positive and productive manner with your staff and appreciate their time. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Eileen Boken. I've allowed you to talk. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Eileen Boken, Coalition for San Francisco Neighborhoods, speaking on my own behalf. At yesterday's meeting of the State Ocean Protection Council, during general public comment, the issue of new Department of Interior leases for oil and gas drilling on the continental shelf came up. What is unusual is that these new leases could include protected areas such as National Marine Sanctuaries. Secretary Kropf stated that the Ocean Protection Council would submit an opposition letter based on a position that the council had taken in 2018. For these new oil and gas leases, the deadline for written comment is this Monday, June 16th. If the Coastal Commission has not already done so, I would strongly urge the Coastal Commission to follow the lead of the Ocean Protection Council and take a position to oppose these new leases and submit a letter of opposition to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and the Department of the Interior by Monday, June 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Andrew Johnson. If you can unmute yourself.
Good morning, Chair Harmon and Commissioners. My name is Andrew Johnson. I represent Defenders of Wildlife and our 2.1 million members and supporters nationwide, more than 300,000 of whom reside in California. Defender's urges the Commission to remain strong against future pipeline repair work by Sable Offshore in clear violation of the Coastal Act, now proceeding in court as Sable Offshore Corp. and Civic Pipeline Company v. California Coastal Commission. Also, as you know, and as the prior speaker mentioned, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management has requested public comments on its plans to develop the 11th National Outer Continental Shelf Oil and Gas Leasing Program by Monday, June 16th. As articulated by the Trump administration, this program would seek energy dominance rather than energy sustainability. This conception represents an affront to the people of California who wish to protect and restore our damaged coastline and marine environment. I've seen firsthand the horrifying impacts of petroleum spills on sea otters, seals and sea lions, whales and dolphins, seabirds, other wildlife, and fragile coastal ecosystems. We face a federal administration that prizes short-term economic gain over long-term ecological resilience and climate stability. Politicians willing to sell their souls to exploit natural resources at all costs should not dictate to California and the overwhelming majority of Californians who oppose offshore drilling. Defenders of Wildlife encourages the Council to submit, or sorry, the Commission to submit comments to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, stating its strongest opposition to federal actions that would encourage drilling along California's outer continental shelf and use the full might of the Coastal Act to resist future development of oil and gas infrastructure through state waters and along the coastline. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is John Davis, followed by Mandy Sackett, followed by Rita Wise, followed by Johnny Fisher Sears. John Davis, if you can unmute yourself. John, can you unmute yourself?
This is John Davis. I'm here to speak on public comments. I'll be as brief as possible. I welcome the new Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, and distinguished Commissioners. The Commission staff has reported and continues to report to this Commission that a project proposed by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, named the Biuna Wetlands Restoration Project, is still active. The fact is, the project was defeated in a quarter of law, and this Commission and staff should acknowledge and respect that fact. Chapter 3 calls for the rule of law. The question is, why this Commission continually accepts this blatant lie when it knows the truth? Staff's repetition of the lie does not equal truth. It diminishes the credibility of this Commission to blindly accept it. The Commission approved a three-part interdependent flood control project for a private entity named Playa Vista, or Play capital LLC. The first and second parts of the project were built. The second was euphemistically called the Freshwater Marsh Project. The fact is, it drains state-owned groundwater through an underground pipe to the sea with no benefit to the public. The third part, a massive flood control basin, was never completed. It required that what remained of the wetlands to be destroyed and replaced with a gargantuan hole to support the commercial project's needs on public land. That's an unconstitutional gift of public funds. This is what your staff wants. This is why they continue to lie to the Commission. The question remains, why does this Commission continue to support this lie as truth? I would request that the Honorable Chair ask the staff what the current legal status of the Biuna Wetlands Restoration Project is, and I would welcome any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Mandy Sackett. If you can unmute yourself, please, followed by Rita Wise, Jody Fisher, Suzanne Simon.
Hello, I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, give us one second. I'll be uploading soon. Okay, we're good.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mandy Sackett with the Surf Rider Foundation at our headquarters office. Welcome, Commissioners Preciado, Lopez, and Jackson. We are really thrilled to be working with you on protecting the California coast. Today, I want to talk about why seawalls are such a serious issue to the California coast and why your leadership matters now more than ever. Next slide. So this image shows the problem really clearly. Seawalls don't save beaches, they actually kill them. By locking the back of the beach in place, seawalls accelerate erosion and literally squeeze the beach out of existence as sea levels rise over time, and that's kind of shown on the right. Next slide. So we've seen it happen up and down the coast, Solana Beach, Ocean Beach, Capistrano, even parts of Surfers Point in Ventura County before restoration. And these aren't just places, they're public resources, and they're disappearing on our watch. Next slide. This photo shows Monterey Bay, where a seawall was causing beach erosion. It's since been removed, but without intervention, rising seas will push the shoreline landlord. But seawalls prevent that natural migration, so over time, the beach will vanish. And as you can see here, the armored beaches on either side of the seawall remain. Next slide. But there is good news. Managed retreat, dune restoration, we have tools that work at Surfers Point in Ventura. The community relocated infrastructure, restored dunes, and are saving both the beach and the beloved surf break. And these are kinds of projects that we would like to replicate statewide. And this is already in Coastal Commission policy. Principle 12 of your sea level rise guidance directs agencies to avoid expanding shoreline armoring and instead maximizing natural shoreline processes. Next slide. And too often, we see that emergencies are used to justify permanent seawalls. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Rita Wise. Rita, if you can unmute yourself.
Rita Wise, my statement today involves CD 000124 on Hollywood Beach. Hollywood Beach has remained free and open, allowing it to retain its natural and unspoiled beauty. The installation of permanent post ropes and signage has threatened to alter the open natural character of Hollywood Beach and detracts from the aesthetics that make it so special. For generations, this beach has been a space for relaxation, recreation, and connection to nature, all of which are threatened by the introduction of permanent visible barriers. Permanent ropes and posts will disrupt the open, accessible feel of the beach, creating obstructions and dividing the land in unnatural ways. Furthermore, the signage will create institutionalized atmosphere, reminding visitors of restrictions instead of providing truly unimpeded and free beach experience. The Oxnard Visitors Guide states, if you're searching for a California classic golden beach, dunes, and pristine weather, look no further than Hollywood Beach. It's a must-visit destination, Oxnard. In the letter dated December 2nd, 2022 regarding ND 4222, it states, and I quote, "USAC proposed to develop and implement a plan to restore up to 13.47 acres of coastal foredune habitat within 10 miles of the project area. USAC staff have committed to work closely with Coastal Commission and US Fish and Wildlife Services staff on the development and the restoration plan and identification of appropriate restoration sites. The Protect Hollywood Beach HOA representatives reached out to Coastal Commission, Ventura County officials, and Army Corps of POC for this project. No one in any of these agencies could provide any sites that were considered for this project except Hollywood Beach. None of the property owners or local businesses in the immediate vicinity received any prior public or written or verbal notice about this project when it was before the Coastal Commission in 2024. McGrath State Beach and Ormond Beach are two examples of alternate sites which would be a better fit for this project. The residency committees deserve to keep their historical significant classic Golden Beach in the same state." Thank you. Thank you, Commission, for your time today.
Thank you. We have about nine speakers left. Up next is Jody Fisher Sears, followed by Susan Simon, followed by Patricia McPherson, followed by Lydia Ponse. Please put your hands up in Zoom so we can move you to panelists. Jody, if you can unmute yourself.
I just did. I'm ready when you are.
Perfect. Ready for you.
Okay, thank you. Chair Commissioners, thank you. My name is Jody Fisher Searle, and I'm here to speak about CD 001-24. I'm not an activist, but a homeowner that has been fortunate enough to call Hollywood Beach home for 20 years. The Protect Hollywood Beach Homeowners Association owns the parcel and sand in front of our homes from the 3,000 blocks to the 3,300 block of Ocean Drive in front of the dredging site. The Harvard Department reached out to me on behalf of the Army Corps in July 2023 to discuss a dune project with our HOA. I accepted their request and followed up twice to set up the meeting. The Army Corps never responded, and the meeting did not take place. The CD package that was submitted to you incorrectly claimed that our property was owned by the county of Ventura. The Army Corps acknowledges they omitted our ownership when they submitted the paperwork to the Coastal Commission. None of the property owners in the immediate vicinity received any public notice regarding the fencing or chemical spraying when this was brought before you in May of 2024. Our HOA was unaware of the project details until April 2025. Both the Army Corps and Coastal Commission have confirmed this project can be moved within 10 miles of the dredging site. There are several uninhabited stretches of beach within the 10-mile zone that would be a better fit for all concerned. If we had been allowed to participate in the initial hearing when the decision to approve this project had been made, we believe the decision by your committee would have generated a different outcome. I wanted to bring this to your attention and ask that you work with us to help resolve the matter. I have been working with Congresswoman Brownlee's office and other local officials to help us with this issue. Since May 6, 2025, I have personally met with the Army Corps on two occasions as the representative of the HOA. The Army Corps has promised to schedule a community meeting- the representative of the HOA. The Army Corps has promised to schedule a community meeting, but we respectfully submit this meeting cannot be productive without the joint participation from the Coastal Commission. We are asking that this project be reconsidered and allow the 1,354 community members that have signed our petition to be allowed to participate in this process. We are asking for your support in helping to maintain the community's access to our special beach. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Susan Simon, followed by Patricia McPherson, followed by Lydia Ponse, followed by Kathy Knight. Susan Simon, can you please unmute yourself?
I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Susan Simon, co-chair of the San Diego's Embarcadero Coalition. I'm taking this opportunity to speak to you today regarding State Senate Bill 675. This bill was somewhat misleading as it mentions streamlining, as in streamlining the sequo process. However, it makes no changes to the sequel process, and it should not make any changes to the Coastal Act. The only thing it should do is provide for judicial streamlining during review to ensure projects don't languish in the courts when challenged, just as was done with SEQUA several years ago. It should not hamstring or limit a thorough review of a proposed project's conformance to the Coastal Act. That would very much be to Californians' detriment. The Embarcadero Coalition is working on making that distinction and have been proactively engaging state senators and assembly members. We are against SB 675 as written. We would like the Coastal Commission to take a stand on this proposed legislation. Meanwhile, we appreciate all the hard work the commission staff has done to make changes thus far. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Patricia McPherson, if you can unmute yourself.
Hi, it's Patricia McPherson. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Patricia McPherson, Grassroots Coalition. I would like to bring your attention to the fact that Biona Wetlands is acknowledged as a groundwater-dependent ecosystem by the Department of Water Resources under the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So we request your support in preventing harm to the freshwaters of Biona and to manage the freshwaters of Biona in a beneficial way. Grassroots supports the comments just made by John Davis. We do have concerns about the CDP from the Coastal Commission for the freshwater marsh system. There are issues with it. We have outgassing of oilfield gases in the freshwater marsh from Playa Vista's poorly abandoned oil well that have staff has been provided a great deal of information, as have commissioners that have been around for the past eight years at least. And I would also like to draw your attention to the concerns of saltwater and toxic water intrusion from the Biona Channel into Biona Wetlands via the main drain that I've provided just this morning. Another email from SOMAS, the consultants for Playa Vista, that are aware of this condition occurring on a regular basis. And I've also provided it again to staff. So we are very concerned about the oilfield gas issues here. We know from the city's former expert, Exploration Technologies, that there is gas that is dissolved within the water column of the waters that are flowing from the freshwater marsh into the main drain, which at any time, you can speak with these experts. And it needs to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Lydia Ponse, followed by Kathy Knight, followed by Gary Pearl, followed by Linda Cropp. Linda Ponse, if you can unmute yourself.
Good morning, Lydia Ponse. Here at the SAGNA, known in from Venice Beach, I want to speak about our humanity as it's being redefined with each meeting that we have. We must be recognizing this morning and the next days that follow to our next meeting that every successful coastal business and coastal home is due to employing undocumented relatives. It is our shared responsibility to be rapid response-ready to ICE when they show up at our doors. We must defend, protect and honor everyone, black and brown, hired help, American or undocumented. Our relationships nurtured always. With the language that I'm hearing this morning and referencing, the Tijuana River, when it's speaking of pollution, it's a Mexican border, and in defense, it's American. Let me correct you. It's Mexican-American border. ICE is showing up at graduations at college and high school, and what we see is people who are willing to put their lives on the line in between. We must unify our efforts for our humanity. Until we see each other as equals, our humanity will be lost and broken. We must take ourselves to deem everyone worthy of a home, of food and water. We're fast approaching the desolate, hard times of leaning mutual aid. Do you know where your mutual aid people are? They're the ones who are on the frontlines in defense of capitalism, where people are losing their jobs and cannot feed themselves, let alone have items that they need. Please, roll up your sleeves, get involved, and we're easily found, especially here in Venice West Side. I thank you for your time. I don't mean to sound harsh. I plead for your heart. Let my words permeate through your ears, to your heart, and uplift you during these hard times. Not all undocumented people are criminals, and I'll know that, so we need to take a stand. Rapid response, responsiveness.
Thank you. Up next is Kathy Knight, followed by Gary Pearl, followed by Linda Cropp, and followed by Richard Charter. Kathy Knight, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, Kathy Knight with the Biona Ecosystem Education Project, working on the with the Biona Wetlands Ecological Reserve in Los Angeles County. We need the Coastal Commission to focus very strongly on protecting the voluminous natural surface and ground freshwaters of the Biona Wetlands. The Biona Wetlands has been acknowledged by the Department of Water Resources as a groundwater-dependent ecosystem in the Santa Monica groundwater basin. Biona is located in the southern portion of the Santa Monica groundwater basin, which has numerous underlying freshwater aquifers classified by the L.A. Regional Water Quality Control Board as drinking water and potential drinking water, all of which needs to be protected from saltwater intrusion and contamination, and protected for beneficial uses for the Biona Wetlands Ecological Reserve. Numerous evaluations have been determined by the Department of Water Resources that need to be performed to evaluate and protect the natural freshwater resources of Biona. The continual drainage of Biona's freshwater to the sea via the Coastal Commission's approval of the main drain and the freshwater marsh system needs to be reconsidered in light of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, to which the Coastal Commission is also required to have a hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Gary Pearl, followed by Linda Cropp, followed by Richard Charter, followed by Molly Troop.
Hi. Oh, there we go. Hi. My name is Gary Pearl. I am a Venice resident, Venice Beach resident. I first want to congratulate the Commissioners, the Chair, the Vice Chair. Good luck. Congratulations. I'm also actually the incoming Vice President of Venice Neighborhood Council, so I want to echo what Lydia said. I do think regardless of what we do with our immigrants, I don't know that this is the right venue, but that we do it with humanity. And I think that's being lost. It's being lost in many ways. And I think the Coastal Commission plays a very big part. Speaking about Venice Beach, where the second most visited tourist attraction in Southern California next to Disneyland. We have the Olympics coming. We have a lot of infrastructure, a lot of personal, as Lydia was speaking to, issues that happen in Los Angeles. Obviously, we have the Palisades issues. I'd like to just say that I, as we look at, and I noticed on the schedule today, there's so many things happening with the Venice Marina Bay, which is a theory of the Venice, that there are so many covers. I'd like to say that I'd like the commission to consider what our council person has advised. I'd like the, I'd like the commission to look at the overall picture, which we're trying to do, of the, of the beach, which is our central park. And, and we're trying to look at it as a global aspect of what, of what Venice Beach becomes in the future. That includes a place that everyone could come, not just tourists, not just residents, but residents east of the 405. It really is the place that people come to who can't afford to go on, you know, European vacations, or a lot of things that many people take for granted, but most people won't. And I'd really like you to consider the, everyone, and not, for instance, not giving away certain, certain parts of properties. Look at the beach and how that's used as our central park and, and, and an ability to be used by everyone of fervor for the future. Thank you very much for your time. And again, congratulations.
Thank you. Up next is Linda Cropp.
Good morning, and congratulations to the new Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Linda Cropp. I'm Chief Counsel of the Environmental Defense Center and representing EDC Get Oil Out, Santa Barbara County Action Network, Sierra Club and Santa Barbara Channel Keeper regarding the proposed restart of the Sable Pipeline. First, I'd like to thank the Commission for its enforcement actions related to the unpermitted repairs. Now, we need the Commission to be equally diligent when it comes to restart and operation of the pipeline. We have submitted a few letters regarding this matter, most recently on May 22. We noted that the 1987 permit for the existing pipeline relied on a cathodic protection system to prevent corrosion and reduce the risk of an oil spill. That system failed, causing one of the worst spills in the state's history. The owner at the time applied to construct a new pipeline. Now, however, Sable proposes to restart the defective pipeline, requiring a waiver of the requirement for an effective cathodic protection system throughout the entire length of the pipeline. This is a significant change to the project. As noted in the Commission's March 28 staff report, this change, quote, "represents such a fundamental shift in the pipeline's design and operation that resuming operations under this new system would not be consistent with the existing permit and should necessitate an amendment to that permit," end quote. Accordingly, the Commission must require a new or modified permit prior to restart of the pipeline. And time is of the essence. According to Sable's own SEC filings, they've completed their repairs and tests, and they plan to fill the onshore storage tanks by mid-June. So the Commission needs to act now. We appreciate, again, your diligence regarding this effort and to protect our California coast, and urge you to take action in a timely manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Richard Charter. If you can unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. My name is Richard Charter with the Ocean Foundation. As you have heard, the Interior Department of Interior is currently soliciting formal input from the state of California on their preparation of the 11th National OCS Oil and Gas Leasing Program. The Interior Department, in calling for these comments, has ignored the January 6, 2025 Presidential OCS Withdrawals, which protect the California coast for a time period without specific expiration. In other words, permanently. Unlike prior five-year OCS program planning in recent decades, which avoided national marine sanctuaries, Interior claims that they now need to only respect national marine sanctuaries designated as of July 14, 2008. They're citing a BOM document called Areas Under Restriction that is linked to the Federal Register. As this commission is aware, many of California's iconic marine-protected areas are embedded within our pre-existing national marine sanctuaries. It is our hope that the Coastal Commission will, in cooperation with OPC and a number of our coastal counties now on record, respond in the strongest possible manner to the Interior Department's proposed five-year leasing plan, thereby establishing the necessary record on which future challenges by our state and likely other states can be built. This morning's news tells us that the Justice Department now says that two recent terrestrial national monuments in California can be rescinded. So I think we can suspect we'll need to fight for our coast as well. Thank you for your service and for your attention to this timely manner, matter, and congratulations to our new Commissioners.
Thank you. Next is Molly Troop, followed by Laney Burns, who we don't see right now on Zoom. Laney Burns, if you are on, can you please raise your hand? Molly Troop, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Harmon and members of the Commission. My name is Molly Troop, and I'm the Science and Program Manager at Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. Our organization is located in Santa Barbara, and we work to protect and restore the Santa Barbara Channel and its watersheds from the Gaviota Coast down to the Ventura River. On behalf of Channel Keepers, over 3,500 supporters, I would like to extend our gratitude to each of you for all of your work to protect our coast and to uphold the critical provisions of the Coastal Act. Thank you for your decision in April to implement a third cease and desist order, restoration order, and the $18 million administrative civil penalty to Sable Offshore Corporation for their egregious violations that they have been conducting since last fall and their efforts to resume use of the corroded pipeline along the Gaviota Coast. We're grateful that Judge Andrela finally granted the Coastal Commission's demand for a temporary restraining order on May 28, mandating that Sable ceases any additional pipeline work until the issue is adjudicated. In addition to expressing our gratitude to the Commission, I'm also here today to reiterate Linda Cropp's testimony and to ask also for the Commission to determine that the restart of the pipeline be subject to a coastal development permit so that the environmental impacts of this project can be fully evaluated and so the public can fully participate in a public process. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you. We're not seeing any additional hands raised for Laney Burns. Laney Burns, showing not available. You're good to go.
Wonderful. Thank you. And thank you very much to our team and to the public for speaking. A general public comment in particular is always such a great opportunity for us to hear from you. With that, I'd like to ask if any of my fellow Commissioners have any comments or questions they'd like to ask Commissioner Nada.
I wanted to follow up on a couple of the enforcement questions that were there. I wondered if our enforcement staff wanted to talk about it. But first, I did want to see where the Commission's comments on the federal offshore drilling proposals stand.
Thanks, Commissioner Nada.
I hope we are weighing in against it.
Yeah, so we have been working really closely with our other partner agencies in California, including OPC, State Lands Commission, Department of Conservation, Department of Fish and Wildlife on a joint letter for Secretary Crowfoot's signature. We actually did the first draft ourselves and passed it on to the other agencies. So we are heavily involved in that letter that is recommending against or strongly urging the federal government not to do additional leasing in California. We base it, you know, for all the reasons that we have maintained that position, both as a commission but also as a state for the last many years. So that letter is working its way through, through CNRA, and will be ready and submitted by the deadline. So we are actively participating in that.
That's great to hear. I mean, certainly, it's the Commission's authority to review federal proposals under the Federal Coastal Zone Management Act that enables California to have a voice in federal proposed activities off our coast. So anything beyond the three-mile limit, we have that federal authority, and the Commission is really a leader in that in the state. So thank you.
Did you have additional questions for Lisa?
Well, I think that there was a few that the Surf Rider folks brought up here in San Diego County. The ones I had questions on were the San Diego Lagoon and the Levi property.
I'm not, I'm not sure about the San Diego Lagoon issue, but the Levy property is an active and elevated case that will be coming to you for your consideration, one way or the other, very soon. We share the concerns, and it's been a longstanding concern of the Commission's staff.
Okay, I think the other one was a consistency project with the Army Corps at San Diego Lagoon. Just that helps.
Are you referring to the Hollywood Beach comments with the Army Corps?
No, it's an Army Corps consistency determination, San Diego.
I'm going to ask Cassidy Toifel to address that question.
Cassidy recognizes it.
Commissioner Nada, yeah, apologies for speaking up here. It's a little tight over there. Yeah, that's something we've been tracking very closely. We understand that monitoring by a variety of agencies is continuing on those lagoons. We've been coordinating with the Army Corps of Engineers. They did receive a consistency determination for extensive dredging and beach nourishment activities along that stretch of coastline. The monitoring is really oriented around determining if the sand that the Corps placed out there a number of months ago is responsible for these closures, and if so, then they would take active efforts to ensure that the lagoons remain open. If not, there are other entities that are involved, including Southern California Edison, to ensure that, that some of those lagoons remain open and flowing, and some of those issues with hypoxia and fish kills don't occur. That said, it's a dynamic issue, and us and a number of other entities are closely tracking and do have those concerns that were shared by the public today.
That's great that you're keeping a close eye on it. Thank you.
And through the Chair, I would just add, two of the other comments we aren't familiar with, they were new issues, and I chased them down, as you might have seen, and I've, we've got contact information. We'll be following up with those.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Preciado, and then Commissioner O'Malley.
Good morning, everyone. I was listening to all the wonderful pleasantries as the meeting started online. So, I appreciate that. And I did want to comment on, and there were at least two testimonies that were offered related to the ongoing human and natural disaster that is occurring in Imperial Beach and along the South County area. I am not as eloquent or as informed as Mayor Aguirre. I don't think anybody will ever replace that voice. But I grew up in that same community. My community is called Nestor then. And so, we've all experienced over the decades the challenges and impacts of the contamination that flows north, one of the few rivers that does that. There's another one in Imperial Valley, but that doesn't concern this Commission. And so, I just want to assure everyone and inform everyone that the first matter of business that I pursued, joining the Commission, was understanding where we stood as a Commission with regard to this challenge that we are all facing, this environmental. And it's deplorable. If any of you get a chance, I see that our meeting in December, hopefully it'll all be fixed by then, but we'll all be going to a meeting in December and hopefully we won't be impacted. But on any given evening, the stench, the impact, is felt. And so, this is a real tragedy that continues to unfold. And it is a federal, international issue. We appreciate both sides when they are collaborating to fix it. But sometimes, it seems like nobody can work fast enough to deal with the challenges that are being faced by this community. And it's not just Imperial Beach, but it's the San Ysidro community that abuts, where my parents still live, in Egger Highlands and Donex, Egger Highlands and the Nestor community. And so, please, I don't live in Imperial Beach anymore, but I live in Chula Vista. And this affects all of us, air quality in particular. Those winds don't stay in Imperial Beach. They don't stay on the border. They come north. And I appreciate the staff's efforts to bring me up to date with the federal consistencies processes. And I look forward to, in the near future, having staff provide updates to what is happening, what developments are occurring. As you all know, the EPA Executive Director announced that they had a 100-day action plan to get something off the ground. And as many of you may know, a component of this tragedy is a treatment plant that's about four miles south of the border. That presumably is working now. And so, as long as some of those things are happening, the entire coastline of the Imperial Beach, Silver Strand and Coronado may see some relief. But it's not soon enough. It's not fast enough and it's not comprehensive enough. So, I appreciate the opportunity to offer my remarks. I too congratulate the Chair and Vice Chair on their election and I look forward to collaborating with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to acknowledge the few comments about SB 675. I assume we're going to discuss that in that ledge report, so I should hold any comment to that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other comment. Oh, yes, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There were a couple of comments about seawalls and emergency permits, maybe for my edification as well as for others. Could you sort of talk about that process, if you don't mind?
Of course. It's a, it's a com, I'll do my best to give you a little bit of an overview and you will definitely see lots of discussion about seawalls and permits for seawalls and the issues associated with those throughout your time here as a Commissioner. It's one of our biggest issues. So, as you heard from public comment and as you probably have experienced, if you visit any coastal town, you know, our shoreline is eroding. We have a lot of development right on bluff tops. And one of the biggest challenges there is this, as that coastline erodes, that is how we create our beaches. But as it erodes, it can threaten whatever development is on the top of a bluff, or maybe not even on a bluff, maybe even lower down. And that could be a residence or it could be infrastructure, a road, a train line. It could be any number of things. So, the challenge that we have is what to do in those situations. And so, seawalls are one option that many pursue to protect whatever development is at risk. Under the Coastal Act, that's complicated. There's some, some development is allowed, particular types of protection. We'll get into the details of all the law later. But, and some maybe is not. And then, what is, what to do about that? So, it is the challenge I think this Commission faces on an almost daily basis. So, emergency permits are one option that some landowners pursue if they have a, you know, the idea is that if it is an emergency, in other words, there's an immediate threat to life or property, then they can pursue an emergency permit. The process under the Coastal Act for an emergency permit, it's a much faster process. It requires, so we do a very fast review, again, because we're in an emergency situation. We can do a very fast authorization for particular development. And then, there's usually a requirement for a follow-on. Full CDP, which then digs into all the issues and makes sure there's proper mitigation is warranted. And in some cases, could require whatever development was approved by emergency to be taken out, just depending. Obviously, that's very complicated. I think the concern that was raised is the, it's a faster review and are we really getting into the issues well enough under an emergency setting? And many of the emergencies that we have are sort of those long-term emergencies where we see them coming and, and we have time, we should be addressing them with time. That's challenging for many for a number of reasons, but that's the better process instead of waiting until the end and then, you know, coming in for an emergency permit and a potential faster review. So, that's just a quick summary of what I think the concern was raised. It is a challenge and local governments have the same challenge that we do. And, and it's something we need, we need to address. We have been doing more emergency permits for this type of thing. And a lot of it has been based on the storm seasons we've had the last several years, not as much this past year, but the two years prior were really significant storms. We had winter storms that caused so much damage up and down the shoreline. We saw an increase in emergency permits then. So, it, you know, we need to try to work with local governments and landowners to try to address these ahead of time. And when we see it's coming, that's our goal and we try our best to achieve it.
And if I could just add briefly to that, one of the challenges from my side of the shop is that emergency permits are by definition time-limited. They're only good for a certain period of time. And we have, there are many, many cases where people get emergency permits for seawalls and don't follow up. And so, therefore, the seawall remains in place or the temporary, intended to be temporary seawall remains in place without the mitigation and the analysis that Kate was just referencing. So, and I think that's one of the main objections. And it's been a goal of ours is to try to do a review of those seawalls. There are just so many of them all up and down the coast. Some of them are, we call them derelict seawalls, but they, they are still there, but the development that was behind them is no longer there. So, they're just, they're protecting something that doesn't exist, which means that the beach is being eroded without cause. And so, we're trying to look at those as fast as we can, but there are just a lot of them and very few of us. So, but that's the goal.
And I guess I would just add one more point, which is to remind too, and we heard a little bit of this from some of the public commenters, but the reason that these seawalls present a challenge for us is that those, the bluff erosion is one of the main sources of beach sand that we have for our beaches. And as sea levels rise, if that erosion isn't allowed to occur, we slowly lose our beaches. And we've also dammed rivers, another big source of sand. So, there's a lot of, a lot of potential issues. And so, but this is a main one in our jurisdiction that we can work on, that make sure that we do have either, you know, we're keeping that erosion process active so that we do have sand for our beaches and/or, when appropriate, we have mitigation and other ways to make sure that public access is, is there in these areas where we're losing some of those beaches.
Thank you. Okay, so that closes public comment. I think that we're a little tight on quorum, so I'm going to suggest actually that we take a brief break now. If that works for everyone, if we could be back at 10:55, 10 minutes works, then we'll move to statewide. Thank you. Are we ready to roll?
Sounds better.
Good. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Now, we will be moving to Item 8, the Executive Director's Report. Director Hucklebridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning Commissioners. My published Executive Director's Report can be found on the Commission's website, but as usual, I'll spend a few minutes going over several of the items. I'd like to kick off my June report first with a warm welcome for our new Commissioners. We are so happy to have you and really look forward to working with you over the next years on coastal protection and sustainable development on our coastline. So, welcome, welcome. I didn't get a chance to chime in this morning, but wanted to also congratulate our new Chair and our new Vice Chair. Thank you for your service and very excited to look forward, very excited to work with you as well. And I think, as I told Commissioner Cummings when he was elected in December, you know, strap in because it's, it's going to be a fun and bumpy ride over the next year and a half. Yeah. But appreciate, as always, the partnership and just the opportunity to, to, to work so closely with Commissioners and especially the Chair and Vice Chair. Really looking forward to your leadership. And also, just to echo the thank you and gratitude to our outgoing Chair and Vice Chair. We are so grateful for their service and appreciate all the work that they put in for this Commission, for the mission of our agency and doing the work. And, and as always, just again, the integrity and attitude towards all of us here and the collaboration we all have together. So, just wanted to appreciate Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Aguirre one last time. So, next up, I'd like to highlight a few exciting announcements from our Environmental Justice Program. The Environmental Justice Program, in partnership with Outdoor Outreach, hosted a webinar on May 2, 2025, to provide guidance on submitting public comments to the Commission. The recorded webinar covered the importance of public participation in the creation of the Coastal Act, then walked the participants through the comment signup process and gave tips how to make an impact with your testimony. Over 200 participants from over California registered and through pre- and post-webinar surveys, staff saw a sharp increase in confidence and interest in public comment after the webinar. You can watch this public participation webinar recording. The link is on our website. And I would encourage anybody who didn't have a chance to participate and is interested in providing public comments to check that out. And just wanted to note, this is sort of part of our ongoing effort to make the, our, our process more accessible to as many Californians and folks that want to participate as possible and just making sure that we demystify our process to the extent that we can and make it easy for folks to understand how to talk to us about what their issues are. Next, Javier Padilla, Manager of the Commission's Environmental Justice Program, was invited to speak at the Black Image Collective's Spring Residency Program on May 10 at Bruce's Beach in Manhattan Beach. 12 black artists were selected to participate in this year's project entitled California's Coast in Color, which involves multimedia engagement with images of the California coast through the lens of the black community. Commission staff spoke to the artists about Prop 20, the Coastal Act, and current issues affecting the coast. Also, wanted to announce that the Coastal Commission is looking for a summer undergraduate intern who will work on projects based on their interests and location. The internship is a part-time, paid opportunity funded by a memorial fund for the visionary former leader of the agency, Peter Douglas, and in partnership with the California Marine Sanctuaries Foundation. So, if anyone who's listening is interested or you have any potential folks that might be interested, you can apply by looking at our website. The job posting is on our jobs webpage and includes submitting a statement of interest and a resume by June 13th, which is Friday. So, the deadline's coming up. Next, on May 15, staff from the Commission's statewide planning unit and North Coast District participated in a workshop hosted by the Grassroots Institute on LCP Updates for the jurisdictions of Mendocino County and the cities of Fort Bragg and Point Arena. The workshop, which was well-attended by members of the public, local government staff and environmental planning professionals, included presentations about the history and role of the Coastal Act and discussions on water, climate and sea level impacts, sea level rise impacts and transportation components of LCP Updates in this region. Commission staff presented on the LCP Update Process and highlighted opportunities for public engagement in Mendocino County. This workshop is part of a series hosted by the Grassroots Institute to facilitate public engagement and initiatives impacting the coastal zone in Mendocino County. So, next, a few announcements from our public education program. First, California State Parks and the California Coastal Commission's Boating Clean and Green Program and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's Office of Spill Prevention and Response will conduct a hybrid oil spill response communications workshop for boating facilities. Boating facility operators will learn about California's oil spill response structure, explore real-life spill case studies and receive spill response resources. Participants can attend in person at Ensigne Yacht Club in Alameda or register to attend virtually. And details can be found online on our website and also my published ED report. Next, the Boating Clean and Green Program, the California State Parks Boating Safety and Education Unit, released a new Dockside Podcast about new freshwater invasive species in California, the golden mussel. You can learn about when and where it got to California, where it is currently found, its biology and potential environmental and economic impacts. Also, the state's efforts to prevent further spread and best management practices for water users. Again, see my published ED report for a link to this and previous Dockside podcasts. Lastly, the Public Education Program will be hosting a display at the San Diego Fair in Del Mar throughout June with a Coast for All theme. You can find us at the Eco Hut at the end of the tunnel between Fiesta Village and Family Funville. So, please watch our Instagram page @TheCaliforniaCoast for updates about when staff will be there and for chats about coastal access, coastal stewardship and our Whale Tail Grants Program. And now, for the last item on this month's Executive Director Report, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Executive Director Madeline Cavalieri for a brief update on the Governor's May Budget Revision. Madeline?
Good morning, Commissioners. So, yeah, we wanted to give you a brief status update on the Commission's budget for fiscal year '25, which starts July 1. We don't have the final budget yet and things are extremely fluid right now. But we wanted to let you know where things sit at the moment. We'll be providing a full update after the budget is signed. So, the biggest change to our ongoing budget comes from two cuts that were made to our current year '24 budget. The Governor's proposed May revision to the '25 budget, which was released last month, provided additional details regarding these cuts. A table with a breakdown from the Governor's May Revision is on Page 4 of the Executive Director's Report, but the legislature arrived at some changes through their two-party agreement yesterday, so I'll talk through those. First, Section 4.05 of the '24 budget authorized the Department of Finance to reduce state operations expenditures from both general fund and special funds in each department up to 7.95% in fiscal year '24. And those cuts are now being proposed as permanent in the Commission's baseline budget. In the two-party agreement that was published yesterday, the legislature proposed to carry forward cuts to the general fund and the environmental license plate fund, but eliminated the cuts to our other special funds. So, that would make our cut under Section 4.05, that first table, about $2.4 million annually. We were able to absorb some of those cuts by renegotiating rents and reducing space in several of our office leases, as well as eliminating several underutilized cars and switching from landlines to internet calling. But the cut will further reduce our already extremely lean operating budget and will further limit staff's ability to participate in travel and training opportunities. So, the second table, Section 4.12 of the fiscal year '24 budget authorized the Department of Finance to reduce appropriations to achieve savings associated with positions that were vacant at the time in 2024 and to propose elimination of vacant positions to achieve the ongoing savings beginning in fiscal year '25. In the two-party agreement, the legislature proposed to hold off on the elimination of the positions until fiscal year '26 and took out some of the cuts to our special funds, but they maintain the majority of the funding cuts, meaning that the majority of the funding will still be cut for fiscal year '25 and positions will have to remain vacant in the meantime. We'll have to wait for the signed budget for the final outcome of this, but the Commission's total vacancy cut is now at least $1.4 million annually. And there are 10 positions that had been slated for elimination. You can see those also in the ED report. The seven general fund positions that may be eliminated were authorized in 2024 to implement Senate Bill 272 related to sea level rise planning. The Commission received 18. The Commission received 18 positions in total to implement 272, including analysts, attorneys, and scientists to provide technical assistance and support to all 76 of our coastal local governments in updating their local coastal programs to address sea level rise by 2034 as required by the new law. The loss of these seven positions will significantly impact the Commission's ability to complete that work. The other three vacant positions support Whale Tail Grants, statewide planning, and federal program activities. If the Legislature's proposal to spare some of our special funds from the cut carries forward, then these positions might not be impacted. I also wanted to point out that no existing staff people are directly impacted by the vacancy cut, but again, because the Commission is starting from such a lean position in terms of resources, all budget cuts impact our ability to carry out our program, and they further overburden the remaining staff. So the total amount of the Commission's cuts, including the operations reductions and the vacancy sweep under the Governor's May revision, was $4.7 million annually, and under the Legislature's current proposal, it's $3.85 million annually, so we'll have to wait for the final budget to be signed to find the final outcome. So again, things are still really fluid. We're gonna provide a full budget update soon. I'm available for questions now, and would also welcome any questions or suggestions for staff to address in our upcoming full update. Thank you.
Thank you. Question, do we take public comment on this report?
If there's a public comment on the Executive Director's Report, we definitely would. There usually is not, but there might be. We should check in.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
There is one, but they're not available. They're not here, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Prisciano?
I'm dismayed by the cuts, even though, as you discuss them, I don't understand the implications of them, you know, if they don't impact, but I am troubled. One of the motivating factors for me seeking this opportunity is to ensure that you have the capacity to be responsive to the public, to the applicants, to the permits, and that that not be delayed. And I assume, given so much is at stake, I realize the entire state budget is in...I work at San Diego State, so I know about budget cuts, but I'm wondering if a positionality can be expressed over the next few weeks, where we can say that these cuts are not going to slow down our work? And secondly, if there's a possibility of reallocating your budget to prioritize supporting appeals, supporting development, supporting those kinds of things that would motivate our continued, obviously, our core mission of protecting coast, but I don't want to see enforcement decline. I don't want to see our responsiveness to applicants and applicants decline, and I think that needs to be understood, given so much attention is given by the Legislature to how we perform. I think it's critical that we advise if we are going to be impacted with these cuts. I'm very interested in ensuring that we can express to the Legislature, whoever we report to, that we cannot slow down our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hart?
I just want to align myself with those great statements by our new Commissioner. Thank you so much. It really means a lot to those of us that have been on the Commission, and things do go up and down. I mean, there was a year that we actually did get more funding, for example, for enforcement and for local LCPs, but generally, what you witness is just a lot of pressure on the Commission and its staff. And, you know, it makes it hard to keep staff, because there are other opportunities for them that don't put them under this kind of pressure. But I particularly wanted to speak to what I see as the contradiction between legislative efforts to limit the timeline for our response, whether it's to 60 days, whether it's to 90 days, or even shorter time periods. There's currently one piece of legislation that restricts the response time on CDPs so that to a shorter time period than would even allow that particular item to come to the Commission. So the problem is, that approach just doesn't align itself with less and less staff, and I think it's really important that we continue to make the Legislature and the administration aware that it just doesn't work that way, and if there is going to be a restriction in our response time, say to 90 days, that it's accompanied by the funding to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nadoff?
Thank you for the breaking news update, really. I mean, yesterday's two-party agreement, and I did want to thank Senator Blake Spears and Assemblymember Connolly for their work in coming up, you know, leading the Legislature to this two-party agreement, which sounds like it could give the Commission some relief in terms of staffing issues, but I want to echo the call for if the Commission's gonna do its job, we need to have the staff to do the job. And when it comes, I'm particularly concerned that the funds that we were allocated to implement SB 272 on sea level rise, which Senator Laird worked so hard to get enacted, are now, how are we going to implement that? But I think the Commission had a very well-thought-out program for doing that, working in partnership with local governments. So, you know, the ocean and the climate are not waiting for anyone's budget management, so I'm concerned about that. I would hope that any final agreement does allow expenditure of the greenhouse gas reduction funds that the Commission is counting on, hopefully, and Prop 4 funds that the people of California voted to support just recently. So there are, you know, when the voters of California have a chance, the voters of California are supporting climate and environmental action, and I hope that the budget team in Sacramento will be listening to that. But it does sound like there's some progress here, that we might have some breathing room to work out something that'll help us manage in these tough budget times over the next fiscal year.
Through the Chair, if I might just respond real quick. First of all, thank you for the comments. We definitely share all of your concerns and have been on pins and needles for the entire year, trying to figure out what our budget's gonna look like. You know, first of all, I want to clarify, we don't know yet until it's signed. There could be more changes in either direction, and so just want to make that very clear. This is the information we have now, and we're sharing that with you because we think it's important, but it's not final till it's final. There's also the federal component of our budget that is still up in the air. We should have more information on that shortly, and so hopefully, when we do our budget update, after the budget is signed, we'll also have that information on the federal components as well. But I just want to agree with the comments from Commissioners about the concerns. You know, we really want to do the work, and the work is critical. I mean, we have required streamlining deadlines that we always focus on, and that's where we prioritize our staffing resources to meet those deadlines, and it keeps getting, you know, the interest is in moving faster, and we do, I think we agree that that could be a good way to address several of the problems the state has. It is, we can't do it with the existing staff we have. We, you know, I don't think we need huge increases either, but the reality is, if you want people to move faster, we have to figure out a way to do that and make it happen. We've been really clear with new legislation and trying to communicate that with the Legislature, and have gotten a lot of traction, and I think folks understand that generally. But the reality is, the state's in a hard budget situation. We're certainly not the only agency that's experiencing cuts, and so we need to figure out how to tighten our belts, where to do that, and as Madeline said, we've been working internally to try to find all the ways that we can without affecting staff, and we prioritize our staffing in our budget, and so that's where we're really working to figure out how to continue to prioritize the work. I am also concerned about the 272 work. As many of you know, that, you know, doing that LCP planning for sea level rise and climate change is a critical path for this agency and for the local governments that we work with, if we are going to be resilient into the future with climate change, and so that remains a concern and needs to be a focus for us internally, figure out how to meet that need with the resources we have, and hopefully with increased resources in the future when the budget does get better. But, you know, this is an ongoing challenge for all of us, so we appreciate, you know, we'll continue to communicate with you as we learn more and invite more kind of thoughts and comments about how to prioritize and things of that nature from you all. So just want to, again, appreciate all the comments and the opportunity to let you know where we are.
Thank you, and I will just align myself with the comments of all the Commissioners. Our staff does an incredible job doing more with less, but at a certain point, if we want to prioritize efficiency and effectiveness, it will require increased resources. There's only so many hours in the day. So with that, thank you, Director Hucklebridge, Ms. Cavalieri. I don't think we have any Commission correspondence, so we'll move on to the Legislative Report.
Correct. And Sean Drake will provide the Legislative Report, and he's online today.
Good morning, Chair Harmon and Commissioners. This is the Legislative Report for June. We're at about the halfway point in this year's legislative process. Last Friday was the deadline for bills to pass out of their House of origin. Bills that did are currently being referred to policy committees in the Second House. Bills that did not meet last Friday's deadline have become two-year bills, meaning that they're on pause for now, but can move again next year. I'm pleased to say that all three bills the Commission has taken a support position on this session met the First House deadline and are moving in their Second House. We've reorganized the written Legislative Report this month. It now lists all two-year bills together in one section, beginning on page 13. A few of the Commission's priority bills were amended in the past month. First, AB 462 by Assemblymember Lowenthal, which would exempt ADUs from the Coastal Act on a gradual county-by-county basis, was amended by the author. The amendments curtail the scope of the proposed exemption slightly by making it not apply immediately next to bluff edges or within some public access easements. That bill remains in the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee. SB 484 by Senator John Laird was also amended last month. That bill would direct the Commission to establish categorical exclusions for 100% affordable housing projects in the infill areas of three or more uncertified jurisdictions, and you'll recall that the Commission took a support position last month. The author made a technical amendment on the Senate floor to clarify that the categorical exclusions would not affect the applicability of other statutes unrelated to the Coastal Act. This amendment resolved a concern by the California League of Cities, which removed its opposition to the bill. The bill passed unanimously off the Senate floor and has been referred to the Assembly Natural Resources Committee. SB 675, Senator Padilla's bill that would create a special Coastal Act process specifically for the proposed Seaport San Diego project, which you heard several comments about this morning, was recently amended coming out of the Senate Appropriations Committee. Before I go further, I want to make one correction on a misstatement I made during last month's ledge report, and that is that the Seaport San Diego project site is located in Senator Akila Weber Pearson's Senate district, not in Catherine Blake Spears. At any rate, the recent amendments to SB 675 removed the intent language that had previously been in the bill, and replaced it with new language that would impose requirements on how quickly the Commission must review the Port Master Plan Amendment for the Seaport San Diego project, any technical documents sent to the Commission as a part of the SEQA process, and any CDP appeals for the project. These amendments resolve the most significant policy concerns that staff previously presented to the Commission, as the bill would no longer weaken the Coastal Act standard of review for the project. However, as staff noted last month, compressing how long the Commission has to review the project will present a fiscal impact. The amendments also don't remove the underlying precedential concern that this bill would create a new, separate Coastal Act process for a single project to develop public tidelands. Following the direction that the Commission provided staff last month, staff are continuing to engage with the author's office, legislative committees, and stakeholders to work toward a resolution, including emphasizing just what resources would be necessary for Commission staff to be able to implement the compressed timelines in the bill. The bill is in the Assembly, waiting to be referred to policy committees. One other amended bill to note is SB 681, the Senate Housing Omnibus Bill by Senator Ayesha Wahab. That bill was amended coming out of the Senate Appropriations Committee to make it so that local CDPs for multi-unit housing projects could no longer be appealed to the Commission on the basis that they are located in a sensitive coastal resource area or are not the principally permitted use of the parcel, if it's an unincorporated area. The amendments would also require the Commission to submit an annual report to the Legislature with information about appeals of multi-unit housing projects. Staff don't have concerns with most of the amendments that have been made to the bill, though we do believe that clarification is needed to avoid unintended consequences to sensitive coastal resource areas. Staff have had productive initial conversations with the author's office on this point, and will be continuing to communicate with them as the bill starts moving in the Assembly, and will provide further updates to the Commission. In addition to policy bill updates, Deputy Director Cavalieri described that the Legislature is in the thick of refining the state budget for the coming fiscal year. The deadline for the Legislature to pass the budget bill is June 15th, which is Sunday, and there have been plenty of budget committee hearings happening in the run-up to that deadline. As a part of the budget process, over the past month, the Governor's Administration has proposed a number of budget trailer bills intended to address various budget and policy priorities. So far, two of these proposed trailer bills would impact the Coastal Commission. The first would amend the Permit Streamlining Act to require the Commission to take final action on CDPs for most housing projects within 90 days of either when the Commission receives a complete application or the lead agency approves the project. This 90-day deadline has been in statute since 2017, but when the Legislature enacted it, it excluded the Commission due to the fiscal impact that would result from compressing the Commission's review process. This trailer bill would remove that exclusion, cutting in half the amount of time the Commission has to act on most housing projects, from the Permit Streamlining Act's default deadline of 180 days down to 90 days. Staff don't have policy concerns with processing CDPs for housing projects more quickly, but as was the case in 2017, and as you've heard this morning, additional staffing resources would be needed to meet this deadline. In line with several of the comments that have already been made, staff are coordinating with the Administration to identify those staffing needs and to provide information to the Legislature to inform future discussions of this proposed budget trailer once it eventually goes into print. The other proposed trailer bill relevant to the Commission deals with the Los Angeles 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games. The proposed trailer would add language to the Coastal Act specifying that the Olympic and Paralympic Games shall be considered temporary events and exempt from the Coastal Act. Staff are currently evaluating that language to analyze how it squares with the Commission's procedures and guidelines that already exempt certain temporary events from the Coastal Act. We anticipate that this and the Administration's other trailer bills will be formally introduced later in the session and moved through the legislative process later on in the summer. There are a couple new bills listed in the Legislative Report this month as well. One is AB 770 by Assemblymember Mark Gonzalez, which you've heard some comments about in previous Legislative Reports. That bill would extend the life of existing billboards that are exempt from local and state regulation by codifying an expansive definition for what activities can be undertaken to maintain a billboard, including billboards in areas that are naturally, culturally, or visually sensitive. Earlier this month, the bill passed out of the Assembly and is now waiting to be referred to policy committees in the Senate. Given the number of billboards in sensitive areas of the coastal zone, staff do have concerns about the potentially damaging unintended consequences of this bill in sensitive coastal areas. Our immediate focus remains on addressing the large number of measures that currently would directly amend the Coastal Act, but I want to emphasize that staff are monitoring this bill closely as it moves forward and communicating those concerns with relevant parties. The other new bill in the Legislative Report this month is AB 1007 by Assemblymember Blanca Rubio. This bill would amend the Permit Streamlining Act to shorten how long agencies have to act on permits for most housing projects from 90 days to 45 days. There is an important interplay here that I want to walk through between the Housing Trailer Bill that I just mentioned and this bill, AB 1007. Both measures would amend the same deadline in the Permit Streamlining Act for agency action on housing projects. The trailer bill would remove the language that currently excludes the Commission from the 90-day deadline, and then AB 1007 would shorten the 90-day deadline for all agencies to 45 days. The bottom line is that if both the trailer bill and this policy bill were enacted this session... bottom line is that if both the trailer bill and this policy bill were enacted this session, the amount of time the Commission would have to take action on CDPs for most housing projects would be cut by 75%, from 180 days to 45 days. And while I stated that a 90-day deadline raises fiscal concerns but not policy concerns, as Vice Chair Hart observed earlier, a 45-day deadline would run up against the very practical limit of how quickly the Commission can review a complete application, prepare a staff report, and agendize it for a hearing. Given that the housing trailer bill just dropped at the very end of May, staff are still evaluating the procedures of the PSA to gain a full understanding of the potential Coastal Act ramifications of shortening this deadline under both measures. We'll provide more updates to the Commission in future legislative reports as we have additional As a final bit of legislative news, on Monday, Senate Pro Tem Mike McGuire, who will reach the legislative term limit next year, announced that Senator Monique Lamon will be the next Senate Pro Tem, with a transition to be held in early 2026. Senator Lamon represents Senate District 21, encompassing all of Santa Barbara County, as well as portions of Ventura and San Luis Obispo Counties, and she's currently the Chair of the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee. Staff look forward to working with Senator Lamon's office in her new capacity at the appropriate time next year. With that, Chair Harmon, unless there are any questions, that concludes the legislative report.
Thank you, Mr. Drake, and I have to just echo the congratulations to Senator Malone -- Lamon. We are extremely proud of her. She's an incredible leader in our county and has been for a long time. So with that, are there any public comments on the legislative report?
Yes, we have three speakers. We'll start with Sylvia Van Royen, followed by Robin Rudisil, and then Noel Gold. Sylvia Van Royen, and we do have your presentation. We're bringing it up.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. So my name is Sylvia. I work for Humboldt Waterkeeper, and I'm here to talk about AB 770, a bill that proposes to weaken existing regulations on billboards in California. Humboldt Waterkeeper has been working to remove billboards from wetlands around Humboldt Bay for many years. Next slide, please. The Caltrans Office of Outdoor Advertising regulates billboards in California. Of the 7,000 billboards in the state, there are over 400 within wetlands, and according to Caltrans, over 700 are on or adjacent to cultural sites. Next slide, please. By expanding the definition of customary maintenance, AB 770 would exempt significant modifications to aging billboards, lumping significant modifications in with customary maintenance. Next slide, please. This expanded definition of maintenance of AB 770, combined with Section 5412's protections, would result in regulatory immunity for billboard owners, shielding them from a multitude of agency reviews. Next slide. Here are some examples of the type of billboards that would be allowed to be rebuilt without permits under AB 770. As you can see, these are in wetlands or directly in a bay. Next slide, please. Many of these billboards are on public lands. For example, this is a billboard on state parkland along Highway 101, not in a wetland, but attached to a redwood tree. Next slide. AB 770 would allow these old non-conforming structures to be converted to steel structures, such as these, without permitting or other government reviews. Next slide. Such conversions under AB 770 would allow heavy equipment to disturb sensitive areas. Next slide, and we can skip that slide as well. So finally, we urge the Commission to oppose AB 770 and to require CEQA and Coastal Act compliance for all existing and future billboards, to undertake a comprehensive statewide survey to identify the locations of existing legal non-conforming billboards, and to coordinate with Caltrans on the removal of billboards statewide from state tight and public trust plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robin Rudisil.
Good morning, Commissioners, and excellent report, Sean. Also, I support the last speaker. I'm here today to urge thoughtful caution regarding Senate Bill 484, which proposes to direct the Coastal Commission by July 2027 to establish categorical exclusion areas for 100% affordable housing projects in infill areas of the coastal zone where there is no LCP. I do generally support the bill, and I understand and strongly support the goal of increasing affordable housing, but SB 484, as written, would bypass a core safeguard of the Coastal Act, the CDP process, across areas that are highly sensitive. The bill would allow categorical exclusions or cataxes in places that have not yet gone through the full LCP process, even though those very areas depend on permit review to ensure development does not harm public access or coastal resources. If this pilot program is going to proceed, in order to succeed, we ask that key exceptions be made, especially in areas most vulnerable to loss of public access and environmental degradation. Specifically, we request that categorical exclusions not apply within the dual-permit jurisdiction zone or within a half mile of the inland dual-zone boundary and within a half mile of parks. I also suggest that special coastal communities are an exception, particularly to the extent that designation relies on that special coastal community being characterized by a particular cultural, historical, or architectural heritage that is distinctive, as is the case with Venice and San Pedro here in Los Angeles. These are areas where coastal protections are especially needed and where state oversight is crucial. More affordable housing is critical, but so is protecting the coast for all Californians. We urge you to work with the legislators to refine SB 484 so that it reflects both values. Please support the recommended exceptions to ensure that this bill does not unintentionally undermine public coastal access and the protection of our precious coastal resources. Thank you.
Let's see, you're still muted. There you go.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to the new Commissioners and Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you so much. Also, I'm speaking on SB 484 and completely agree with the last speaker. I'd like to express my concern and urge you to be thoughtful and especially cautious regarding SB 484. Affordable housing in the coastal zone is important, and of course, I support it, but not at the expense of our vital Coastal Act protections. As written, 484 would bypass the CDP process in very sensitive areas, and the bill would allow categorical exclusions in areas that haven't gone through the full LCP process, and these areas depend on permit review to ensure development doesn't harm the public access or coastal resources. We can't fall into the habit of rubber stamping any bill that mentions the word "housing" without thorough investigation as well. If the pilot program is to move forward and have a chance of being successful, we're going to ask that the key exceptions be made, especially in areas most vulnerable to loss of public access and environmental degradation. Specifically, as the last speaker said, we like exemptions in the coastal zone and also half a mile -- the dual-zone, the dual-zone of the coastal and a half a mile from there, and also a half a mile from parks, to be sure to keep those areas safe, and state oversight is crucial. And the other bill I have a deep concern about is 1294, AB 1294, which masquerades as a housing development standardized application form bill. It states, "The bill would also prohibit a local government from requiring any additional information or process before entitling a housing project, including pre-application submissions, approvals, reviews, meetings, public notices, or any other requirements. This is a flagrant violation of the public's constitutional due process rights, and we implore the Commission to take a position against this bill unless that language is removed."
Thank you. There are no more speakers for this item. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from Commissioners? Seeing none?
No, I'm here. Hold on.
Sorry, sorry. How could I forget? Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks. I just couldn't find the hand up button on my computer here. Hey, just a couple of things. I do want to address the AB 770, because again, it has, I think, not necessarily an outsized impact on my community in terms of the structures that are billboards, and many, many of them located in my community or in really Northern California are in sensitive habitats, in culturally sensitive habitats, or culturally sensitive areas, but across the state as well. And I just think that I'm emoting or messaging out to folks who are concerned about their local communities and really about local control. So what this bill does is it removes local authorities or local governments' ability to regulate these structures, not just from a zoning perspective. And again, the Outdoor Advertising Act, which is what this amends, was came out of the 1965 Highway Beautification Act, so it is, in essence, an environmental bill that was done back then to essentially move these structures out of our scenic and sensitive habitats and into commercial zones. That's what its purpose was to do. That job obviously isn't done. These structures are all over sensitive areas and scenic routes across the state of California. But what this bill would do is basically stop that process from happening and remove the local jurisdictions from doing not just their zoning laws and their signing ordinances, but it would even not allow them to use their UVC uniform building code to effectuate safety in these structures. And so these structures do blow into spaces, people run into them, they do fall down, does happen, and so local jurisdictions would not have that. The state jurisdictions would also lose their authority. So in terms of foundation work or Cal-OSHA requirements for work on these structures, all of those would be erased by this bill. To me, we're talking about deregulation in terms of things like housing and in the Legislature and in terms of renewable energy. I find it ironic or whatever, I don't know what the right word is, but maybe this isn't the place where we should be, and I don't think it's popular amongst the state to deregulate this particular structure and these particular impacts, especially to this degree. Your backyard porch, every structure in the state of California that has a structural amend to it would require a building permit. These would be the only structure, really, in the state of California, especially commercial structure, that would be exempt from basic building code and local zoning under this ordinance. So I'm really hoping that out there, those of you in your jurisdictions, in your city and county jurisdictions that don't want to lose the ability to regulate this and control this, please let your Legislature know. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Well said. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Chair Harmon. I want to align myself with those comments from Commissioner Wilson and just share that I also have the same concerns about AB 770 and what it means for the lack of local control for some of these billboards that have appeared haphazardly or been built over the years in some of our communities, especially in rural areas. We recently, in the North Coast area, had a pretty active political campaign regarding animal agriculture, and a lot of billboards were created during that campaign, built out of kind of, you know, interesting structures and things that appeared overnight, and now they are still there. And so our concern specifically is that they will remain and will turn into outdoor advertising and could be, as mentioned, basically created these permanent structures, and this is an exemption that would greatly interrupt our ability for local, whether it's cities or counties, to regulate those billboards. And so I do have concerns about it, both in the rural context, also for within our city limits. I had a follow-up question about AB 1007, which is the Rubio bill, and I'm wondering, is this -- does this apply to all lead agencies that are public agencies, or is this specific to the Coastal Commission? Can you just speak a little bit more regarding who this impacts and the likelihood that we are going to see this move forward?
I'm going to respond through the Chair. So I mentioned two measures that are affecting this same deadline in the Permit Streamlining Act. There's the trailer bill, and then there's AB 1007. So under existing law, this provision of the Permit Streamlining Act imposes a 90-day final action deadline on responsible agencies to take action on what I kind of summarily describe as most housing projects. The Commission is currently excluded from that 90-day deadline. And so the housing trailer bill proposal, you know, again, it hasn't gone into print, but it's been proposed, would remove that exclusion, which would bring that requirement to bear on the Commission, just like it currently applies to other responsible agencies. By contrast, AB 1007 would revise that number, that 90-day deadline, to 45 days for all responsible agencies. And so if the proposed housing trailer language brought the Commission into the fold of that 90-day deadline, and then the 90-day deadline were revised down to 45, that 45-day deadline would apply to the Commission and all other responsible agencies that currently are required to meet that 90-day deadline in statute.
Thank you for clarifying. And through the Chair, I just want to comment that I think, you know, while we all hold housing as, you know, an incredibly high priority in our communities and across the state, I also think that, you know, we are required to uphold the Coastal Act, and the kind of competing challenge that we're facing here is that we are putting these policy provisions, really, you know, this proposed legislation really is going to hamstring our staff in a way that makes it impossible to work in concert with other local jurisdictions or work with these housing developers. And I think what we've demonstrated in other pieces of legislation that are moving forward around prioritizing housing and especially affordable housing is that we want to do it in a way that is sensitive to the priorities of the Coastal Act. And so I think that this, I think staff and our Legislative Committee, you know, should feel really confident in pushing back on some of these challenges, because it makes it impossible for us to uphold the will of the voters to advance this work. We do prioritize housing, and we will and we can, but we also can't do it under these, you know, ridiculous constraints. I think that that is without being rooted in the reality that we're facing in terms of some of these projects and how they're being proposed and how we can evaluate them from an environmental perspective. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hart.
Thank you. I have a question, Sean. So just focusing again on AB 1007, since there really is no way that we could comply with that that I can see, I just can't see how it would be possible. What would happen in that case, you know, if the Commission's not able to consider these housing project applications in the timeline that's allowed?
Through the Chair, it's a great question. It's exactly what we're looking into at the moment. You know, I'll admit, I think as staff and as an agency, we're not in the habit of not meeting the Permit Streamlining Act deadline that applies to the Commission. And so we're in a position of doing research right now on exactly what the procedures are for when such a deadline is not met, not because the Commission wouldn't have any intention of making every effort to try to meet that deadline where it's shortened, but just as a matter of preparation. And so I think the Commission is currently reviewing the Permit Streamlining Act in greater detail to understand what set of processes is triggered if that deadline is not met by a responsible agency, just so we can fully understand kind of the universe of implications as it relates to the Coastal Act and any potential impacts.
And now that, thank you very much for that. So that's going to be critically important, and I think almost worthy of an informational email to the Commission so we can understand, because this will be, again, between our meeting times. This is going to be moving forward, and we don't meet for another month. So right now, this is moved over to the Senate according to your memo before the Local Government Committee, and when is it going to be heard then, do you?
We don't believe it's been scheduled yet for a hearing. It only recently received its referral.
Is it going to go to Housing in the Senate and Natural Resources?
I believe it's been double-referred to the Senate Housing Committee, and so it would go to, well, let me retract that, actually. I just confirmed it's been singly referred to the Assembly Local Government Committee.
Assembly or Senate?
Sorry, Senate, thank you.
So no other committees in the Senate are going to be hearing it?
No other policy committees would be hearing the bill. It would go to the Appropriations Committee.
Okay. It's all concerning. It's a very concerning bill. I mean, there's a lot to consider in your report, but I think of everything, what you're hearing from us, or at least hearing from me, from Commissioner Kelly, and I'm sure everyone shares this view, I assume, is that this is something that really could undermine and, you know, make it impossible for what the voters expressed a strong support of protecting the coast of California, and they continue to support very strongly. Not to mention, building houses in dangerous areas that's subject to sea level rise, subject to, you know, all sorts of other climate-related and just environmental threats, just makes no sense. Just, so I think it's very important that we track this bill, and I remain very concerned about it. I also just wanted to express my appreciation. I also just wanted to express my appreciation, some monstrous amount of work for you all, and thank you so much for everything that you're doing up in Sacramento. It's just a really, a big effort. Also wanted to acknowledge the election of Senator Lamone. I was in brief contact with her, and she said that she really looks forward to working closely with Pro Tem McGuire. They're really aligned as they move forward, what she can learn from him, and he's been such a, continues to be such a great leader. So the fact that Senator Lamone is following such an incredible public servant, my county, former county supervisor and boss, Senator McGuire, leader Pro Tem, I'm really excited about both of their leadership. It's great. And then I just want to finally continue to express my concern about exemption bills, bills that exempt the Coastal Act undermine what the voters have expressed, which is protection of public access, protection of the coastal natural resources. But when you move then to these very short timeframe bills that we don't have the staff or the funding to address, as I said earlier, it creates an almost impossible situation for the Commission. So thanks, thank you, Chair, for me reiterating my concerns, and thank you again, Sean.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson.
Hey, there is the bill 462 that I have, I guess, a kind of a question about. It just, it confuses me. Essentially, it's to allow for or to exempt ADU construction from LCPs, I guess, if there is a declared emergency. And I'm just coming at it from a local governance perspective. So as a county, we do like our upland version of our ADU ordinance, and then our coastal version of our ADU ordinance, and cities and counties do that that are all along, you know, along the coast. And so I guess I'm just kind of wondering, like, when that, when that emergency hits, does it completely exempt the LCP version or our coastal versions of our ordinances, and then still align or doesn't align with our, with our non-coastal version of them? I mean, we go through a lot of trouble to do these ordinances and get through all the process and do this, and then it's hard to know, it seems confusing a bit. And so, again, a shout-out to local governments to maybe take a look at this particular bill in terms of just like, how does it actually get applied? You know, have some folks saying, okay, if there's an emergency or a declaration that's been done and it's in, you know, for us in our county, that can be two hours driving away from the coast. And then does that mean that it enacts this provision two hours away? Or how does that work? And has that been sort of straightened out yet?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Wilson. To your first question about kind of the ramification of the exemption being triggered, so just the way the bill is structured, if an emergency is declared by the governor for a disaster anywhere in a coastal county, under the provisions of the bill, accessory dwelling units would be exempt from the requirement to obtain a coastal development permit throughout that county's coastal zone, regardless of whether a site is where the disaster occurred or whether it's, as you said, two hours away but still in the same county. And so that's to say, the exemption is on a county-by-county basis for when there is an emergency declaration within that county, and the exemption of ADUs would apply throughout that entire county's coastal zone. And so to, I think, your first point about how that would play out, the language of the bill specifically exempts an ADU from the requirement to obtain a coastal development permit. And in a certified jurisdiction with a local coastal program, the coastal development permit process, as you know, is where LCP policies are brought to bear on proposed development. And so if a proposed project, such as an ADU under this bill, is exempt from obtaining a coastal development permit or similar authorization, those LCP policies are not going to be brought to bear on that development. And so it could proceed regardless of what policies are in the jurisdiction's certified LCP.
I guess what I'm saying is that we have LCP policy in our ordinance, embedded in the ordinance, that is, in addition to what we have in our upland ordinance, but we still have our upland ordinance policies because we have land use protections. I'm just giving you an example of, we have a 40-acre parcel, we have an ADU ordinance that says, you know, that ADU has to be within the curtilage or the area where the house is, so that we don't have de facto subdivision and bifurcations of our resource lands. Is that protection still there even though there was a declared emergency, you know, two hours inland? And I'm just, that's what I'm kind of getting at. I don't know if we have an answer to that today, but it is a concern. I would say that cities might have, big counties might have a concern because, you know, you're just more prone to have an emergent or a declaration made somewhere very far away from these locations and then have this sort of upending of your local ordinances.
If I may respond briefly through the chair, you know, I would point out the exemption from the requirement to obtain a coastal development permit, looking at the language of the bill, seemingly would not impact other local requirements that are on the books that are wholly separate from the local coastal program. That said, you know, given the diversity of counties in California's coastal zone and the way in which they've structured how their LCP interrelates with other land use ordinances that they have on the books, the specifics of how this exemption would apply will likely see county-to-county variability, and it'll generate questions like this and likely some confusion. And that's one of the points of concern that staff has with the bill, is that while the concept of an exemption, I think, is simple to understand, when it comes to how that will play out locally, especially in terms of how the LCP connects to other local ordinances, it's not quite so cut and dry. And I think that in an instance of emergency, won't have the same kind of light switch effect as maybe is currently intended. And so I think that's an opportunity for additional clarification. The staff has identified and provided some technical assistance in Sacramento with that objective in mind.
And last comment, the concern is also related to cities that are within the counties. So we have these very cross-jurisdictional, it's just, it's something that needs to be hashed out, I think, and I appreciate you guys' work on that. And I'm asking our staff at our county to take a closer look, as well as the cities, to see how they interpret that. And in the past, I've found there are different interpretations of that bill. So, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Drake, for the presentation and all your, all your good work, the good discussion. So now we'll be moving to item 8D, which is consideration of the work program and budget associated with SONGS mitigation. Mr. Tufel, is that you?
I'm Rachel Pausch. I'm presenting. I don't know.
There we go.
Thank you. Okay, great. Good morning, Chair Harmon, Vice Chair Hart, and Commissioners. I do have a slideshow, so if we could... Yes, wonderful, thank you. The next item is 8D, the Proposed Work Plan and Budget for the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station Mitigation Monitoring Program for 2026 and 2027. For shorthand, I'll refer to the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station in this presentation by its acronym, SONGS. We are bringing you this before you today to share the current status of the mitigation program and because the Commission's approval of the budget and work plan is required in order for independent monitoring of the mitigation projects to continue. The SONGS mitigation program is one of the Commission's longest-running compliance efforts. The Commission's predecessor, the California Coastal Zone Conservation Commission, approved a permit for the construction and operation of Units 2 and 3 at SONGS in 1974. Next slide, please. Comprehensive impact studies carried out at that time showed that the power plant's cooling water system would have two primary types of adverse impacts on the marine environment. First, the seawater brought into the plant through these intake pipes would contain immature stages of fish and other marine life that would be lost. This would result in substantial reductions of nearshore fish and marine productivity in Southern California. Second, the discharge from Units 2 and 3 would create plumes of turbid or cloudy water that would cause shading and a loss of nearby kelp beds and associated fish and invertebrates. Next slide, please. To mitigate for these impacts, the Commission required that Southern California Edison implement and fund a mitigation program with two principal components. One, the creation of a tidal wetland to provide out-of-kind mitigation for losses of immature fish entrained in the intakes; and two, construction of a kelp reef to mitigate for losses of kelp, fish, and other invertebrates at the San Onofre Kelp Forest. The mitigation projects are now known as the San Diego Tua Wetlands, located in Del Mar, and the Wheeler North Reef Complex, located off the coast of San Clemente. Next slide, please. Monitoring of the created mitigation reef began in 2009 and in 2011 for the wetlands. Annual monitoring of the mitigation wetland and reef provides data used to assess whether the project is meeting the performance standards included in the permit. The monitoring team may use the data to determine the cause of any shortfalls and inform Southern California Edison, who then proposes appropriate remediation to bring the project into compliance with performance standards. A key component of the SONGS mitigation monitoring program is its independence from the applicant and its partners, ensuring that the mitigation is evaluated by a qualified independent entity with no vested interest in the results. That independent entity is comprised of a team of scientists from UC Santa Barbara. A separate science advisory panel provides scientific oversight and guidance to Commission staff and the monitoring team. Another key component of the program is the annual public workshop used to share monitoring and compliance results with the public. Next slide, please. Shown here are the absolute and relative performance standards used to evaluate the success of the Wheeler North mitigation reef complex. This reef was constructed in three phases using predominantly quarry rock and currently covers approximately 373 acres. These success standards measure kelp, fish, invertebrates, invasive species, and more. The absolute standards are measured at the Wheeler North Reef Complex and compared to a fixed value, while the relative standards are evaluated against two reference reef sites. Following 10 years of monitoring and an additional three years of successful performance following the completion of the third phase of construction in 2024, the Commission approved a transition to a less intensive monitoring approach for the Wheeler North Reef. That reduced monitoring will continue as long as the reef continues to meet annual success criteria. Next slide, please. Since the third phase of the Wheeler North construction in 2019, giant kelp area and fish standing stock are measured using cumulative totals across years. Although the project must ultimately compensate for impacts with a reef that annually supports 150 acres of kelp and 28 tons of fish multiplied by 32 years, equal to the operating life of the nuclear generating station, the project continues to accumulate credit towards these goals. Since 2019, the project has earned six years of hard substrate, invasive species, and additional relative criteria credit. The mitigation will not be considered fulfilled until all of these criteria are met for the required time span. Next slide, please. Shown here are the absolute and relative performance standards used to evaluate the success of Southern California Edison's San Diego Tua Wetlands Restoration Project. These standards are measured annually and include measurements of vegetation, hydrology, birds, fish, invertebrates, and more. Similar to the reef, the relative standards are compared to three other Southern California reference wetlands each year. Next slide, please. In order to receive mitigation credit for a given year, the wetland restoration project must meet all of the absolute standards. For relative standards, it must perform at least as well as the worst-performing reference wetland. So far, the San Diego Tua Wetlands have yet to meet the absolute standard for habitat areas. This was first due to the lack of vegetated salt marsh. However, thanks to Southern California Edison's supplemental planting program and other factors, the vegetation cover has increased at San Diego Tua. Currently, the system is meeting the standard for vegetated salt marsh habitat area, but is now falling short in the mudflat habitat area. Mudflat habitat is important because it supports small invertebrates and provides foraging area for a wide range of birds and other marsh species. The project team is currently evaluating potential remediation options to address the lack of mudflat habitat at the site. The project has also failed to meet the relative standard requirements due to the low densities and diversity of invertebrate and fish species and the historically slow rate of vegetation development. Consequently, in combination with the unmet habitat area standard, the wetland project has not yet received mitigation credit. However, the vegetation density criteria is expected to be met soon, and the project team is investigating potential remediation measures for other unmet success criteria. Next slide, please. According to the work program, accordingly, the work program before you today includes funding for both 2026 and 2027. These funds support the 20 staff and the facilities needed to monitor the mitigation and reference sites, the boats, vehicles, and other necessary equipment to access and assess the sites, a comprehensive database management system used to store and analyze over a decade's worth of data that is available to the public, and other administrative costs associated with the program. The total budget for the two-year work program is slightly over $7 million. This is broadly consistent with the last several budgets for the mitigation program, but also reflects increases due to inflation, material, equipment costs, and rising wages. We are also recommending Commission approval of a contingency fund of roughly $1.5 million to be used in consultation with SCE if needed. This contingency fund would cover additional costs of a return to full reef monitoring should the reef complex cease to meet success criteria. The contingency fund could also be used to cover the costs of additional collaboration with the scientific advisory panel in identifying potential reasons for unmet success criteria. Before the staff report was finalized, staff had the opportunity to discuss the draft work plan and budget with Southern California Edison. They are in agreement with the task and budget contained in the proposed work plan. Next slide, please. The motion and resolution for this item can be found on page five of the staff report. Staff would like to thank both Southern California Edison and the contract scientists at UC Santa Barbara for their continued collaboration in this program. If you would like to request additional information on the SONGS mitigation monitoring program, I'd be happy to answer questions. Representatives of both Southern California Edison and the independent monitoring program at UC Santa Barbara are also available. I'd also note that UC SB, excuse me, the UC SB website listed on this slide includes a wealth of information. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments on this item?
We don't have anyone sign up who wishes to speak. We just have four available for questions, including the three from UC Santa Barbara, Rachel Smith, Mark Page, and Dan Reed. I believe Rachel Smith is here in person. And then Joseph Stamberski from Southern California Edison, also available for questions.
Wonderful, thank you. Bring it back to the Commission for any comments, questions, or a motion.
I just want, for purposes of clarification, that these are mitigation funds that are provided by the applicant. This is the funding source for this.
So Edison, yeah, so the budget for the monitoring comes from Edison, Southern California Edison, to do this program as part of their requirements for mitigation.
Right, I was just thinking, this discussion coming right on the heels of how budget shortfalls, I wanted to clarify that these are not funds that are coming from the Commission.
No.
I'm fine making a motion. I hereby move that the Commission approve the 2026 and 2027 two-year SONGS work program and budget and contingency fund, and I recommend, as recommended by the staff, and I'm asking for a yes vote.
Second.
Either the maker or second or like to speak to their motion? Thank you. Then may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Miller.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nadoff.
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Preciado.
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. With that, the 2026-2027 work program and budget is approved. So we'll move on to the next item, the LCP grants program.
And for this item, Shahar Amateh will be presenting the staff recommendation. Shahar, he's online.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to present an LCP grant application for your consideration from the City of Los Angeles for the Venice Coastal Segment. Staff is recommending approval. Next slide, please. As a reminder, the LCP grant program has been running for over, just over 10 years and has awarded $26.5 million to 47 jurisdictions for 93 different projects to support LCP development or updates with a special emphasis on addressing impacts from climate change and sea level rise. More recently, the Budget Act of 2021 appropriated $31 million to the Coastal Commission, both to award to local governments as grants and to support Coastal Commission staff administering the program. More recently, the Budget Act of 2021 appropriated $31 million to the Coastal Commission, both to award to local governments as grants and to support Coastal Commission staff administering the program and working with the local, with the local governments. If this grant is awarded today, we will have about $4 million left to award it to me now in June of 2026. And with several pending projects in the pipeline, we are on track to fully disperse the funds within the next few months. Next slide, please. The commission has updated its adopted priorities and evaluation criteria for the grant program over time to better reflect the current state of coastal resiliency planning and to ensure efficient use of funds. Eligible grantees include local governments responsible for developing many LCPs and eligible projects are those that assess, plan for, and adapt to the impacts of climate change and sea level rise, and which contain an LCP planning component. The program prioritizes technical studies and outreach, environmental justice, adaptation planning at various scales, and work on LCPs. The commission has also made a series of adjustments to the application process over time to streamline it and make it more accessible to local governments. Currently, all grant applications can be submitted and awarded on a rolling basis. The executive director can approve awards up to 500,000, while grants for more than $500,000 require approval from the commission. To date, the executive director has approved 17 grants totaling $5.3 million. These grants are described in Section E of the staff report. The grant application in front of you today falls into the latter category of proposals that are over $500,000 and which require commission approval. Next slide, please. City of Los Angeles is seeking $1.1 million to complete a full draft of the Venice LCP as well as an update to the Venice Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment to reflect the state's 2024 Sea Level Rise Guidance and to facilitate future adaptation planning. Specifically, the project includes a comprehensive overhaul of the existing certified land use plan that will go through staff-level admin review, then public review, and local adoption by the city's planning commission. For the implementation plan, or the IP, the city will complete a final draft of the staff level admin review, the city will complete a final draft for staff level admin review and then public review. The targeted update to the 2018 Venice Vulnerability Assessment will inform the preparation of the LCP and IP drafts. The overarching goals and objectives of the project are to advance completion of the Venice Segment LCP, build on previously completed sea level rise planning work, provide more detailed and comprehensive information on coastal hazards, sea level rise vulnerability, and engage with the wide range of stakeholders. Proposed project will also develop a framework or roadmap of next steps and recommendations to ensure that the city remains committed to comprehensive-based adaptation planning approach when addressing future sea level rise impacts. Next slide, please. Staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the LCP Grant Program priorities and evaluation criteria adopted by the commission. First, it would lead to the development and eventual certification of a Venice Segment LCP for the very first time. The City of Los Angeles Venice Coastal Segment currently has an existing LUP that was certified in 2001. However, the City of Los Angeles remains one of only 12 coastal jurisdictions statewide that does not have a fully certified LCP, as it does not have, as it does not have a certified IP currently. Since the early 2010, 2010s, the city has been intending to complete a comprehensive overhaul of the existing LUP and to pair it with an IP such that the Venice area could be fully LCP certified and to ensure that the new and revamped LCP would better address sea level rise and other critical coastal act issues. In 2015, the city was awarded two LCP grants to develop a coastal hazards vulnerability assessment, which was completed in 2018, for the Venice Coastal Segment and to update its LUP. The previous grants culminated in numerous community workshops and outreach events, a transportation and parking study, and in fall 2022, administrative drafts of the new LUP and IP. Since 2022, the city's planning staff has been collaborating with commission staff on the administrative LUP draft with the aim of releasing a working draft to the public for review. The city has also indicated interest in developing zoning standards and regulations that are in a format consistent with the other areas of the city that are further inland, called quote-unquote zoning strings, which could, which would be crucial for commission staff's and the public's review of a draft IP. Most recently, the city has encountered difficulties in preparing and submitting an IP draft with a full set of zoning standards and regulations since only a subset of zoning strings has been developed to date, and there has been a recent redirected focus towards the LUP. In addition, due to present budgetary constraints, city planning staff are also confronted with limited capacity and ability to work on LCP. This grant would help immensely in ensuring that staffing and resources for the city's LCP planning team continue into the future and that the LUP and IP would be fully carried through the public review process. To demonstrate that the city is committed to completion of the LCP beyond the grant term, the city is specifying tasks that would be completed beyond the grant term in 2028 and thereafter that will take the LUP and IP drafts through the local adoption process and towards the middle to the commission staff for certification. Additionally, the work would address climate change and sea level rise resiliency. By prioritizing full LCP certification, the city is ensuring that the LUP and IP are harmonized in their treatment and acknowledgement of coastal hazards exacerbated by sea level rise and climate change. Staff recommends imposing a condition that requires the grant agreement to explicitly include incorporation of baseline sea level rise policies and implementing provisions, and the city agrees to such a condition. The city would also complete a targeted update to the 2018 Venice Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment to reflect best available science per the state's 2024 Sea Level Rise Guidance. The vulnerability assessment update will be concurrent with the development of the LUP and IP documents such that it informs their preparation. As part of this effort, the city will also prepare a framework that identifies the planning work and associated timelines necessary for ensuring consistency with SB 272. Senate Bill 272 requires local governments to develop sea level rise adaptation plans as part of new or updated LCPs by January 1st of 2034. As such, in addition to identifying potential future planning work necessary for consistency with SB 272, such as the development of a sea level rise adaptation plan and economic impact analysis, the city's framework will discuss how that information would be incorporated into the city's by then certified LCP through a future amendment. This roadmap is thus crucial that it would result in identification of actionable approaches that could be implemented in the coming years in accordance with SB 272 requirements. Staff notes that this type of phased LCP update approach whereby an initial LCP certification that includes basic sea level rise policies would then be followed by more detailed adaptation planning work, the subsequent LCP amendment, has been recommended by the Coastal Commission Local Government Working Group as a way to improve efficiency and success for future LCP updates. Finally, the project addresses environmental justice in several key ways. In addition to reaching out to a broad range of stakeholders, the outreach plan that the city is proposing will include efforts to ensure participation by low-income communities, indigenous communities, communities of color, and other marginalized communities. Now that there's an addendum to this item, addressing two letters received from members of the public that are in opposition to the staff recommendation. The letters, which are in the correspondence file, generally contend that members of the public have provided comments to the city regarding Venice community planning, that the city has not adequately addressed them to date, and then looking forward that the public will not have sufficient time or opportunity to provide input on the LCP deliverables during the grant process. Staff reiterates that public engagement is a key part of the proposed grant application, but to better, better respond to the commenter's concerns, staff recommends adding the special condition reflecting that the city will consider relevant public comments submitted to date as part of the early LCP drafting process. Additional details can be found in the addendum. Next slide, please. In conclusion, commission staff recommends awarding an LCP Local Assistance Grant to the City of Los Angeles for the Venice LCP project in the amount of $1.1 million. The motion and resolution are on page three of the staff report, and staff are recommending a yes vote. Commission staff and City of LA staff are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Amete. Are there any speakers signed up for this item?
Yes, we have four speakers who wish to speak. We have the City of LA on Zoom, starting with Shauna Bonston.
My name is Shauna Bonston, and I'm a deputy director overseeing long-range planning with the city planning department, City of Los Angeles. I am here on behalf of Planning Director Vince Bertoni to express from the leadership of our department, our sincere commitment and, and purpose to productively creating the certified LCP for Venice. We are serious about this work effort, being successful and having an outcome that is valuable. This has been a long-term effort and with an investment towards a shared goal. So to achieve this goal, city planning and the coastal commission staff have established an LCP review process, which we are in the middle of, and this leverages, of course, the coastal commission's experience across the state. It's a little bit different from what our normal process would be. As the agency collaboration with coastal commission staff and review, we look forward to the release of this public land use plan draft in 2026, and that will include new zoning as well as sea level rise policies aligned with the 2024 SLR policy guidance. And this will really be the next significant opportunity for public comment and feedback on the draft LCP. Of course, following that, we have our process of open houses, workshop, public hearings. The item will go to our planning commission, the item will go to our council, as well as committees on the council. So this is just to share that we are committed to the outreach and transparency in the context of the best practices that coastal commission staff employ and respect their process. And honorable commission, we just really thank you for your consideration and would be very appreciative of this grant approval. Thanks.
Thank you. And we also have two other people from the City of LA, LA available for questions. We have three other speakers. We'll start with Robin Rudisil, followed by Noel Gold, and then Dr. Naomi Nightingale. Robin Rudisil, go ahead.
Before you start the clock, may I have three minutes?
I think we're giving everyone two minutes. Thank you.
I'll do my best. Citizens preserving Venice. We cannot support the $1.1 million grant to Los Angeles for the Venice Segment unless certain key issues are addressed. The public will not see a draft LUP until August 2026 after multiple rounds of confidential edits between city and commission staff. This is not meaningful public engagement. Making matters worse, the final draft will go through a brief, less than three-month public review run by a consultant. How is that enough time to achieve the goal for low-income residents, renters, indigenous, and coastal communities of color to participate meaningfully, let alone the rest of the public? And when it finally reaches the city planning commission, the hearing will be in front of a body with no coastal act training or expertise and a well-established reputation for rubber stamping development. This is not a fair or transparent public process. The Venice Neighborhood Council submitted recommendations to city planning over 10 months ago. The city has neither responded nor provided any transparency on whether that input is contributing to the LUP. The addendum confirms this, saying the city plans to consider and address some comments later at an undefined time without any structure for accountability or enforcement. A vague promise to consider, quote, "relevant" comments does not build trust. Hmm, this certainly does not meet the coastal act standards for public participation. What defines relevant? Who determines whether the city has a meaningfully addressed comments? This condition does not guarantee city accountability. Frankly, allowing the public to have access to the drafts and provide ongoing input and allowing the public to at least observe the city and coastal staff meetings appears to be the only way to allow for the needed transparency, and I strongly recommend it. Please ensure this process lives up to the public participation values of the coastal act. And please, Steve, we implore you to modify the work plan to address these issues before grant approval. Lastly, in the addendum, staff indicates that expanding the scope to include the other LA coastal zones is unrealistic due to funding limits. Yet, failing to require a citywide approach perpetuates Venice's disproportionate burden and requires LA's other coastal areas to wait indefinitely. But this risks not just equity, a citywide LCP, especially, especially when addressing sea level rise and adaptation planning is essential to ensure consistency, fairness, and coastal protection, and surely there is more grant money so that all of the LA coastal zones can be included. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Noel Gold. And after Noel Gold, Dr. Naomi Nightingale.
It's, I was able to start the video before, please stop the clock, but now it's saying I can't start the video.
I just prompted a video. Okay, there you go.
Oh, okay, great. All right, thank you again, commissioners. It's great to be here and I appreciate your service. I agree with what Robin said previously. I almost could take off where she left off. On your map, on the second slide, I was looking for San Pedro, and of course, I saw City of Los Angeles. And so on your map, you're acknowledging that the City of LA is one area that needs to be considered and come up with an LCP. Also, the coastal commission has for years and years been pushing the City of Los Angeles to actually come up with an LCP because LA was, you know, you mentioned is one of 12 that haven't done it, and they're dragging their feet. But now they're actively moving forward and have been in Venice. But I think it's really essential that all of the areas in LA that need to come up with the local coastal program do so at the same time. I mean, Venice had their LUP approved in 2002, and San Pedro had their LUP certified in 1991, significantly earlier, and yet we haven't had the opportunity to work with the city to put our LCP together and get the protections of, of an LCP. If, unless you take all of the areas in Los Angeles that need to complete the LCP process and let them all work together at the same time, it's going to be potentially decades more before Los Angeles is actually able to come up with the state-required LCP. And as you know, Los Angeles has been pressured by the coastal commission for years to, to get on the program and do this. So I would ask that the coastal commission not now sort of slow that process down by making us do each part of LA that needs the LCP one at a time. Please let us all work together at the same time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Naomi Nightingale? You should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. In a letter sent to the commissioners from Brian, Avril, and me, we were clear about our concerns and our conditions to, for the support for the grant proposal for funding the Venice LCP. Completing an LCP is of the highest priority and necessity for our community. We want nothing less than that. The condition stated in our letter is that the hard, earnest work of the Venice residents and stakeholders that is represented in the Venice Community Plan and approved by the Venice Neighborhood Council be acknowledged and included in any work going forward to achieve the local coastal plan. To negate that work is a grave injustice to the hundreds of individuals that spent hours participating in a process of decision-making and recommendations for land use and for the Venice community. As of June 2025, we have not received a response to the report in the 10 months since it was submitted. I agree that a lot of work has been done by city planning, but it does not give us any confidence that, of the work that we've already done and how they will move forward. We documented preferences of hundreds of individuals and sent notices to 6,000 contacts of the Neighborhood Council, receiving a total of 594 valid surveys from that effort, a 9% return rate. The public outreach task listed in Mr. Bertoni's letter is the same process implemented in developing the Venice Community Plan. Outreach plans doesn't begin until 2026. Why not acknowledge and incorporate completed applicable tasks submitted in the Venice Community Plan rather than starting from ground zero? Since this is a plan specifically for the Venice community, why not include the work that Venice community has already done? Not doing so is tantamount to the nullifying the work and the voices of Venice residents and stakeholders. We look forward to continuing to work with city planning on completing our mutual land use planning goal. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no more speakers for this item. Madam Chair.
Thank you. That closes public comment, and I will ask our staff if they would like to respond to the public comment.
We would. I'd like to first start and turn it over to Shahar to start off.
Yes, thank you. So quickly, just regarding the notion that public review, that public review in general should be concurrent with or precede, precede admin, staff-level interactions with local governments on these sorts of drafts as part of the grant. You know, in past grants and in general, local governments do, as the sort of first phase of their work program, they do work with us on these drafts because, you know, there are certain non-starters, or there are just certain, a certain level of vetting for coastal act consistency that commission staff usually goes through. And so we do believe that is standard practice and makes sense here. We will say that, and the city can speak to this some more, but the city has started, embarked on this journey since 2016, and it's been embarked on this journey since 2016, and it's been almost 10 years now, and there have been fits and starts because of, you know, a lot of public interest and input here. But, you know, the city has been working through the LUP drafts for the last three years and, you know, have been taking into account all these different public comments that have come in through the myriad of public engagement efforts that they've conducted. And so City, in sort of, in lieu of trying to play catch-up and, you know, not having a draft ready, they do want to make sure that they do, that they meet the grant deadlines December 27 to really try and do as much as possible and not depend on the follow-up process after the grant term. And so they do want to streamline as much of it as possible, but there will be more than ample opportunity at various stages of the grant process to make sure that the public is involved. And I can quickly walk you through, again, the various stages from now till the application for certification, but there will be more than ample public input. I think that, again, addresses some of those concerns too about public comments that have been submitted to date. And so we do believe that that additional condition that staff recommends will address that and that it will provide the city an opportunity and Commission staff an opportunity to really understand what the public comments have been thus far, but to really, you know, take inventory of those and incorporate them into the admin-level drafts. Those then will be released again to the public. We anticipate seeing quite a few changes as part of the public input process, and so we do believe that is an equitable and fair process and a sort of standard. As to the idea that the city of LA should be proceeding with one large LCP grant for all coastal segments, we did discuss that with the city. We formally confirmed with them on that. They really just don't have staff capacity to intake and administer a large or expanded LCP grant at this time. We also don't have probably enough money in our funds left in order to do that. We have five LCP segments or five coastal jurisdictions or neighborhoods within the city of LA, and so that would take a lot of coordination. You know, city has just lack of budget and resources and staffing to actually deal with that, but that is there in time. They've definitely made it clear to Commission staff that they are interested in getting an LCP for all segments. And so the city can speak some more to that. But we were just, you know, realistically speaking, we wanted to move forward with what we have and what we can and make sure that we do this also in a phased approach and getting to things while we can. So I think that sums up for my comments. I'm not sure if other staff have anything else.
Thank you. Dr. Hucklebridge.
Thanks, Shahar. I just, I think he did a great job of addressing the comments, but also know there's a response to comments in the addendum, so just wanted to point that out as well and just make it very clear that getting this LCP done is a huge priority for this commission and for the city. We've been working on this for a while. We need to get it done. We think this is the best way to get it done. It's very clear if we don't provide this funding, that efforts will slow if not stop given the city's own budget constraints and cuts to their staff. So, which, you know, it's just, again, it's hard times right now. So we really strongly recommend that the commission approve this grant. We do hear all of the comments that have been submitted, and we've had discussions with some of the folks you heard on public comment today. Their input is really important, and we, with the city, are going to be paying very close attention to ensuring that that public, the opportunity for engagement with the public continues as it has in the past, but it continues forward and that the input is considered throughout that process. But we have a lot of staff-to-staff nitty-gritty work to do first before we get to the point of public drafts and things of that nature. So again, we strongly recommend that the commission approve the grant and turn it back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Loenberg.
I just have a question. Dr. Hucklebridge, can you address the idea of how much is in the whole budget going forward and for the new Commissioners and even for us? You know, when they talk about 1.1, what will that take us down to? How does it get replenished? Where does, can you just give us a...
For our LCP grant program, you mean? And so I'm actually going to turn it over to Kelsey Ducklo, who's online. She runs that grant program for the commission and has probably the numbers right at her fingertips.
Kelsey?
Yes, thank you. If this grant is awarded today, it would take us down to about $4 million remaining in the current sort of funding pool. We do have numerous applications that are sort of in the door, being worked out, so it is likely that the funds would be spent in the next, or awarded in the next few months. And that would be the end of this current funding pool. We do not have another source. I do want to note, just while I have the floor here, that OPC's SB1 grants will provide a lot of the same type of funding support for LCP planning, for SB272 planning, for LCP updates. So there is other money available, but it will likely not be coming from us into the future.
So is that it? That's the end of any money for...
That's correct. Yeah, we got about $30 million several years ago, and we have, we are almost at the point of having given all out. And I think, I mean, this has been critical in getting, again, towards the goal of having all LCPs updated to do the sea level rise and climate change impacts. These grants have been critical to getting that, getting us further down the line. And as Kelsey noted, there is other funding available from the state through the OPC and their SB1 grants, and they have committed to working with us and, you know, including some of our provisions for, for example, that we're moving towards LCP updates and hearings in front of the commission. So I'm hopeful that there's not, there is still funding available, but I don't know. I mean, and we're going to work with the OPC to kind of make those as fruitful as possible for our LCP update process.
And in the world of acronym OCP?
OPC, excuse me. That's the Ocean Protection Council. Jen Eckerly, who's one of our Commissioners, heads up that council. So she's fully engaged in the work that we do here as a commission. She's just not here today.
Right.
And, yeah.
Any idea what those fund sources are? I mean, is that something...
So SB1 funds are, that were, they were provided, you know, associated with Senate Bill 1 from, I can't remember the year that that was implemented, but there's a big chunk of funds for, it's a little bit broader, is my understanding, than specifically LCP updates, but we've, again, worked with OPC to try to provide some funding for the type of work that we're doing under our LCP grants. So the idea is that it would be to local governments and others similar to how our grant program works. I don't know, Kelsey, if you have more, if I got that right, or if you have other additional details about the SB1 grant program that you think would be useful.
No, I think that's basically right. Yes, the same SB1 funds absolutely can cover the same kind of work. I believe OPC also has climate bond funds that will support this as well, but I would want to speak to OPC for some of those specifics on that. But general message being that there will be continued funding for this type of work from OPC and others.
Through the chair, Kelsey, what do you have, any idea what, if we spend, you know, we do this 1.1, which I'm in favor of, and then we have about $4 million left, do we know what the incremental difference is going for? I mean, do we have any sense?
Of how much funds are available through us?
Yeah, if we have $4 million left, are we looking at an additional 10? I mean, four, three?
So it very much depends. We have grants of different sizes. This is one of the larger ones, but, so it depends on what's in the door. It could, it could be anywhere from probably five to 10, depending on, again, the size of those grants. So I'm not, I don't think we know yet.
But it's a high magnitude.
We still have a fair number of grants to go through. That's right. But, you know, I want to point out that what's been so successful about this grant program is our staff engagement with local governments on both the grant process in terms of rightsizing it for the money that, you know, and the resources available from local government, and then really working on a work plan that gets us to an LCP update. Like, we want to bring these in front of you. That's the goal, to get these LCPs updated. And so we're really hopeful with OPC and SB1 funds that we can have that same engagement. But that's a concern. And of course, if there are opportunities in the future, as budgets improve generally, that we might, you know, have another ability to get funding in the future for the, to, you know, continue this type of work. We'll see.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got a question. So understanding we started with $31 million in 2021 through the Budget Act, and now we're down to $4 million. My question is, as part of that legislation, was there a report back? Who's monitoring how we're spending it in terms of letting them know that we've spent it, spent it well, and found success as was just reported? Is there an opportunity to share that in a meaningful way, especially now as we're looking back at our budget and talk about future opportunity, at the same time retain a list of, as we work with our jurisdictions, what else could you do if we had additional? So that when we go back, we can present a list of, if we had another $30 million, here's another 140 projects we could complete.
That's a great comment and question. Kelsey, I'm not sure if you have the details on what, if there was a report back required, but I think I want to think about that and figure out how we can do that. I know, you know, we've communicated the success of this program in a couple of different ways to the legislature, but maybe not formally, and so maybe I'll be thinking about opportunities to do that, but thanks for the comment.
Thank you all. Please, go ahead.
I was just going to mention that part, Section E, I believe, of the staff report does give sort of summary of all the grants that have been awarded using this funding, so that is one place to start. Many of those grants are still, the term to use that money isn't until the end of 2027, so all of that, all of those grants are still in process, so all of them are still working. But yes, to the overall point, we can think about ways to, you know, discuss how successful that work has been.
Commissioner Presciato.
I'm just wondering, in acknowledging the testimony from the community of Venice, they seem to have an urgency of being heard, and I'm just wondering, in the, as was described by staff, there is a process for that kind of development, but it seems that the Venice Beach community has a plan they want acknowledged somehow, and I'm wondering if in the grant process, those kinds of artifacts can be absorbed, acknowledged, and then we don't have the public having a sense of, well, even opposing a grant when they don't believe they're going to be taken into account. So I wonder if you can comment that, and I support the award.
Thank you, Commissioner Presciato. I think that was exactly the thought behind the additional, the changes we made to the condition in the grant to ensure that the city was addressing any input that has come in to this point in their next draft to us. So I think that was exactly what we were trying to get at with the changes that we did make, because we absolutely agree. I think that where there's, you know, we want to let the community know that it still is going to take a minute for the public draft to come out and for there to be public hearings on that, and that is the best process from our perspective to get to an LCP that we can support. But we also wanted to make sure that that input had been addressed in some way, shape, or form, and so we're going to be expecting and talking to the city about how to do that in the drafts that come to us first.
Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
I move that the commission award the LCP local assistance grant funding of $1.1 million to the city of Los Angeles and authorize the executive director or their designated to enter into a grant agreement with the grantee for allocation of these funds and to make any amendments thereto. Subject to the requirements and conditions set forth in the staff recommendation, I recommend a yes vote.
I'll second.
I missed you seconded that. O'Malley.
Thank you. Well, before I call for a vote, I just want to say briefly that I align myself with the comments of my fellow Commissioners and particularly as a local government representative, to just speak to the importance of these grants. We've been talking a lot today about budgetary challenges. Those challenges are true to the same extent in a lot of local jurisdictions that we're working with. And these grants over the last few years, and this one that I will be strongly supporting today, not only have tangible impacts in terms of the LCPs coming forward, but also on a more philosophical level, it's illustrative of our commitment to partnering with local jurisdictions to move forward the Coastal Act. And I think that's very important and a really critical element to be recognized, that this is a tangible way that we can show our partnership with local jurisdictions to move these items forward. So with that, unless the maker of the motion and secondor would like to speak to their motion, we'll have a roll call vote. Please, Ms. Miller.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Loenberg? Loenberg, yes. Commissioner Nara?
Aye.
Nara, yes. Commissioner Presciato? Presciato, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. The grant is so awarded. And I'll take a quick look at staff. I think now seems maybe a good time to break for lunch, if that works. So it's 12:45, and we'll be back at 1:45. Thank you. Close on line 1:45.
Lunch, when you go up the stairs, straight ahead is the Sunset Room, and that's where they've set everything.
Okay, I hope everyone had a good lunch. Excuse me. We'll get started again. I think we are on item 9A?
8F.
Excuse me. Sorry. I already heard that. 8F, please.
So this item is, 8F is to just revise the meeting schedule. We noted that we had originally scheduled the November meeting during the same week. That Veterans Day is the Tuesday that week, so we're just switching the date of the November meeting to the week before. Thank you. In November. So do you remember the dates off the top of your head? No. I think it's November 5th. Correct. 5th through 7th instead of the 12th through 14th. Thank you. And so we're recommending that change and just need a motion and a second.
They're moved.
Is there a motion to make this change?
I'll make it.
So moved.
Mike, uh, Olson.
I love that we changed the date in November.
Thank you. I think we could just hang on one second. We're not seeing the screens here, so let's take a quick pause. Thank you.
Oh, did I hit? Blame you. You took us on. Chair Harmon, I'm scheduled to not be here that week, but that may change.
Thank you.
I currently have a conflict as well. I'm just curious, do we know the location? That may help.
It's in North Central. I don't believe we have a specific location booked yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll work out the details with the commission members' schedules. So I think Commissioner Wilson moved the date change.
Yep, works for me.
And I seconded, I seconded, Chair.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Vice Chair Hart. May we have a roll call, please?
That's right. I do believe we have a public comment.
Wow, it went so well the first half. This is amazing.
This is a little bit of a funky item. I think we'll give you a little grace on this one.
If we could please have public comment. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Mic's off, okay. I can no longer not even speak. I can't even hear. Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff, I thank you for letting me speak on this one. I know it's not like a huge thing in the world, but I did want to comment. And I want to thank Vanessa for catching the thing about Veterans Day. I have a particular interest in Veterans Day since it's about one of the only bits of recognition most of us veterans ever get these days, so it's kind of an important holiday for us veterans. And so we look forward to having the opportunity to celebrate ourselves, even if nobody else does. But what we're trying to do is to make that day important, and for all of us who have served and have borne the battle, it is important. And so I appreciate that you would be willing to change your schedules and everything else to honor veterans, and believe me, if you announce that's what you're doing, veterans will be grateful. It's one of those little things, doesn't seem like a big thing, but it is very important to us, and I'm sure the Colonel will be able to correct me if I'm wrong on that one. But, and then there's one other important thing about the change too, is that I've been coming to Coastal Commission hearings for 43 years, and the November... commission hearings for 43 years, and the November schedule is always on my birthday. And my wife back here can tell you, I come here on my birthday, and I don't spend the day at home, so it's also very important to me and my family that I get to be home on my birthday, so keep that in mind and make my family happy, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more speakers for this item.
Well, and thank you for your service. We'll be celebrating you whether or not it's your birthday week. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Unless there are any comments, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg?
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nada?
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Presciato?
Aye.
Presciato, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Free Moro Ray, yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Jackson?
Aye. Thank you for your service, sir.
Jackson, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. The meeting dates are so revised. Now we will move on to the consent calendar, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, and the next item is item 9, the consent calendar for all the districts on the agenda today. There are two items on consent, and staff was not aware of any opposition to these items at the time the staff reports were prepared, and the applicants are in agreement with the staff recommendations. However, I would note that we did receive some emails from members of the public in opposition to one of those items on the consent calendar today, item 9A, and that's the application by the city of Los Angeles for the demolition and reconstruction of a children's playground. I would note that this project did originally raise water quality and public safety concerns due to the city's proposal to use recycled rubber playground material, which the commission has previously found inappropriate due to the fact that that can break down, result in toxic microplastic debris. However, commission staff worked with the city staff to revise this project to use the non-toxic and more natural alternatives for the playground surface, and this change is reflected by a special condition for revised plans to ensure that that change is adequately carried out. Now I would note that some of those comment letters and emails that were received were in support, including from local city councilwoman Tracy Park and other members of the public as well. However, some of those were in opposition, including from a group called Safe Healthy Playing Fields and some other folks. Now, those comment letters, including the letter from the group called Safe Healthy Play Fields, assert that the materials being used, including polyvinyl chloride or PVC, which is used in these new surface materials, that would be the walking surface, would still be toxic, aren't recyclable, and would not allow for infiltration of stormwater. And to address those issues, first, I'd just like to note that commission staff on this application and previous applications has spent a significant amount of time studying these materials that are used in these sorts of playgrounds, because we have many projects. And the materials that are being used here are very similar to the projects the commission has recently seen in the past. They involve some of the newest and best technologies that avoid the use of toxic materials, and that we've asked other local governments to utilize. So we think that this project is using the best available science. Would also note, though, that the writer of the letter appears to confuse the materials being used, PVC, with vinyl chloride. Now PVC is not the same as vinyl chloride. That's the gas used to manufacture PVC. Now, that gas is a toxic chemical and carcinogen, but not the PVC, which is a stable product. Dr. Metz, the commission's senior staff, a college scientist in our Juarez Quota unit, notes that those playground maps are able to be recycled at the end of their lives, and they do allow for infiltration of stormwater, because those tiles have air gaps between the different tiles. Now, some of those other letters also asserted that even with the use of non-toxic materials, they still wish that the playground would use completely natural materials, wood, metal, concrete, et cetera. The problem with that is that those simply don't comply with many of today's safety standards that local governments must meet. And there were also concerns that this playground should be, provide universal access for all disabled children, and we would note that this playground is designed as an ADA compliant playground, so it has ADA surfaces, some of the amenities are ADA compliant, but it's designed for a range of users and for different activities. So we do believe that this project is appropriate, has been well-designed, and a good example of where a local government has worked with our staff to address the issues that could be raised by, you know, I think we would all agree, are these beneficial projects. And thus, we continue to recommend this be approved today as part of the consent calendar. I would just note, I am available for questions, and in closing, staff is recommending the commission vote and approve the consent calendar today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Are there any expertises to report? Seeing none, we'll open public comment. Is any public comment on either of these items?
Yes, we have five people sign up to speak on item 9A.
Thank you.
We'll start with Diane Wolke in the room, and unfortunately, Ms. Wolke, I see that we were supposed to receive a presentation from you, but we weren't able to download it.
It was recent and received verification of receipt.
I don't believe we have it. Are you able to present without the presentation?
Well, I think it's significant that the photos that were included be seen, especially since I don't have a lot of confidence that the commissioners had time to review the letter that was sent, since it was just posted yesterday afternoon with the others.
Why don't we go ahead with the other speakers, and we'll try to get this sorted out if that works.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll move on to our Zoom speakers. We'll start with Chris Atencio, followed by Robin Rudisil, and then Gary Pearl. We have a few people named Chris in the Zoom. Chris Atencio, can you please raise your hand? Okay. You're being moved in right now, and when you're able to, please unmute and begin. Chris, we seem to be having trouble promoting you as a panelist. I have allowed you to unmute as an attendee. You should be able to unmute now and begin.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think there was just a mistake. I have no comment on the playground. I'm just here to receive any questions regarding any of the materials, as I am working with the Department of Recreation and Parks.
Thank you. Next is Robin Rudisil, followed by Gary Pearl.
So, good afternoon, citizens preserving Venice, and thank you for staff's good work on the revisions already made. It was our understanding that there may be an issue with toxic materials such as fiberglass and plastics being used instead of natural materials, but hearing Steve's remarks just now, I will respect your experts, the commission's experts' conclusions. That said, I'm not clear why alternatives using natural materials can't be prioritized, especially for a high-profile beach location. I think Steve alluded to some issues with those, but I wasn't clear about that. Though, we really do urge you to require the use of the natural materials, the concrete, et cetera, in lieu of fiberglass and plastic. We're very concerned that materials that definitely will not harm the environment or the health of our children and grandchildren, in my case, be used, and it's concerning that other groups appear to be, who appear to be experts, think there are issues there. Regarding ADA, the playground fails to meet the city's own standards for accessible play. It only meets the bare minimum ADA requirements, one swing, one bench, one point of wheelchair access, falling far short of the inclusive design seen in other nearby locations, such as the universally accessible playground in Santa Monica, and I just wonder, why can't we do better, like them? The current design features generic beach motives like catamarans and an octopus, and those sort of lack any connection to Venice and our unique historic and ecological identity. Community suggestions such as a Venetian gondola or marine life reflective of our own area were ignored. In addition, the Venice Neighborhood Council and residents were not meaningfully consulted during the design phase. Venice Beach is Los Angeles' most iconic and visited public park, and it deserves a state-of-the-art, universally-accessible, creatively-designed playground, so we urge the commission to require that this project be modified to meet best practices, accessibility for all children, and culturally-relevant design before approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Pearl?
Hi, thank you for hearing this. I want to get, oh, my video, I'm sorry. Oh, there we go. Hi, thank you for hearing this, and thank you for the staff report. I want to point out, I'm actually, I've been working on this for a year with Craig Rains, who's the city planner for Parks. This has gone through, to give you some history, it's gone through a bunch of different versions of it, and everyone, we're in Venice, we always have problems. I'm going to be the vice president of Neighborhood Council in a month, so I've thrown myself into what you guys throw yourself into a little bit. But I think that the cultural region is always a great partner with us. They understand what Venice is to the world, the city. This playground, I have a seven-year-old, it got ripped up with our last councilperson. Our current councilperson is behind it. The person who helped design it, Craig Rains, is a Venice resident, is a Venice native. Sorry, he was born and raised here. It meant a lot to him to how he put this together, and I promised him I would just push through his designs as he saw it. We do have a lot. There's surfboards in there. It is ADA compliant. There's always minimums, and there's always probably little bits of change along the way. The important thing here is, this is the very last, one of the very last items on the West Coast of North America on the beach that you thankfully helped protect. It is a place for everyone to go. It's a very large space, built in a pavilion, that the Venice Recreation Center was meant to go from zero to death, basically. Children, all the way up to anyone can use this, and Zero to 12 has been ripped out for the last several years by the last councilperson without a permit. Our current councilperson, Tracy Parks, is behind this. I found that it would be very helpful, all the idea that the, you did have one statement about what's not toxic, but there was nothing toxic here. This is one of the biggest builders of playgrounds in the world, and they're based in the southeast, southwest, where it's very hot. Thank you for your time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now Diane Wolke. We have your presentation. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Diane Wolke, Safe Healthy Playing Fields, we are an affiliate of Beyond Plastics. We are not in support of the recommendations for the Ventura Playground. It is clear that the commission must popu- Where is the, it's not the letter you need up, it's the PowerPoint. Can you pause the clock, please?
That's the only other presentation that we received. We have another one that was sent for general public comment, but that one was a blank file.
Let's put up the letter, then, and we'll have to scroll through photos. I just showed your co-staffer here that it was received. Okay, so, "The commission must properly inform itself on ADA requirements and stop exposing humans and the environment to unnecessary plastics." There was a picture that showed ADA- Ma'am. Well, apparently the letter, because you're saying you don't, can't find the PowerPoint. Okay.
We're working through this together.
Okay. You'll have to scroll through it for pictures while I concentrate here. I've only been up since 3:00 AM. Okay, so, ADA requirements address egress and ingress. It does not address surfacing. Mobility mats are made of plastic. This is actually PVC tiles, which are toxic. They are polyvinyl chloride, and vinyl chloride is a category one carcinogen. Mobility mats take a lot of abuse from wheelchairs and loaded wagons. Plastics break down more quickly in hot, humid, and salty environments. They overheat, release microplastics, and toxic chemicals. You can scroll for the next picture. They adsorb other chemicals and toxic bacteria, exposing the threat, posing the threat to humans and the environment. They're not a suitable choice to meet ADA requirements. Additionally, they off-gas. Toxic chemicals are not recyclable. Less than 6% of plastics in this country are recycled. Something that is this contaminated is not ever going to be recyclable. They need to be landfilled. Of the, of those so-called recycled plastics, at most, they contain 2% to 3% of old material, with the balance of the materials being virgin plastic plus additional toxic chemicals added in. Mats and PVC tiles get exceedingly hot, pose risks for thermal burns, acceleration of toxic runoff. PVC is the most toxic chemical on the planet. See the letter for source citations. I'm bringing you the science. They should not be used anywhere. California DTC is reviewing many of these chemicals used in children's products and is bringing synthetic turf under regulation. When the prevalence of microplastics is so ubiquitous in the environment, that is found in high volumes in the air exhaled by dolphins and found in birds on remote islands, that you can hear the plastic crackling in their bellies when they're rubbed, it's clear we have a lethal addiction to plastic. Please stay true to your mission, follow the science, and condition this recommendation to exclude toxic, unsustainable, plastic products. Thank you.
Thank you. We had one other speaker we weren't able to find, Jamie Carlton. Jamie, if you're in the meeting, please raise your hand. And then we had two other speakers, Elena, or two other speakers available for questions from the city of LA.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm seeing no hand raised.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll bring it back to staff to see if they'd like to make any response.
All right, thank you. Just a few responses to correct the record on a few points. And one, just to acknowledge some of the comments, including Ms. Rudisil's, and of course, staff agrees with the concept, the idea, that there should be less plastics. That's the entire purpose of why we've moved in this direction, to try to move local governments away from using these toxic materials that have broken down easily and produce microplastics. So this playground isn't plastic-free. There is fiberglass and other materials used. Some of this includes steel frames, such as the canoe or kayak has steel framing with fiberglass body, but those are low-reactive materials that aren't expected to produce high amounts of microplastics or break down easily. And some of those materials, such as the boulders that are artificial, will be made of concrete, but it would have some fiberglass components as part of that concrete. Now, the comments that we just heard from the speaker who asserted that PVC is toxic, again, our staff scientists have evaluated that and looked at it, and that we disagree. That's not what the science shows. It's confusing vinyl chloride gas, which is a gas, which is toxic and cancerous, with the plastic polyvinyl chloride PVC, which is used in piping, including drinking water pipes. Now, that has been studied, not just by our agency, but many others in the scientific community. PVC is not toxic, and it's not a carcinogen. It's commonly used in our drinking water pipes. Testing is performed by the USPA to ensure that PVC is safe for drinking water, and it's studied by NSF International, including in their report, which found, in 2015 report, found no known chemicals are released into the water system. No known toxicity effects occur. So we do believe that this is an appropriate material. So again, we can't, given the safety concerns with today's development standards for children's- playgrounds, we haven't found a way to avoid the use completely of plastics. But we do believe that this project is utilizing all the current best science to minimize the microplastic contaminants and avoid the use of any toxic materials. So I'll just note that we, that if Executive Director Hucklebridge may have some additional comments, and that we're available for questions after that.
Thanks, Steve. Just to say, I think you started out by saying this, that, you know, we're, we as staff and as directed by the commission is really moving in the direction of trying to avoid use of plastic. It's not possible at this point, given the standards, as Steve mentioned, that are present for children's playgrounds, to fully move away. Or at least, we haven't yet found the materials to substitute all plastic materials. But we would like to, and we'll continue to kind of work and do the research and try to see what new products come on the market and in that direction. So while, you know, we do recommend the commission approve this particular item, want to note that, you know, it is, we are constantly looking for other materials that could be substituted, and we'll work with local governments along those lines as we, as, you know, as new products come online that do avoid more and more plastic use. So just wanted to make that overarching comment.
Thank you very much. Well, I'll ask if there are questions from my colleagues, or whether three or more commissioners would like to remove either item. Commissioner Kelly, do you have a question?
I just have a question. So there's two surfaces that have been discussed. One is the pour-in-play rubber-focused material, and then the other were the mats that seemingly had a more porous kind of tile look to them. Can you clarify, are we talking about both materials being used in this playground, or the pour-in-play mostly rubber surface?
This would avoid the use of any poured-in-place rubber surface, so that pursuant to our condition is prohibited. This project would utilize the mat.
So the, in the exhibit that we have, the visuals of the very colorful-looking, kind of swirly ground, that is not, I just, I mean, I know I'm being redundant here, but that is not what is going to be used in this project.
That, yes, the pictures in the staff report show the project as originally proposed. So those did have poured-in-place. Those swirly designs may reflect that. Our special condition requires revised plans prohibiting the use of that and that they use these other mats. Whether or not it's possible to achieve the swirliness of the designs, it may or may not be possible. So there may be some differences in the final appearance, but it will not utilize the poured-in-place method.
Okay, thank you. And the swirliness is not the core of my concern. I did just want to state, and I'm glad to hear, that our requirements, you know, don't allow for the pour-in-play surface. I will say that in instances of other playgrounds that are in close proximity to sand, that that is a huge factor in degrading the pour-in-play material to a point where it becomes, the useful life of the project is greatly diminished, and you start to see so many more of those smaller components of that surface start to disintegrate and shift outside of the project area. So seeing how close this is to sand and that people will be directly entering from sand, it's really an inappropriate use for pour-in-play, even though, you know, we don't allow it. So I'm glad to hear and see that. Thank you.
Okay, unless, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a non-swirly question. One of the special conditions was that construction take place outside of the Memorial Day through Labor Day weekends. How long is this, how long is this proposed project going to take? I may have missed that in the report.
Okay, I don't have the time period available, so I don't know offhand how long this is. Given that it's a simple playground, these in the past have typically just taken, it's a month or two.
So I know there were some comments about, can we start this sooner so that the kids can enjoy it somewhat during the summer months? Is the construction that disruptive? If it were to take place between Memorial Day and Labor Day, that access would be impeded?
That reflects our typical condition, and that has more to do with the staging area. So typically, it requires that the nearby public parking lot would need to have areas available for staging material, and portions of that lot would be closed off. So it would have some impacts. That standardized condition, standardized special condition, we typically use to avoid construction during the busiest summer months. The, maybe the nuance here is that there is an unpermitted component to this, is that the demolition has already occurred. And so you're right that the children don't have a park until this occurs. So there is a trade-off there, is we don't achieve a new children's park until after the summer. The trade-off being that there's not a disruption or a closure to the public beach parking lot and the other areas of the beach that other members of the public would be using.
Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing that three or more members want to pull any items from consent, I'll entertain a motion in a second for the items on the consent calendar.
Move to approve items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Do either wish to speak to your motion? And I will ask for a roll call vote, please, Ms. Miller.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Rob.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg?
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nardoff?
Aye.
Nardoff, yes. Commissioner Preciado?
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. The consent calendar is adopted. Now we'll move to those items that have been removed from the regular calendar. Do we not have any of those?
Sorry. Give us one second.
Okay, thank you. And so that is item 10 for the applications being moved from regular to consent for all the districts. As mentioned during our agenda changes this morning, there are three items being recommended be moved. 13A, the County of Santa Barbara LCP Amendment for the Housing Element Update Rezone Time Extension. 14A, Ventura County Channel Islands Public Works Plan Notice of Impending Development for Safety Guard Rail. And 15A, the California Department of State Parks Application. In closing, we're not aware of any opposition to these items being moved to consent, and we're recommending the commission vote and approve this item. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Are there any expertises to report on any of these items? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
There are no speakers signed up for any items moved to consent today.
Okay, thank you. Public comment closed. Do any commissioners wish to remove either of these items from the consent calendar?
Lopez, a move approval?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote? Commissioner Lopez moved in the second, was Commissioner Lowenberg? Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez. Lopez, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg? Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nardoff?
Aye.
Nardoff, yes. Commissioner Preciado?
Yes.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. And the items moved from the regular calendar are so adopted. Now we'll move on to item 11, the enforcement report. Ms. Haydi, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, give us one second to shuffle our seats.
Can you verify if Rob is on the Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Oh, yay, thank you. Good afternoon, chair and commissioners. We're going to present two items in the enforcement report this morning, this afternoon. And I'm happy to say both of these report on progress on significant enforcement cases. First of all, we're going to report on the progress implementing an order that you issued in August 2018 regarding a case in Laguna Beach. And then we're going to report on voluntary resolutions of a major set of access issues here in San Diego involving several hotels and the issue of compliance with their permit conditions. Today's presentation will be given by Rob Modlomog, an attorney in our headquarters enforcement staff, who is on Zoom. And Marcia Vanegas, to my right, our San Diego enforcement officer who's here. Alex Helper and Deputy Chief Counsel and I are also available for any questions. First, we're going to turn to the order case. This case involves a situation in which an owner of a beachfront property obtained the benefits of a coastal development permit but failed to accept the burdens. As you know, all permits come with burdens and benefits. Here they got the permit, they got a permit for a seawall that was intended to protect a new house that was built before the Coastal Act in 1952. This permit had specific conditions to limit the authorization period of the seawall and to prohibit new future development at the site if it would rely on the seawall. Before we begin the presentation, I wanted to start by saying that this report dovetails nicely with the discussion we had earlier today regarding seawalls and beaches and the public comments we heard. This sort of seawall case gives us an example of the future of the California coast and of public access cases. The commission has required removal of seawalls and revetments and permits before, but we're seeing more of these issues come up as sea levels continue to rise. As you know, these seawalls are a significant and growing public access problem, because while seawalls do provide protection for private development built too close to the ocean, they do so at the expense of public beaches, as these beaches get pinched between crashing waves and fixed solid structures. Obviously, this issue requires striking a tough balance. And so when the commission approved the original permit at issue here, as you will see, the commission struggled with approving a wall to protect a home built prior to the Coastal Act, and really tried to do some long-term planning to make sure this house was moved landward if and when it was redeveloped, and required that the seawall would then be removed. Unfortunately, however, as you will hear, the original owners instead completely rebuilt the house in the same location without any coastal development permit, and then declined to comply with the permit conditions of the CDP regarding the seawall, and declined to consider any alternatives to the seawall or to seek a coastal development permit for the new house. Ultimately, the commission issued an order requiring them to comply with their original permit, and they sued over the order and the penalty assessed, and the commission prevailed in whole. The property was eventually sold, and we're happy to report that the new owners have worked collaboratively with us to comply with the order and the original permit, and that outcome is what we're reporting on today. Rob, take it away.
Thanks, Lisa. Good afternoon, Chair Harmon and members of the commission. On the left, you can see a 2018 image of a seawall and a house behind it. And on the right, you can see a photo taken last month. This shows the slope where that seawall and the front part of the lower story of the house once stood. The new property owner is currently working on restoring the newly exposed bluff on the right with native plants. As you will hear, reaching this point has taken a lot of time and effort. The commission staff is very pleased with this update on the progress of the successful implementation of the commission's order. Next slide, please. To give you a better sense of things before we recount the history, on this slide, you can see the unpermitted wall at the center of this case. It was 11 feet tall and 80 feet long. For scale, you can see the trashcans look small next to it, and the meter stick propped up against it is less than halfway up the wall. Next slide, please. The house at issue here is located on a coastal bluff overlooking Victoria Beach, a popular destination in Laguna Beach in Orange County. On this map, you can see that Laguna is halfway between LA and San Diego. Next slide, please. This image shows the popularity of Victoria Beach and how it's often full of people, especially in the summer. Next slide, please. In this 1979 photo, the house at issue is circle, and an arrow is pointing to the coastal bluff on which the house sits. You can see that the bluff used to extend out in front of the house. So the house was originally in a much safer place where the bluff provided a natural barrier from wave action. Although the photo is grainy, you can see that the bluff is large and the bluff face is covered by vegetation. Next slide, please. While Victoria Beach may look idyllic in photos, while it's one of the wider beaches in living room, seawalls are a growing threat to public beach access and recreation. Beaches move inland seasonally and over time. With sea levels rising and stronger storm events occurring, beaches are moving inland faster than before. As you can see on the left-hand side of this diagram, if there are no hard structures inland of the ocean, the sandy beach will just get pushed by the waves inland and adjust naturally, and many people visiting a natural beach may not even notice. However, as you can see on the right-hand side of this diagram, when waves hit a seawall, it blocks the waves from reaching inland areas, but it also stops the beach from reaching inland areas as well. In addition, waves hit the wall and refract backward, pushing the remaining sand into the ocean and shrinking the beach. You can also see that the seawall is stopping inland sand and sediment from eroding onto the beach and nourishing it and making it wider. While seawalls are, sorry, seawalls are built on beaches that are moving inland, eventually there will no longer be any dry sand left. The property owner would still enjoy their private ocean views, but there would only be waves crashing against the wall with no sand left for the public, or for the property owner for that matter, to enjoy. Next slide, please. This photo shows the south end of Victoria Beach, and you can see the importance of siting development well inland in order to preserve beaches. The residential complex on the right was built prior to the Coastal Act and as such, was not required to be sited safely inland. Thus, the development and necessary seawall in front of that complex has caused the beach to disappear. On the left, you can see that the houses sited further inland still have sandy beach in front of them. As you can imagine, seawalls protect a small amount of private property at the direct expense of the public, including at the expense of iconic sandy beaches used for low-cost recreational purposes by all Californians from all economic backgrounds, including those who come from disadvantaged communities. The burdens of seawalls are disproportionately borne by persons who cannot afford to rent or own oceanfront houses. As sea levels rise, these impacts will only grow. And while economic benefits may accrue to the actual owners of the walls, the loss of beaches also negatively impacts the tourism economy, as the coast is a huge draw, and there, with walls, there are less beaches for visitors to enjoy. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see the original seawall and the original house. This house was built in 1952, long before the Coastal Act of 1976. Prior owners built the wall that you see here with an emergency coastal development permit, and then obtained a local CDP for a new wall in 2014. In 2015, the commission appealed the local CDP. In order to ensure that the wall and its negative impacts would only endure for a limited time, and in an effort to balance the rights of the owner of the old, precoastal act house and the rights of the public to access the beach, the commission approved a new seawall with special conditions that only authorized the seawall to protect the old, precoastal house, basically grandfathering in the original house. If and when that house was rebuilt in the future, that owner would have to assess how best to protect the house without using a seawall, including by moving the house inland on the lot. This permit was thus a classic example of an old structure being grandfathered in to a modern regulatory regime for as long as the old structure continued to exist. Next slide, please. Therefore, Special Condition 6 of the CDP clearly stated in part, "What future development shall not rely on the permitted seawall," and that "Any future new development on the site shall be sited and designed to be safe without reliance on shoreline protective devices." Next slide, please. In addition, the commission also imposed Special Condition 2, which provided authorization for the wall only until the precoastal home was redeveloped in a manner that constituted new development. Next slide, please. Here you can see photos of the house as it looked when it was built in 1952. Although the third story is partially obscured by trees in the foreground, note how wide the beach was back then. It extends way out towards the tide pools at the center of the image. This photo was taken around 1970. Next slide, please. Here you can see another photo of the old house as it looked after redwood siding was installed. The second and third stories are visible. As you will soon see, all of this would be effectively demolished and replaced as part of the of the unpermitted reconstruction of the house. Uh, next slide, please. Here you can see the old house from the side. Note that this undeveloped bluff in the foreground, setback from the beach below, is all part of the 11 Lagunita parcel, and so the inland part of it provided a potential safer location to build if and when the house was rebuilt. Next slide, please. In the 2018 enforcement hearing, the Commission found that the project undertaken at 11 Lagunita far exceeded any common sense understanding of ordinary repair magnets and that the house is basically a new one inside and out. I'm now going to recount some of the analysis, so also have to show the amount of investigative work that we undertake in order to ensure that the Coastal Act is upheld and that coastal resources are protected. In this image, the removal of the redwood siding is well underway, and the exterior wall sheathing underneath is exposed. Next slide, please. In this view of the third story, you can now see through the building to the beach and the ocean on the other side. Next slide, please. In this slide, you can see a carpenter in the process of adding or sistering new joists to the old joists. Next slide, please. This slide shows a new structural steel or red iron beam being lifted into place by crane. The addition of steel beams to the house is an indication that the structure is being significantly modified. Next slide, please. In this slide, it appears that the structural work on the upper roof is complete, and new plywood sheathing has been added to the exterior. Next slide, please. In this photograph of the interior, we can see new wall framing, new wiring, and new plumbing. Next slide, please. In this image, you can see a new vaulted ceiling and new ductwork being installed. Next slide, please. And here we're looking at a contemporary system of framing, structural sheathing, and anchoring that significantly alters the structure of the original house and effectively makes this a new house. Next slide, please. In this slide, new flashings, windows, and doors have been installed. Next slide, please. For a sense of scale, you can barely see the trashcans at the far right sitting next to the new seawall. This view also shows new stone veneer and new plaster. Next slide, please. The next few slides are a side-by-side comparison of parts of the house at 11 Lagunita, pre- and post-construction, to give you an idea of just how much change in the course of this project. I'll go through these quickly. This slide is an exterior view from seaward. Next slide, please. And here are the interior stairs. Uh, next slide, please. As you can see, the kitchen has been completely replaced. Next slide, please. As has this bathroom, as you can see here. Next slide, please. And finally, a view of the upper living area. It's worth noting that all of the reconstruction you've just seen has served to greatly extend the useful life of the original house. Next slide, please. Meanwhile, this seawall was already causing impacts as the wall prevented the bluff from eroding naturally. In the foreground of this picture, you can see that the sand is wet, and behind that, only a narrow strip of dry sand exists between the wall and the waves. Using the calculations from the 2014 CDP, because the bluff no longer eroded naturally, we estimated that the wall prevented 222 cubic yards of sand and beach material from nourishing the beach during the two years of the violation. That equals approximately 18 large dump trucks full of sand and beach material that otherwise would have been on the beach. It's worth noting that, as we will discuss, the wall actually continued existing and caused further negative impacts for quite a while longer during the litigation. Next slide, please. Here's a very brief summary of the enforcement steps that were taken in this case. The Commission sent a notice of violation letter in 2017, but the owners, the Katz's, refused to stop work on the house and refused to discuss any settlement of the violations. Instead, they sued the Commission in January of 2018 in an effort to preempt our enforcement process. So, left with no other options, at the Commission's August 2018 hearing, the Commission issued a cease and desist order and administrative penalty to resolve these violations. The order required the owners to apply for a CDP to remove the seawall and any portion of the house that relied on the seawall, to modify the house to exist without a seawall as the permit requires, and to explore alternatives to the wall. In addition, the order as issued by the Commission required the Katz's to pay administrative civil penalties for the public access violation in the amount of $1 million. Next slide, please. After the enforcement hearing, the Katz's sued the Commission for the second time. At the end of August 2021, the Court of Appeal issued final judgment here in favor of the Commission and upheld both the order and the penalty assessed by the Commission. It's worth noting that this was the first court to uphold the Commission's ability to issue administrative penalties for violations of the Coastal Act. Next slide, please. The Commission now has a published decision upholding the ability of the Commission to compel removal of an unpermitted seawall. The appellate court included many photos from our presentation in their opinion, a portion of which is excerpted on this slide. The court also noted that all of the members of the public who spoke in public comment did so in support of our action and even quoted one person in public comment who stated that this case was important because if the Commission does not enforce this permit, then other property owners will follow the example of this violated, potentially rendering similar permit requirements useless in the future. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see a historic photo of the site before it was built. Prior to the conclusion of the litigation, the Katz's sold the property to a new owner, Jerry Stanley. Following the Commission's victory in court in 2021, the new owner promptly paid the required penalty to the state coastal conservancy's violation remediation account. He also began working cooperatively with Commission staff towards compliance with the order. The order required not only that the seawall be removed, but that any parts of the house that would require a wall to be removed as well. Mr. Stanley's team worked with the Commission's geologist and engineer to determine what parts of the house would be immediately unsafe once the seawall was removed. The new owner stated that he was already preparing to apply for a CDP as required by the order to put the unpermitted house on piles so that it would be elevated and would not need a seawall in the future. Next slide, please. On this map, you can see a projected timeline of work authorized by the approved removal plan that extends for about a year. However, while Commission staff approved the plan on October 3rd of 2022, the new owner still had to obtain local approvals for the construction work. He finally received these approvals in the summer of 2024, and removal of the wall subsequently began after Labor Day of last year. Uh, next slide, please. And here's a photo from California Coastal Records Project. This shows the removal work shortly after it began last fall. You can see that they had already started removing the front part of the lower story. Next slide, please. And here you can see construction wrapping up in May. The new owner worked with us to minimize the amount of fencing that would be needed on the beach in order to limit disruption of public access during construction. Next slide, please. This slide shows the property after the seawall and the front part of the lower story was removed and the construction fencing also removed. I want to note that the new owner's team managed to stay on schedule and that all of the work on the beach was finally finished by Memorial Day, just in time for this summer so that the public could fully enjoy all of the sandy beach. Next slide, please. In this photo, you can see a view of the area looking south. The beach is wide in this image, and as a result of this work, this beach will be much better preserved going forward, and the house is situated now in a location that is safer, at least for the time being. Next slide, please. And here's some, uh, some of the same comparison shots that you saw on the title slide. On the right, you can see red lines that gave you a rough sense of where the seawall used to be, and the yellow lines roughly show where the lower story of the house used to protrude seaward, trying to give you a sense of, uh, what's going on with here. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see the planting plan for the bluff. The new owner has already begun planting the area with native plants and expects the work to be concluded by fall. Next slide, please. In this image, taken just yesterday, you can see a close-up of the ongoing restoration of the bluff. Behind the sign are some native cactus plantings. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see another image taken yesterday that gives another view of the ongoing restoration of the bluff. Next slide, please. And here's one last image taken early yesterday morning, showing the ongoing bluff restoration on the right and a wide beach ready for summer visitors on the left. We hope that this case helps demonstrate that it is possible to remove seawalls while also allowing for private development even in areas close to the beach and the ocean. We may also hope that it sends a message to potential violators that the Commission takes unpermitted seawalls and preservation of our beaches seriously. Recently, in the Casamira decision, courts affirmed that the Coastal Act does not entitle property owners to seawalls for development constructed after the Coastal Act of 1976. Combined with the published decision obtained in the 11 Lagunita case, it's our hope that the Commission will now be better equipped to tackle the growing threat that seawalls pose to California's beaches as sea levels continue to rise. And finally, we want to thank the new property owner, Jerry Stanley, and his counsel, David Goldberg, for their work on this matter. Mr. Stanley did not undertake the violations, but he and his team have still put in a lot of effort towards getting this resolved, and we're grateful for their work. That concludes my own presentation, and we're available after Marcia's in a second if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Modlomog. Ms. Hey. Thank you, Rob. That case took a lot of work, and he skipped over years of litigation, and we have our AG colleagues to thank for helping us, as well as Alex Hulper. It was a big victory, and it was an exciting development. Next, we're going to turn to a set of hotel cases here in San Diego, and these cases involve two hotels located near each other and which were resolved concurrently. These cases are an example of the difficulty involved in ensuring permit conditions are complied with, not unlike the one we just looked at, and the fact it requires careful and consistent oversight to ensure the benefits specifically included in such permits are actually being realized by the public. Very often, either staff recommends or the Commission imposes a lot of detailed conditions on permits when they're issued, and those are really great, and they're well thought out, and they're very useful, but they're very difficult to implement and, and comply with, to ensure compliance with. So it's, and it's very important here in particular because these hotels lie on public trust lands, and so it's even more important that the public rights are protected. Even more impressive is the fact that these cases were resolved amicably at the district level. We did not have to resort to a formal order, and we greatly appreciate the cooperation of the hotels involved. Even so, it required many hours of monitoring, negotiating, and working out appropriate terms for a resolution here. Presenting this matter today will be Marcia Venegas, our intrepid San Diego enforcement officer, who is the lead negotiator on this matter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It is my pleasure to share a resolution of public access violations at two waterfront hotels in the San Diego District. The case was resolved collaboratively with the Homewood Suites and the Courtyard by Marriott at Liberty Station. I will be discussing the new public access plan as well as new amenities at these hotels to address the Coastal Act violations in lieu of penalties. On this slide are two hotels at Liberty Station that we will be discussing. Next slide, please. To help familiarize you with the area on this slide, on the bottom left is our current location at the Best Western. The top right star is the San Diego International Airport. The yellow star in the middle shows the location of the Liberty Station Hotels. The site is close enough for you to stop by and enjoy the new amenities during your stay this week. The hotels are adjacent to waterfront promenade and channel, which are highly-used destinations for tourists and locals alike for strolling and paddle boarding. Next slide, please. Here you can see the Homewood Suites. In 2005, the Commission authorized construction of a hotel complex with 150-foot-wide pedestrian esplanade adjacent to the boat channel. It is important to note that the entire project is located on public trust lands, and thus general public, general public access to the site must be preserved with the approved commercial use. In the foreground is one of the public view decks that was previously closed but is now open, available to the public as a result of the Commission staff's effort. Next slide, please. This slide is a list of some of the most important public access amenities required by the Commission that were not provided by the applicants or the hotels. In order to ensure compliance with these kinds of public access amenity requirements, constant vigilance by Commission staff is necessary. It is the most effective way to ensure that these amenities remain available to the public. The intent of these amenities is to draw more members of the public to this area who are not staying at these hotels. The public promenade and public places along the water, including those listed here, are intended to activate public use of the area, encouraging public access to the maximum extent possible. Considering all socioeconomic levels, which is a fundamental principle in the Commission's environmental justice endeavors, per the Commission's permit, the public should be able to enjoy the public land by, for instance, barbecuing at the Garden Court or grabbing a quick bite to eat and then enjoying views at one of the hotel rooftops. Unfortunately, staff discovered that many of the public access amenities required under the permit had not been implemented. Now I'm going to walk you through individual instances of noncompliance for both hotels and then show the issues resolved. Next slide, please. On this slide, the two ovals show the location of the two Commission-required rooftop terraces. Next slide. However, in this slide, you see the entrance to one of the rooftop terraces is closed and is locked as well. A member of the public would naturally assume the gated area is private, especially because the public access signage is missing. Next slide. In addition to the, in addition to the view terrace, the stairs that led up to the view terrace were blocked by hotel furniture, as seen in this photo. Next slide. The stairs you see in this photo is the access to the second terrace. Again, there would be no reason a member of the public would know they had a legal right to access this area. Next slide, please. These photos show that the area was blocked with furniture storage before enforcement action. Next slide. Now, after our enforcement action, the gate is open, and the newly-placed signage reads, "Public Welcome, Viewpoint Terrace and Restroom, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM." Next slide. The open access to this rooftop terrace provides the public with fabulous views where you can see the USS Recruit Monument. There is also a binocular stand to look out to see the San Diego coastline with this unique perspective at this height. Next slide. This is the view from the second rooftop terrace that looks towards the San Diego Bay and the pedestrian overpass to the other park areas across the channel. Next slide. This is another view from the second rooftop terrace overlooking the fountain terrace. This rooftop terrace is a perfect spot to enjoy your lunch and watch the planes land from the nearby airport. You can also take advantage of the binocular stands on this side as well. Next slide. With the newly-installed signage, now any member of the public can take a moment and learn about the USS Recruit Monument and its significance to the military presence in San Diego. The rooftop terrace provides a unique opportunity to learn about and enjoy San Diego's coastline. Next slide, please. Now, for the second instance of noncompliance, this slide shows the sports court, which is poorly signed for the public. Unpermitted signage had also been installed identifying the courts as private. Next slide. And now, here you can see the new sign welcoming the public to the sports court, which also advises members of the public that they can borrow equipment in the lobby. Next slide. I'm sorry. I want to point out the new sign is visible from the public promenade. The sign you see on this slide is visible from the public promenade to advise members of the public that the sports court is available for their use. Also, at staff's discretion, the hotel added new tables and chairs to encourage use as well as an added place to enjoy the waterfront. Next slide. This is the third instance of noncompliance. This slide shows a sign placed on the barbecues that was required to be available to the public in the Garden Court. The unpermitted sign reads, "Registered Guests," giving the impression that these are not public. Next slide, please. Although the sign is not clearly visible on this slide, the sign on the fireplace gives the impression that the terrace is only for, is only for registered guests, which was in noncompliance with the CDP. Next slide. Now, after our enforcement case, the Garden Court terrace is signed for public access. The yellow circle on this slide indicates the newly-compliant sign confirming that members of the public have access to the barbecues, even if they're not staying at the hotels. The signs restricting use to hotel guests have been removed and replaced with signage indicating that these amenities are open and available for members of the public. The signage also includes information about borrowing barbecue tools for, that are free to use by any to use by anyone. Next slide, please. A new sign helps ensure that even a member of the public that is just passing by can learn that these amenities are free for their use for any future visits. In time, if members of the public become aware of the availability, availability of these amenities, public access to these areas may increase to more fully meet the intent of the commission's action for this development. Next slide, please. The fireplace on the Garden Terrace is now signed for public use. During winter or summer alike, the fireplace can now be enjoyed, be enjoyed by the public and guests. Next slide. This slide shows the newly-added, double-sided public access sign that now ensures every entry point to the public esplanade from the public lot has signage, making it clear that members of the public are welcome. Next slide. Next, another item of noncompliance. The deli terrace shown on this slide is an attractive public access amenity, is supposed to be a public access amenity, because it provides access to food and drinks from the café and the bar restaurant in the lobby to accommodate a relaxing ambiance open to the public just off the public esplanade, which was intended to activate the area for public use opportunities. However, as you can see on this slide, there are no tables and chairs. Next slide. Now, you can see the newly-placed tables and chairs to bring the deli terrace into compliance with the permit. During summer holidays and weekends, the Courtyard by Marriott has added a coffee cart service to help encourage more public use of this area. Next slide, please. Next, another item of noncompliance. As you can see in the photo, there was no public access signage at the entrance to the pool terrace. An access is impeded by a locked gate that required a guest key to open it. Next slide. If the gate was not closed, a member of the public would be able to access these fireplaces and fire pit areas with various areas to sit and relax. Next slide. Now, this slide shows the new public access signage that has been added. The gate is now unlocked and open for public use. Next slide. This photo shows the pool terrace that is now open to the public. Next slide. The parking lot landward of the two subject hotels are required to be open on a first-come, first-served basis for members of the public, hotel guests, and patrons of the nearby commercial locations. However, the hotel was impeding public access by privatizing public parking for hotel guests. This slide is a close-up of the restrictive parking sign, which has now been removed. Next slide. In addition, in addition to directing the hotel to come into compliance with the CDP requirements, which I described on the previous slides, enforcement staff also reached an enforceable agreement with the hotels to create new amenities beyond the permit requirement in lieu of penalties. I'll describe some of these amenities on the next few slides. Some of the most impacting additions are listed here. Some of these amenities include public bathrooms, a bocce court, and exercise equipment. Finally, as you heard this morning, getting these hotels to agree, as noted on this slide, to a plastics reduction plan is a significant improvement and worthy component of our resolution. Next slide, please. Commission staff reached an agreement with the hotel to make restrooms open available to the public. These restrooms are especially valuable to the public because they are easily accessible from the waterfront promenade and do not require the public to walk into the interior of the hotels to access them. These restrooms were previously private and were converted to public restrooms as an important aspect of our resolution in lieu of penalties for these two hotels. Next slide, please. As you undoubtedly know, clean, safe, and readily-available public restrooms facilitate and encourage the use of public spaces such as the waterfront promenade. Moreover, these are more accessible to all, including those with handicaps and medical conditions that require access to restrooms. These restrooms were previously private for guests only and have now been converted to public restrooms as a result of our enforcement action. Next slide. This slide shows the newly-improved courtyard leading to the second rooftop terrace. The hotels have added concrete games, gaming tables for checkers, chess, and backgammon, I believe, as well. Any member of the public can now go to the lobby to check out the game pieces. You can also see that the gate leading to the rooftop terrace now has a large sign, and the gate is open. Next slide, please. Additionally, this photo shows the newly-added bocce ball court that is open and available to all members of the public. The bocce balls can be checked out at the lobby for use. The sign shows the double-sided, sided, large, and easily-visible sign. Next slide, please. This slide shows the new exercise equipment, which is user-friendly and open and available to the public. You can see in this photo that the equipment is already being used. Next slide. Finally, this last slide shows another newly-added amenity for members of the public, included as part of a resolution of our enforcement action. A total of 20 Level 2 EV chargers were added and are available for a nominal fee for members of the public. Next slide. I'll, I'll let you know when. Commission staff and an intern prepared this short video to help highlight the newly-affectuated condition compliance and highlight a few of the new amenities, as well for our social media outreach. We hope to be able to create more content like this to highlight our successes and public access opportunities. Can you play the video, please?
Did you know that there are free public spaces and amenities in San Diego, right on the water, that are open for everyone to enjoy? In Liberty Station, right off the esplanade and in between the Homewood Suites and Courtyard by Marriott hotels, there's a hidden gem that you may not know about. This beautiful space, now fully-accessible to the public, features free amenities and plenty of room to relax and enjoy the outdoors. This area features balconies with beautiful views of the water, a sports court, many picnic tables, fireplaces, and barbecues, and also free restrooms. Even what looks like part of the Courtyard Hotel is completely free and open to the public. The California Coastal Commission has made sure that this area is open to all, giving you the perfect spot to unwind or gather with friends and family. This area was once closed off to the public, but now it's yours to enjoy for free. So whether you're looking to take in the views, cook up some great food, or just relax by the water, just look for the public access signs, and Liberty Station's open spaces are ready and waiting for you.
Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Ms. Venegas. Should we go to public comment now? Okay. Is there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this?
Yes, we have four people sign up to speak. We'll start with Steve Ray, who's in person. And then we have Pamela Heatherington, Mandy Sackett, and then Penny Alea on Zoom, but we're not seeing Penny Alea. Penny, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand so we can find you. Go ahead. Steve. The, the mic. The mic needs to be turned on. There you are.
I'm sorry, it's a triple header today of me. Madam Chair, Commissioners, Staff, and Members of the Public, I wanted to talk about what enforcement has been doing here. I've always known the work that they do, but they don't toot their horn enough, and so I'm here to toot their horn for them if they won't do it enough. This first project that Lisa pointed out to you, that Rob Madalma presented to you, years ago, Penny Alea, who is a longtime highly-regarded coastal advocate, she's been doing it as long as I have, I think at least. I don't want to make her older than me, but. She came to me years ago, showed me some pictures of this house that just had some framing up, and she asked me my opinion of, did that look like a new house or a remodel? And I said, well, it looks like they've taken down the old house, and I see some footers there, but it looks like they're totally rebuilding the house. And she said, I thought so. So she began the quest then to fix that. She contacted other experts, she brought in the press, Rosanna Sia, who's another friend of mine, and then when she approached the Coastal Commission, she wound up with a dear friend there, Rob Madalma. Hey, Rob. And Rob and I worked together for years to save the Banning Ranch. And then he came to work for the Coastal Commission in enforcement, and he worked on that, and using his skills, his lawyerly skills, and that devilish charm of his to get through things, and then Lisa leading the way, and using that smile, that great smile that she has, that she always uses no matter how bad things are. Everybody together made this happen, and I just want to point out that, you know, the old saying, it takes a village, it took a village here and it worked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Pamela Heatherington.
Hello, I am here. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and a hearty welcome to the new Commissioners. I am Pam Heatherington from the Environmental Center of San Diego, and I want to take this time to sincerely thank the Coastal Commission and your enforcement staff for the critical work in protecting public access and upholding the Coastal Act. The coast is one of California's most treasured public resources, and your continued vigilance ensures that it remains open and accessible to all, not just to those with wealth or political influence. Your enforcement actions, including the fines levied against entities like Camp Land on the Bay and Paradise Point, are essential. These are not just technical violations, they represent real threats to the public's right to access and enjoy the coast. When private interests cut off access or degrade the environment for profit, it's the public that suffers, especially underserved communities that rely most on these shared natural spaces. The public trust doctrine is more than a legal concept. It's a guiding principle that says our coast must be protected for the benefit of all Californians now and into the future. Your enforcement work gives life to that principle. It shows that the Coastal Act has teeth and that public resources are not for sale. I know this work is not easy. It takes courage, persistence, and a commitment to justice. So I want to express deep appreciation for your staff, especially those in enforcement, who are often working behind the scenes to investigate violations, negotiate remedies, and when necessary, pursue penalties. Thank you for everything you do to keep California's coast public, protected, and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy Sackett.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mandy Sackett, California Policy Manager for Surf Rider Foundation. In 2018, we, we came before you to support your staff on the 11 Laguna Sea Wall removal. At that time, we noted that the enforcement orders would set a strong precedent for enforcing one of the most significant threats to California's beaches and coastal habitat, illegal and unpermitted coastal armoring. We pointed out that if Commissioners voted to support the staff recommendation, it would be the first time property owners were required to remove a sea wall, sending the clear message that illegal and unpermitted coastal armoring will not be tolerated. We were therefore extremely pleased to learn that, at long last, the illegal sea wall at Victoria Beach in Laguna has come down, and the property owners have reconfigured the existing structure out of harm's way. Removal of illegal sea walls means that we have the hope of saving Victoria Beach from the oncoming sea level rise and coastal hazards related to climate change. No amount of mitigation requirement or fine can save California's beaches from the exponential loss by armoring our coast. This successful enforcement of the Coastal Act will impact not only Victoria Beach, but other popular beaches facing similar threats. We're grateful for the Commissioners who voted for it in 2018 to support the staff recommendation to require removal, and we also extend our thanks and appreciation to your tireless enforcement staff, whose dedication to protecting the public's right to beach access and his commitment to the people of California never wavers. This landmark case is a profound victory for the public and an illustration of how much your decisions matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Alea, we're still not seeing you in the Zoom meeting. If you could please raise your hand. I'll give it a second.
I would note that Penny Alea did submit a written letter, which was posted as on the agenda.
Okay. And we are not seeing Penny Alea in the meeting, so.
And I believe she also said she wasn't going to be able to make it.
There are no more commenters.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I share in the gratitude of our public speakers. Your team is truly on the front line of protecting our coast, and every time you come before us, it's, it's just so impressive what you're able to do, particularly today. With that, I will open it up for questions or comments. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thanks, Chair. I like commenting on the enforcement, because as a previous enforcer in the legal world, you know, I, I really appreciate the work that you all do. I used to work, Ms. Venegas, I used to work in Liberty Station for like six years, and seeing what you were able to accomplish there is, is really mind-blowing, so kudos to you really for all of that. And I also want to just do a shout-out, obviously, Mr. Madalma and the work, you know, on 11, it's 11A. I think it's also, I'm going to kind of shout-out to the AG's office too, as well as all of our staff, to get these public, published legal decisions is extremely important, right? I mean, so all of the work that went into that, now, like I say, makes it a lot easier moving forward, but it certainly facilitates additional actions like this. So just two thumbs up to all of you, and I appreciate the work that you keep doing. Thanks.
Commissioner Nada.
Yes, congratulations. It's good to see this. I just wanted to elevate the role of the public in bringing these items and these violations to our attention. You know, as we've discussed, the staff level at the commission is not, doesn't allow us to check out every square inch of the California coast, and I think as people can appreciate, our staff works with applicants for months and years, and then we have public hearings for days, hours, and days, to work out these conditions for approval to very complicated projects. Just in the last year, we've had lots of visitor-serving projects come before us that have many components that lead to approval, and I think that's kind of, it, it reminds me of the projects we just heard about here in San Diego. And if all of that is for not, because they're not complied with, you know, we need, we rely on the public, and also a lot of the constituents who came and advocated on behalf of those conditions that were ultimately applied to the approval. So I really encourage staff, I encourage the public that takes the time to come to commission meetings, comment on conditions for approval, to stick with the process through implementation, so that they can actually, so that together we can make sure that those carefully-thought-out conditions turn into real benefits when the project goes forward. So it looks like we had good public heads-up on these, but I think going forward, especially as we're working more and more on having low-income inclusions and other requirements like that, we really are going to rely more and more on the public to make sure that these things are carried out.
Thank you. Commissioner Loenberg.
Just wondering on the first case, did we recoup any expenses? Any of our out-of-pocket legal fees or your time?
Uh-uh.
Just curious.
No.
No.
The, the penalties that we get under the, under the Coastal Act go to the violation remediation account, which is administered by the Coastal Conservancy, and it goes towards the buying easements, doing restoration of properties, and so forth. It does, it doesn't come directly to the commission, although we have had a, a small staff augmentation in, in the last years, but the vast majority of it goes directly back to the coast.
But in that specific case, did any? I'm just curious.
So I, I think you have to make a distinction between the penalties that we imposed and then attorneys.
then attorneys' fees that we can collect when we prosecute an enforcement action. If the Attorney General's Office were to prosecute an enforcement action, they would have been able to argue that they should have recouped their fees. But the penalty that you imposed is separate from that. That was, we did recoup that. The new owner paid that million dollars right away upon taking ownership of the property. But the litigation that ensued with the prior owner was defensive litigation on our part. They had sued the Commission to challenge our enforcement orders, and we prevailed in a defensive capacity. So in that capacity, we don't recoup our legal fees.
It is, it is one of the reasons why we consider the options of filing cross complaints. But, and the million dollars was paid, as Alex said, but wasn't recouped. It didn't come to us. It went to the Violation Remediation Account. But they paid it immediately, and I can't really complain. And in the, and in the second case, we did not get direct monetary penalties, as Marcia said. And one of the reasons for that was because of those two other cases that someone else was noting earlier, that I think Pam Heatherington mentioned it. We had just done two cases involving other hotels in the area, and I think that this, these hotels saw that action and thought, well, I have a choice between paying a big penalty and doing a lot of extra work, or maybe I'll just do it voluntarily. And so I'm really pleased to see that the word got out and that it really has helped us resolve the last matter. And I wanted to say one thing while I've got the mic. Rob Motomog, who worked on those other hotels, as a matter of fact also, but who did this case, started it when he was an intern in the Long Beach office. And he finished law school, graduated, went to San Francisco, and is now an attorney with us, and finished it up here. So I just want to say that's tenacity. We really appreciate his efforts.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks. I'm just wondering, do the hotels there, they're located on a public trust overlay? Is that what I heard you say? These are public trust lands?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to, I think that's a really great point. I think it's important for the public and others to understand is that, you know, we have these lands that were public trust lands that were basically, that was from the formation of the state, and then the public trust law that came from that came from, you know, Old English law before that, the Romans. I mean, this is, this is basically an exchange. So oftentimes, there are a lot of coastal properties, and people imagine that people have rights that maybe, that are overlaid by the public's use and public ownership of certain elements of that, whether it's natural resources or other. And so this is a great example of where, when a private use is on these public trust overlays, that there is a need for demonstrated public benefit. And sometimes that's just melded in there. And I really appreciate you guys going, you know, really all the way to get everything the public really deserves and should have in the exchange that we're making as a public to grant the ability for these private entities to be there. And also that those uses have to match those public trust values that are there. So I just want to think, I want to thank you for that. And I think it's just really important that that's in there. And then it wouldn't be me if I wasn't to just say that, you know, this is one of the four hotels that are within a 20-minute walking distance of the airport, which is really unusual to have four really to share it in all the way down. I've stayed at all of them. I will say that the sidewalks from the airport to these various hotels are terrible, so just put it on the radar in terms of, in terms of being able to access these places. It takes longer to get an Uber than it does to walk from these airports or from these hotels to the airport. But the wayfinding, and in many places, not even a sidewalk, you have to walk in the street. So to the San Diego staff, in the future, we can keep that on our radar for improvement. But thank you guys so much for the effort and all the work that you guys have done. This is, this is really great. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, any further comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Great stuff. As the new old guy, what are we doing to tell our story? I mean, I mean, that is a great story of the Coastal Commission in action, right? And this is what has been done for the community's benefit. And, you know, I've learned about social media recently and have gotten better at it. But I mean, unless you are, you know, sitting here like Steve, and you don't know. I mean, so I think part of the demystification is, you know, what do we do to help tell our story? And, you know, in the never-ending good idea fairy that I tend to be, you know, what can we do? I mean, I'm learning social media and become a big advocate of social media, and you've got young people out here who can probably in two minutes pump this story out to 5,000 retweets.
Those two women are our interns, by the way.
Oh, that's perfect. That is perfect. So, you know, I think to the extent we can, you know, push the information out to the public. I just went to the Instagram page, and I couldn't find it. There's one that's archived and, you know, and I know you've got a zillion other things, so it's easy for me to say, hey, why don't we do this? Right? But, so, because I'm already thinking about, okay, what are we going to do? We're going to take some pictures tonight, do some videos, introduce yourselves, do some group photos, and start pushing this information out? Because that's what I'm going to do.
So we can't, I could not agree more. And we're trying to reach out as much as we can. And that last video that you saw was made with the intent of putting it on social media. That was the whole reason. That was sort of an experiment, using our resources to try to do something that's a little bit different to get the story out. We do have, one of the things that we've required in the settlement that Marcia was presenting on was that they put it on their website. So we want to try to use as many of their resources as possible. We also have talked to our social media folks, and we've talked to our intrepid PIO, who is going to work with some local papers on stories about both of those items. So we are trying to do what we can, but we'd love any ideas. So anytime you have an idea or content, our social media folks are always looking for content, so that if you're out walking around on the beach, just send them a picture. Or if you see anything that would be useful. I mean, I'll let Kate talk to the general. But we've been working with them, and they're dying for content, so.
Fantastic. And you know, I mean, we can do this without, you know, poking the hotel.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, actually celebrating the hotel.
Exactly. Celebrate the collaboration and a great success story, so.
It's all good news.
All right.
Through the chair, just to add a couple of comments. I totally agree with everything Lisa said. This is something that we are also working on internally, is getting our good stories out there. We really appreciate the comments and the previous comments, because this has been something we're working on. The video you saw, as Lisa mentioned, that's the first time I've seen us do something like that. And I think it, I personally saw it and thought it was fantastic and was whispering over here and getting it, you know? So I think we're going to try to do more of that, to showcase some of these positive stories and just get it out into the world a little bit. And also, just so that the public is aware of the amenities themselves, you know, not just for us, but for the public. The whole point of this was to get these public amenities available in, you know, on these public trust lands, and it's really hard to get the word out. And so that, again, that is more, even more important than getting positive stories for us out, is just letting the public know what resources and amenities are available to them so they go and use it. So I think, you know, we are working on this. We're taking, you know, steps, but we'll be taking more in the future and definitely appreciate ideas. And as we get stuff posted, if you want to extend it yourself and, you know, follow us up, I'm not very good at the social media stuff too, so forgive me. Yes. We do have a little bit of a social media team that we've started recently at the Commission. So we're all learning and figuring it out.
So great discussion. Commissioner Kelly.
Just briefly, I was wondering if we could have a briefing, whether it's monthly or weekly, depending on the quantity of content that's just sent out via email to the Commissioners from the PIO or whomever, just saying, here is the news stories that have happened that are related to us. A lot of the other agencies that I sit on, we weekly or monthly get a report out of when we've been mentioned in things, when we have enforcement actions that have made the news, and when we've had success stories. All of those things, I think, are helpful. And then we can choose who to forward them to, whether it's email, social media, or printing it out and painting it in bright lights. But I think that would be another way, just to use us as advocates in continued, you know, awareness of the things that are going on in the communities.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We have done in the past, and it's, have done that in the past, and I think we did it a little bit, and we need to get back into it. It generally is just a capacity issue. But in the interest of this, you know, being prioritizing, getting the word out on all these things, I think we'll figure out how to do that. It's likely to be monthly as opposed to weekly, as much as I would love to promise weekly. I don't want to, I don't want Josh to come over here and strangle me. So, but excellent point. We will, we will work on getting that information out to you, news stories or anything that we think would be useful for you all in your work.
And that is one reason why we do these reports to you, so that the public can see them as well. It's one of our efforts to try to shape stories and let people know sort of the work that we're doing in a thematic way, so. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for your good work and excellent presentation, all of you. Thank you. Okay. If it's okay with everyone, I'd like to try to get through the South Central Coast DDR, and then we'll see if we want to take a little break after that. Does that work? Great. Okay, so moving to item 12.
Chair Harmon, it's going to take us a minute to switch around. It may make sense if we're going to take a break to do it right now. Yeah, thank you.
Come back at 3:35, please. Thank you. Okay. I think we're going to get started if everyone's ready. So that brings us to item 17?
Item 12.
Wow, I'm getting ahead of myself. Item 12, please. Mr. Hudson.
All right, thank you. And item 12 is the Deputy Director's Report for the South Central Coast District. This month, it includes three permit waivers, one immaterial amendment, and one immaterial permit extension. We're not aware of any opposition to these items being reported today, and we are asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the items in the Deputy Director's Report. Staff is available for any questions.
Are there any public speakers on the DDR?
There are no commentators for this item.
Thank you. Any objections from Commissioners? Seeing none, the Commission concurs with the DDR. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that moves us right along to item 17. This is the Deputy Director's Report for the South Coast District, which includes four waivers, one immaterial amendment, and one emergency permit. In regard to the emergency permit, I would note that it was issued to the Tuna Club in the city of Avalon on Catalina Island, which was in imminent danger of collapse, and the emergency permit was for replacement of four 12-inch diameter timber piles damaged during a recent storm event. I would also like to note that three of the waivers being reported today are for new accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. And they're examples of how your staff is continuing to work to expedite new ADU and housing projects. We're not aware of any opposition to any of these items being reported, and we're asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the items in this Deputy Director's Report. I am available for questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers on this DDR?
No, we have no speakers, but we have two available for questions.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions or objections to anything in the DDR? Seeing none, the Commission concurs. We'll be moving on to item 18, the Venice Dell item. And just a note before we begin, we have a fair number of public speakers, so each public comment will be limited to one minute, just preparing you in advance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And item 18A is a request for an extension of time for the city of Los Angeles to take action to either accept or reject the suggested modifications required by the Commission as part of its previous approval of an amendment to the city's Certified Venice Land Use Plan that was approved by the Commission at our December meeting. The Coastal Act provides for the Commission to extend the six-month time limit for action by a local government on an LCP or an LUP amendment in this case for up to one year. The City Council has not yet taken action to either accept or reject the Commission's suggested modifications in this case, and unless the Commission extends the time for the city to take action, the LUP amendment would expire. Thus, staff is recommending the Commission extend the time for the city to take action by one year. I would also note that the underlying amendment and its related project for an affordable housing project was very contentious at the time the amendment was acted on by this Commission, and that we have a significant number of speakers signed up on this item today. As a reminder to the Commission and the public, the hearing today for this item is only on the request of whether to extend the time for the city to take action, and that's to either accept or reject our suggested modifications. This hearing today is not an opportunity to rehear or discuss the merits of the underlying amendment itself. Now, the motion to extend the time limit is found at the bottom of the one-page staff report. That concludes my presentation, and I'll just note that I will be available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And Ms. Warren, do the applicant have a request for time?
Yeah, he said two or three minutes.
Okay. Perfect. We have three minutes on the clock, please.
DJ Moore.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Congratulations, Chair Harmon and Vice Chair Hart. DJ Moore, Paul Hastings, pro bono counsel to the nonprofit affordable housing providers who are the applicants of the Venice Dell project, that will deliver 120 critically needed affordable units and supportive services to the Venice community. We're here in strong support of staff's recommendation. When the Commission unanimously approved the CDP's and LUP amendment in 2024, the Commission was fully aware of the objections raised by project opponents in the numerous form letters submitted to you, including the claim that the LA Board of Transportation Commissioners had effectively denied the project at a meeting just one day before the Commission's hearing. Nothing has changed. The Los Angeles City Council, which is the only body in the city with the final authority to approve the project or deny it, unanimously approved it. The City Council has not rescinded its approvals, and in fact separately approved a disposition and development agreement in which it contractually agreed to partner with the affordable housing developers to make this project a reality. The Board of Transportation Commissioners has no legal authority to obstruct or undo the City Council's approval, and there is a pending lawsuit challenging that Board's conduct. While certain policies may have, or I'm sorry, politics may have changed at the city, the fact remains that the City Council is the only authority at the city that can take action on the LUP amendment that this Commission approved. That has not happened yet, as Mr. Hudson noted. An additional time is needed so that affordable housing developers can continue to work with the city to determine a path forward. Accordingly and consistent with your staff's recommendation, a one-year extension for the City Council to act on the LUP amendment is wholly appropriate under these circumstances. We and affordable housing developers worked for over two years with your staff to refine the project to ensure Coastal Act consistency and bring it to you for consideration in December 2024. That significant effort cannot be discounted and also justifies giving the city more time so that this critical project can help meet the city's affordable housing needs in the coastal zone. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Also with the applicants, we have Sarah Letts and Erica Lee. Do you wish, okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Letts, and I'm the Executive Director of Hollywood Community Housing. And there's good news to report about the Venice Dell project, especially in terms of securing state resources to finance the new construction of 120 units of affordable housing. In April, we applied for funding through the state's Multi-Family Housing Program, or MHP, and requested over $42 million. On June 2nd, we received written confirmation from the state that Venice Dell received the maximum possible points and is in a position to be awarded $42 million in financing. With a commitment of MHP funds, Venice Dell will also be competitive for state resources, including tax-exempt bonds and low-income housing tax credits. And the bottom line is, the Venice Dell project is financially feasible. We also want to provide an update on the co-developers' contract with the city, the Disposition and Development Agreement, or DDA. The original DDA was approved by council in June of 2022, and in September of 2024, the city signed a letter agreement with the co-developers to update the exhibits to the DDA. Oh, thank you for your time.
Erica Lee.
Erica Lee.
Dear coastal commissioners, my name is Erica Lee, and I'm one of the co-executive directors of Venice Community Housing, one of the developers for the Venice Dell project. I'm here today to urge you to approve, to extend the land use amendment for the Venice Dell community today. VCH has been an affordable housing developer for over 35 years. We're proud of the work we've done to fight for housing justice and serve the numerous people who've been able to exit homelessness and move into permanent housing, the one solution we know to end homelessness. Los Angeles had two devastating fires this year as in a dire housing crisis. In 2024, the greater Los Angeles homeless count found over 75,000 people experiencing homelessness, 1,700 of which are in Council District 11, where Venice is located. What are we doing about this problem? Rather than encampment sweeps and sweeping folks away, cutting supportive services and exacerbating homelessness, I urge you all to support the Venice Dell community. This project provides 120 units of affordable housing. This project keeps access to the coastal zone and will create much more affordable housing and supportive housing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more in-person speakers, Linda Lux, followed by Roseanne Boffa.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Welcome to the new ones, and nice to see the ones that have been here before, and I want to thank you for unanimously approving Venice Dell last time when we were here in December, and we hope that you will unanimously approve the extension today. My name is Linda Lux. I've lived in Venice area since 1970. I've been active in the community all that time and was on the Venice Neighborhood Council for 10 years, president for two terms. I did most of the community engagement in the community about this project for the last seven years, and I can tell you the vast majority of people in Venice supported it, even though you've heard from a lot of opposition. So, you've heard about Venice Dell. It's a wonderful project. In fact, if the city hadn't been obstructing all this time, since we were approved by the city in 2022, almost 300 or over 300 people would have either been living in their new development or been close to it, would have been almost finished. That's over 300 people comprised of people who've formerly been homeless, 50%, low-income artists and low-wage earners, the people who live and work, work in Venice, can't live there. Thank you for voting yes today.
Thank you. Susan, Roseanne Boffa.
Roseanne Boffa, good afternoon. Thank you so much for hearing us. We hope that you extend it. So, I live in Venice since the 80s, and I ask everyone that's working at Whole Foods or any other local place, where do you live? Nine out of 10 times, they live out of the area because they can't afford to live in Venice. The average one-bedroom is about $2,600, one small bedroom. So, I ask you to please extend this. We have a city council person who is being supported by the very, very rich folks who live in the canal, and they're always trying to figure out how to stop this project. And we're hoping that you'll just give us an extension, and maybe those people will not be there in a year from now to try to stop it, because that's what they're planning on doing. They are donated by the richer people, and the rest of the people have to suffer, and they got to sit in traffic. We drove up here, I cannot believe how much traffic is out there, I have to tell you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Our remaining speakers are on Zoom. We actually have 19 people sign up to speak on Zoom, but we're only able to find six. We're starting with Susan Jordan, Robin Rudisil, and Lydia Ponse. Susan Jordan. Susan, you're muted still. There you go.
Hi, my name is Susan Jordan, and I speak to you today on behalf of my nonprofit, the California Coastal Protection Network, as well as the Natural Resources Defense Council. Our organizations have a longstanding interest in the preservation and expansion of affordable housing in the coastal zone and have long been frustrated by the commission's legal inability to protect and require affordable housing in the wake of the passage of the Mellow Act in 1982. What the Venice Dell project is, is truly extraordinary, and it is a very rare opportunity where the commission gets the opportunity to support and proceed with 100% affordable housing project. This just doesn't happen, especially in proximity to a beach. And for, we both test, our organizations both testified at the hearing in December in strong support. My colleague Joel Reynolds of the Natural Resources Defense Council lives mere blocks from this development, and we urge you to approve this extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robin Rudisil, followed by Lydia Ponse, and then Robin Mures. Robin Rudisil.
Hey, good afternoon. Let's be clear, the city of Los Angeles itself has not requested the extension. The city already determined that this project is not feasible and denied it, largely due to the unnecessary and unaffordable $25 million parking garage, which poses both fiscal and environmental risks. That decision stands. Every city council member was well aware they had an opportunity to appeal it, and not one did so. As you yourselves acknowledged back in December, the city owns the land, and they, not the developers or their attorneys, or even you, are the, are the final decision-makers. If the city says no land, then there is no project, very simple. The city would have to spend $25 million just to build the garage, money it doesn't have at a time it's cutting vital services and staff. There is an alternative site right next door identified by the city. Also, if the city reapproves the project, at that time, you can reapprove an LCP amendment. So, please close this door for now, let the city do its job. Let's work together to support real, feasible, and sustainable affordable housing and not uber-expensive vanity projects that waste time, money, and the public trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lydia Ponse, Robin Mures, and then Marjorie Weitzman. Lydia Ponse.
Good afternoon. First, LUPC VNC said they couldn't ever provide any kind of affordable housing in the 902-91 because of park fences and the requirements. So, now, you know, people here locally in Venice, in businesses and in homes, travel a great distance, Puebla, South Central LA, anywhere but Venice. They live far, far away, and it's taking away their life with their families and with their community. And, you know, this would be such a big improvement, and everything would be sacrificed, and variations, and grants, and all kinds of permits for the dollar. But when we're talking about working people, we're talking about the people that have a real right to live by the ocean within the coastal zone. It's called the Mellow Act, and it's also called humanity. I mentioned it this morning. Please approve the extension. The other stuff should wash away with a visit to the beach, prayers up for the people, by the people, and always of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robin Mures. We seem to be having trouble promoting you in as a panelist. You should now be able to unmute as an attendee. Go ahead. Please try again. We can barely hear your audio. It's still not, not good. Give us a second. We're going to move on to our next couple speakers and come back to you and see if it's improved. Give us, give us a moment. Next will be Marjorie Weitzman, and then Gary Pearl. Marjorie Weitzman.
Hi, Marjorie Weitzman. I oppose this extension along with hundreds of fellow Venetians and many others concerned. 171 letters of opposition, 22 in support. Most supporters directly involved with the Venice Dell project are acting on their behalf in lawsuits suing the city for outrageous monetary demands that depend on this extension. The developers now proudly say they're one step closer to getting $42 million in financing. How does that address the $25 million needed to build a public parking garage in the midst of a city budget crisis? You're being told by supporters that extending the deadline furthers the commission's environmental justice policy after the project has been in development for more than a decade. It shouldn't take a decade to push a flawed project forward. It's time to move on. The commission should accept the alternative proposed at the city's experts, by the city's experts, and stop aligning with the developers who are stalling the process and start producing viable, affordable housing.
Thank you. Next, Gary Pearl, and then we're coming back to Robin Mures. Gary Pearl. Gary, we can't hear you. We see that you're unmuted, but I'm not hearing any audio. Please try again. I know, we can't, we can't hear, we can see you, but, and we see that you're unmuted, but we're not hearing anything. I'm going to try to bump you back as an attendee and see if you can unmute as an attendee. Meanwhile, Robin Mures, we're going to try you again. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm unmuted. Is this any better?
Yes, it's a lot better. Go ahead.
Great. So, thank you, commissioners and staff. I want to bring back to your attention something that has been repeated by many of you today, by many of the commissioners and staff and everyone here, and that is that SEQA should not be overlooked when doing anything in the coastal zone. And not only was it overlooked, but a special politically promoted law was passed to enable this project alone to not meet SEQA, to not be evaluated. It, everything the community has brought forth has been questioning all of those aspects from the beginning. This has been a flawed project from the beginning. The fact that it was only brought before the Bureau of Transportation Commission now is also because they have been, the developers who call themselves nonprofit but are totally for profit, just like the scams that have been going on throughout Los Angeles. We have $2 billion has, is lost, according to the audit that has been required.
Thank you. Trying Gary Pearl again. Gary, you should be able to unmute. And then Gary, we see that you're unmuted, but we still can't hear you. I am afraid it might be a mic issue on your end, which is weird because we had you for two other comments today, but we can't hear you right now, unfortunately. So, we did have 13 other speakers signed up, all in opposition, but we weren't able to find them. I'm going to quickly, quickly list their names. If you're, if you hear your name, please raise your hand in the meeting so we can find you. Sean O, Russell Kleda, Brendan Linder, Linda Eberly, Jen Smith, Calain West, Jill Howe Verkos, Stacy Teruya, Chris C, Julie Bean, Deborah Pitt, Emile Nee, and Carl Bulow. Again, if you've heard your name, please raise your hand so we can find you. I'm seeing no hands raised. Madam Chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thanks for your work. So, with that, I will close public comment and turn it back to the commissioners unless staff has any final thoughts they'd like to add.
No additional comments, just note that we are available for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hudson. Any comments or a motion from commissioners?
I'm prepared to move.
Okay.
A second.
Sorry. A second, okay. Thought you said just a second. I move that the commission extend the six-month time limit for, for one year in order for the city of Los Angeles to consider acceptance of the suggested modifications to Venice LUP Amendment Request Number LCP-5-VEN-22-0038-1, adopted by the commission on December 11th, 2024. And I recommend a yes vote.
I'd like to take a minute here. I know I haven't had a lot of time to introduce myself to my colleagues, but my name's Chris. I'm a county supervisor out in Monterey County, and a lot of what I saw in this item reminded me of home and the challenges that we're facing and the way we brought solutions. I can share, I've got a community of just about 12,000 people in the city of King, and we're building 42 low-income units in a town of only 14, of 10,000 people. In two towns over, where there's only 20,000 people, in a small town called Solidad, we're building about 32 units. We're making change by taking on the tough issues, and I think the conversation that's being asked for here, the space to consider this, is worth the time. It's worth the investment. $42 million for this, to me, is a, what might be used to leverage the other funding is a small amount of money, and I say that because it took us $70 million to build 100 farmworker units in Greenfield, California, which is now where I live, and I'm raising my two young kids, they own in this. This matters. It matters to community and creating space where I live kids grow up, reach the age of 18, 19, and never see the ocean, even though it's only 10 miles away as the crow flies and 40 miles away by freeway. But I can tell you, having raised a lot of kids as a coach at the local high school, when we crest the hill from the Salinas Valley and we pierce that lettuce curtain and we drop into the coast, these kids who you cannot control in the back of a van go dead silent. It's like a baptism. It's like they've reached new life and have a new understanding. The thought of families having the opportunity to live in a place where they can see and feel the water every single day between their toes is something that people in California dream about, and for many, never get, even get the chance to see it for decades at a time, even though they're as close as my community is. So, for that reason, I wanted to second this today and just thank my colleagues for taking this seriously because it matters. And I know that for so many of us, this is part of the challenge that we're braving to take on, and as we do our work in local government, the opportunity to say that everyone deserves to live where they work and exist in all spaces that we consider sacred. I want to tell the community, I'm there to support any effort to make sure that the conversation can continue in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Chair, I could just interrupt you for one second. The motion in the staff report had the wrong number. It's 0038 in the staff report, but the actual number is 0037. So, as long as the mover and the second are okay with that, we'll just correct the number. No, no, it's enough if you're okay with that.
I do, just kidding. I'm good with it.
Just to clarify, thanks. Thank you.
I didn't read it wrong, though.
It's, it's 23-0037-1, and no, it was our mistake. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Miller, I'll ask for a roll call vote, and I'd like to let you know Vice Chair Hart is with us and available to vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Lowenberg?
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Preciado?
Ah.
Yes?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it came out.
No. Preciado, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Lopez, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Extension so granted. Okay, now we are moving right along. We'll go to item 21A, I believe.
Yes, and thank you. Item 21A will be presented by Dulce Cortez, a coastal program analyst in our South Coast District, and I would also just like to take this opportunity to note that this will be Dulce's first presentation to the commission. And if we could pull up the PowerPoint presentation, please, and Dulce, take it away.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Item 21A is a request by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to amend a previously approved coastal development permit that originally required full removal of unpermitted storm drain infrastructure in the Biona Wetlands Ecological Reserve. This amendment would allow for partial removal and partial abandonment of the storm drain infrastructure involving removal of the drain risers to at least 12 inches below grade, filling the remaining portions of the risers with concrete to appropriately abandon the drains and revegetate the impacted area with wetland-appropriate vegetation. Next slide, please. The project site, as shown in this aerial photograph, is located in the Biona Wetlands Ecological Reserve in Los Angeles County. Specifically, the unpermitted drains are located on either side of Culver Boulevard in Area B of the wetlands, shown here on this slide. Next slide, please. The unpermitted storm drains were installed in the 1990s without the benefit of a coastal development permit by a previous private property owner before ownership of the property was transferred to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Pursuant to coastal development permit 5-17-0253, the drainlids and weep holes present in the above-grade portions of the lateral drain risers were sealed with a marine-grade epoxy as an interim measure to stop wetland dewatering, processes shown in these photos. At the commission's direction, coastal development permit 5-18-0554 subsequently required full removal of the infrastructure within five years or until the drainage infrastructure could be removed during excavation related to the Biona Wetlands Restoration Plan. In addition, a mitigation plan was required to mitigate for habitat impacts of installation and temporal impacts and temporal impacts to wetland habitat. Since coastal development permit 5-18-0554 was approved, several members of the public have spoken during the public comment period, during the public comment section during previous Commission hearings, and have also contacted the applicant, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, urging that the applicant amend the permit to allow for abandonment in place of the drain system to avoid impacting the habitat that had regenerated surrounding the drains since they were sealed. Next slide, please. In response to these concerns that the previously required full excavation of the pipes would require disturbance of approximately 15,000 square feet of wetland and upland habitat and potentially affect archaeological and tribal cultural resources, the Department of Fish and Wildlife is now requesting to amend the underlying permit to allow for, for the subterranean portions of the drain infrastructure to be permanently abandoned in place by removing the tops of the risers at least 12 inches below grade, filling the remaining portion of the risers with concrete and permanently abandoning the two remaining subterranean horizontal spur lines in place. On May 5th, Commission staff met with members of the public who expressed a preference to fill the entire length of the lateral pipes with concrete due to concerns about potential long-term structural degradation of the reinforced concrete pipes and the possibility of methane gas becoming trapped. However, the applicant has indicated that it is still their intent to eventually remove all portions of these pipes as part of the planned future restoration of, of the wetland and filling the entire length of the two 90-foot-long lateral pipes would make their eventual removal far more difficult, costly, and disruptive to the surrounding habitat. In this case, the Commission's engineer, Jeremy Smith, agrees that the applicant's analysis that the proposed partial removal slash partial abandonment approach involving removal of all above-grade portions of the two risers and filling only the risers with a concrete fill rather than the entire length of the subterranean lateral pipes would ensure that these drains are adequately and permanently sealed and would avoid any draining of the surrounding of wetlands. Moreover, this approach would reduce site disturbance and minimize impacts to the surrounding wetlands on-site that would otherwise be disturbed by excavation of the two abandoned 90-foot-long drain pipes. Members of the public have also asserted that methane gas may be present in these pipes. However, Commission staff have confirmed that this is not the case. A memo by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, date July 2020, demonstrated that methane was not leaking out of the pipes. The proposed amendment will serve as a permanent solution to this concern by further reinforcing the sealed drains and eliminating future risk of any potential of gas leakage. In addition, air that could potentially be present in these, in the pipes could potentially escape from the flap gate at Biona Creek since it is not a sealed system. Next slide, please. Removal of all portions of the drain pipes would have originally resulted in the disturbance of approximately 15,000 square feet of the surrounding wetland areas. However, the revised project for partial removal slash partial abandonment would minimize these impacts and only result in approximately 18 square feet of disturbance around the risers to be removed. As part of the proposed amendment, the applicant will revegetate the disturbed areas around the risers using appropriate native plant species. In addition, the applicant has already implemented a 0.6 acre offsite willow restoration project to mitigate for prior impacts resulting from the insulation of the pipes by the previous private, private property owner. Monitoring in 2023 showed increased native vegetation, successful willow recruitment, and reduced bare ground, and that the restoration site is currently meeting and exceeding success criteria established by the permit, as demonstrated in the accompanying photos. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff believes the amendment request represents the least environmentally damaging feasible alternative and is consistent with the Coastal Act. Thus, staff is recommending approval of this amendment with the special conditions listed on pages 28 through 33 of the staff report, which include modifications to special condition number three to allow for partial concrete fill of the cap risers rather than full removal of the unpermitted drains and lateral pipes. All work must still be completed by the August 12, 2025 deadline pursuant to the underlying permit unless additional time is granted by the Executive Director for good cause and will be performed, will be performed manually over two days to avoid impacts to the surrounding habitat. The motion to approve the project is found on page five of the staff report. This concludes staff presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. Excellent first presentation. I'll start by asking, are there any expertises on this item? Need to be reported. Seeing none? Okay, then we'll start with the applicant and see how much time they're requesting.
She's requesting. Yes, on Zoom, we have Richard Brody from CDFW. They're listed as available for questions. They are in on Zoom and are free to unmute.
Okay. Great. Happy to have you for questions. Thank you. In that case, we will open public comment and take general public comment. Two minutes, please.
Okay. We have five people sign up for general public comment. We'll start with in the room, Steve Ray. One more time. Then our first speakers on Zoom will be Walter Lamb, John Davis, and Patricia McPherson.
You're going to allow me a fourth time? Well, you know, my doctor said, as long as you can keep talking, talk. So, I'm just following my doctors advice. Hi, Steve Ray again here. I haven't changed my name all day. That's amazing. I, I just had to speak about this issue that's before you, out of sheer frustration primarily. I've been involved with the Biona Wetlands for longer than a couple of you have been alive, I think. And the thing that strikes me about every time something comes before this Commission regarding Biona Wetland, it all centers around one word. That word? Unpermitted. Unpermitted. Because everything that happens out there is unpermitted. And it winds up coming here before you because whether, no matter whether it's in this case, you know, the drain issue or a variety of other issues in the past, it always, it's always something that's happening with unpermitted. And I just get frustrated listening to everybody talk about all these issues at Biona Wetlands that are unpermitted issues. I don't know what to do about it. I know enforcement, I guess, Lisa back here. Message goes to somebody. Why is everything unpermitted that happened out there? And then we have to find a way to clean it up or fix it up or compromise away maybe something that shouldn't be compromised away because it should never happen in the first place. I just ask that, you know, somebody start looking at this and find out why everything there is unpermitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Lamb, followed by John Davis, Patricia McPherson, and then Leslie Purcell. Walter Lamb. And I believe we do have a presentation for you. We're bringing it up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Walter Lamb with the Biona Wetlands Land Trust. Just to state upfront, we support this change. Obviously, we, along with other advocates, requested this change. We requested this change five years ago, and, and we were perplexed five years ago because this was discussed. And then Vice Chair Escalante said, hey, could it be a better option to abandon these in place? Staff said, yeah, maybe. And then that was the end of the discussion. And then so five years later, here we are. But we are glad to eventually be at this, this place. With regard to other advocacy...
We seem to have lost Walter Lamb. I think he disconnected from the meeting. If he does reconnect, we'll get back to him, but we'll move on for now to John Davis, Patricia McPherson, Leslie Purcell. John Davis, go ahead.
Yes, I'm having trouble getting my video turned on. If you could help me with that.
All right, give us a second. There, you should be able to turn it on now. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, if you could now start my clock, I would appreciate that. Honorable Chair Hart, Vice Chair Aguero, and distinguished Commissioners, please deny this recommended motion. There will be no future removal. The staff is lying again regarding the DFW Restoration Plan. It was defeated in court and it will not return. I provided an alternative motion in my written submission. The clear intent of this Commission was to remove all illegal wetland drain pipes within 180 days, and the Commission further required drains to be temporarily capped for 30 days. Chief Enforcement Officer Leica Lisa Hagie stated, "We think that draining a wetland is about the most amazing violation you could have. I mean, putting a drain in a wetland is exactly the opposite of anything you can do in a wetland," end quote. The Commission clearly did not intend to leave temporary capping mitigation in place for eight years or more, nor did this Commission intend to only modify a fraction of the illegal pipeline at the 11th hour. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders asked staff counsel to read the original modified staff report to the Commission because the original staff report was failed, as it is today. Staff has modified the recommendations, so special condition four will be revised to require the applicant to remove the pipelines within 180 days. It then needs to actually carry out the removal within one year of the Commission action on that permit. Drains, whether capped or not, cannot be installed and maintained in a wet, in a wetland. Public Resources Code 3233. The Commission, the Coastal Act mandates the filling of the entire structure with concrete to render them inoperable above and below the surface to remedy the coastal violation in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patricia McPherson. We seem to be having trouble promoting you as a panelist. We see that you've been accepting it, but it hasn't been happening. So, we're going to allow you to speak as an attendee. You should be able to unmute now. And I saw another account pop up. Pamela Hetherington. Oh, wait, not Pamela, Patricia McPherson, sorry. Patricia McPherson, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Patricia McPherson, Grassroots Coalition. I can't tell you how disappointed I am with the staff addendum that's written. The staff addendum by apparently Mandy Revel did not provide me with any information with CDFW claiming that the drains would be so hard to dig out should they go forward with the plan. There is no plan that's, that's being promoted anymore by CDFW. It's been 86th as far as a SEQA lawsuit. Mandy Revel has told you there's no information. While I provided all of you today with information of water that does back up through those drains, as shown by Playa Vista's Somas Consultants, Mike Crehan, you have that. She knew that. She was at the meetings in 2017 that we have been discussing the water backing up through that main drain into those illegal drains. And by the way, I never said to fill up all of the large main drain. I have asked for filling the risers and filling the lateral lines. I spoke with the CDFW engineer on this. He was given no information whatsoever from the Coastal Commission or CDFW with background for this site. So, this whole thing has been a ruse. The letter that was written initially was by the regional manager and Scott, Scott the engineer from CDFW. He never said to do nothing the way the letter stated to do. Who wrote that letter? Did Brody write that letter and put on the electric signatures of those two people, the regional manager and Scott Marata, the CDFW engineer? I am being provided no time to respond to this. This is ridiculous. It's the most outrageous thing. I would like to see this thing filled. You have us between a hard place and a rock because we don't want to disturb the surface. How dare you, Mandy!
Thank you. Next, Leslie Purcell. And then we do see Walter Lamb back in the meeting. We'll follow up with Walter. You can restart your comments after Leslie Purcell. Leslie Purcell.
Good afternoon, Commission and staff. Well, this is a tough one. I'm somebody that loved the Biona Wetlands for many years. I'm looking at a picture that was from a film, The Nature vs. Gentrification, Nature's Last Stand, and it shows the Biona Wetlands when it was full of water and very green before Playa Vista was there. And anything we can do to return it to its best functioning is, is what we need to do. I think that capping the drains, filling them is probably the best thing. I'm not an engineer. I'm not quite sure if we've had enough engineering advice on this, but the alternative to fill the whole length of the lateral pipe with concrete, if they are to be removed in the future, that might make it more difficult. But there is a problem with methane leaking from some of the old oil wells, and there's gas underneath the wetlands, too. So, it's, it is kind of an issue that, a thorny one. We just encourage you all to do the best you can, and we appreciate your work. And I'd like to know when the CDFW is coming forth with a new EIR, EIS, that we need for the restoration as such, because the public would, would like to be involved and would appreciate a timeline, some kind of framework that we knew was happening with that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Walter Lamb.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners of...
We're bringing your presentation back up. Give us a second.
Yeah, thank you, and apologies for the tech glitch. And yeah, I mean, this is a difficult situation. You know, the, the advocates for the Biona Wetlands, we do this, most of us are volunteers. You know, a lot of us spend a lot of time on, I, I volunteer full-time on this. It, it is a little frustrating. We're just asking for you to maybe, you know, understand our frustration from having five years ago this opportunity to do exactly what we're talking about today. Would have saved you time as well. I know how busy you are. I know how busy your staff is. It would have saved your staff a lot of time. It also would have saved the public spending a couple thousand dollars going down and filing applications for funding for the full removal. That's what CDFW was going to do, and, and we really, you know, stepped in to advocate against that. And so, again, we're happy that, you know, we are where we are today. Now, staff mentioned that one of the reasons not to put more concrete in is because they, they may want to remove them if they ever do this large-scale project. Well, we're asking for you to, to get an update on the large-scale project. The only reason you gave the five-year extension was because CDFW told you they anticipated doing the project within five years, and they didn't want to sort of double up on the disturbance to the site. And the, the language from the last staff report is right up here on the slide, the highlighted in yellow are the specific timeframes. And the first timeframe of CDFW needing two years to provide more information to the Corps of Engineers, that's, that's what they're saying is still, right? And so, it's, they're still two years away from that. It doesn't seem like there's been a day of advancement on that. And so, we really do think at a minimum, you know, to please get an update on when that project will, will happen, given that you're being told that someday maybe you want to pull, you know, the whole infrastructure out. And then the only other thing I'll say is, you know, you don't really have a choice today because of how long it took CDFW to get the application. I'm not trying to, you know, be critical of them, but just the reality is, the, the existing CDP is no longer feasible. So, so thank you for your volunteer.
Thank you. We have no more speakers for this item. We do have CDFW on and available for questions.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you to our speakers. I'll turn it back to staff to see if they have any response. Thank you.
Yes, we do, and I'll, I'll just start off, and then I'll turn it over to Steve's for some more substantive comments. But first, I want to directly respond to Ms. McPherson. I hear her frustration, but want to note, it's completely inappropriate for her to go after staff the way she did. We have collectively spent so many hours working and trying to understand the concerns with the advocates in this area. We respect them, we respect their love of this place, and have worked really hard to try to, you know, to, to communicate with them in all the ways we can. But, you know, that's, that is, that's our challenge, I guess, as staff to, you know, we do have conflict and disagreements with folks, but we're, we're working really hard as staff here, and I don't appreciate members of the public going after our staff. So, I just want to, you know, Mandy Revel has done a phenomenal job working through a lot of really difficult issues here, and just wanted to say that for the record. We, you know, there's a long history for this, you know, about, with this project. Many of you are fully aware of that. Many of you are fully aware of that, but we can go into that if you'd like. I think I'll start off by, I guess I'll just end there and hand it over to Steve for some more substantive responses.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. And I would just like to add a little bit of history on this because this does have quite a bit. I remember the original hearing about eight, five to six, seven years ago. It's been a while. And at that original hearing, I do recall Ms. McPherson requested that the subterranean pipes be removed in their entirety. Now, there's apparently been some changes. During the past year, Ms. McPherson has also spoken during several of our public comment periods of different hearings, requesting that the applicant and the commission change the project to allow abandonment in order to minimize these habitat impacts that we heard about today. Now, Fish and Wildlife took that to heart, and they approached us and requested this change, which we reviewed with much scrutiny. Now, I would note that although we've heard that there's still disagreement, that disagreement is about the method of abandonment and not so much the question of whether or not abandonment could be an appropriate way to deal with these unpermitted pipes. And the concerns that we've heard here is that the pipe itself should be filled in with concrete. The proposal here, and as Ms. Cortez laid out, is that there will be this complete sealing of the pipe. That riser, the part of the pipe that sticks above ground, will be removed about a foot below ground. It'll be sealed with concrete, so the entire riser of that pipe will be filled with concrete. That means that there is no possibility of water from the surface seeping back into that pipe, which was the original problem with this violation. The other concern was that somehow the gas that there, because of that underground gas issue within the area, could somehow seep into this pipe and then outgas into the environment. But this pipe will be sealed subsurface, and our engineering experts have looked at that issue, and we don't agree or believe that there is any concern. We have had testing done in the past, and that testing has showed that there was no presence of gas leaking out of the previous pipe even when it was unsealed. But given that this pipe is sealed, we believe that issue will be moot. So I'll just note that, well, that will conclude our staff response, but I'll note that we are available for questions if the commission has any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission and open it up for questions or comments. Commissioner Lopez.
Yeah, just a quick question. The integrity of the pipe over time, is there an estimate? And I mean, eventually, the thing's going to collapse inward. Is there a timeframe on when we think that will happen?
Yes, that was the question that we posed to our engineer. And they believe that this is stable for the foreseeable future. They don't believe that the pipe is expected to collapse. So in the past, we have said, is it necessary to fill these pipes with sand or concrete? In this case, that wasn't expected to be necessary. But I would note that the final disposition of this pipe is that there is still a plan by Fish and Wildlife for its removal. This and their planned horizon will be part of a larger restoration project that would involve the excavation of this area and reconstruction of wetlands. And that is, just by way of background, we often receive much public comment during our public comment period from members of the public, both in support and in opposition. But that is a much larger project, and at this point in time, there's no timeframe on when that project might occur. So I would just note that the long-term plan for this by Fish and Wildlife is for removal of the entire pipe. Filling it with cement would make that long-term removal much more difficult and costly and would result in these habitat impacts in the short term. So that's why we're recommending what we are.
All right. I need to find out what kind of pipe that is because I could use some of that for Culverts and Monterey County. The never collapsing pipe sounds incredible. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions, or motions? Commissioner Nada.
I just wanted to, I appreciated the staff presentation, and Ms. Cortez, thank you for that clarification in the presentation that, in fact, this is, you know, we've heard from the public repeatedly over the last few years about abandonment in place. And so here you have a situation where the Department of Fish and Wildlife has listened to the public and been responsive to that with coming forward with this amendment. So I just wanted to clarify that. With that, I would make a motion. I move that the commission approve the proposed amendment to coastal development permit 5-18-0554 pursuant to the staff recommendation, and staff recommends a yes vote.
Second? We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Miller.
Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado.
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg. Lowenberg, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. And with that, the amendment is approved. I think we have some statewide items to take care of today. Okay. So we'll move to item 22, the approval of the minutes. Anyone wants to move approval?
I'll move approval.
Hart.
You want to second it, Vice Chair?
Sounds like I have a motion and a second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Lowenberg, a second from Vice Chair Hart. And if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Preciado.
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Abstained.
Jackson abstained. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Abstained.
Lopez abstained. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner, mean Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is eight yes with two abstentions.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. Are there any conservancy reports that anyone wants to make? I don't even know who goes to those, so we'll work on that. Okay, Deputy AG's report, I think, today? Okay, then I think we're done for today, and we'll be going into closed session now. Thank you.